Is.
Yeah.
Hold on. All right, you're ready, Bill, because that's going.
All right, I will open this meeting today on July first at one thirty P M for the budget workshop. Those in attendance are Commissioner Hadeen, Commissioner McCarty, Commissioner Martinez and myself, Commissioner Winfield with. I see Commissioner McGann online, I believe, is. Do you see Jock on there? I don't think so, is that? And Commissioner McCandless, so we are absent Commissioner Had. And so I will let you start this off, Gabe.
Thanks, Derek, so um. I have some material to present this in the packet, um, uh, you know. Let's say worth thirty minutes or so of that, if that much, maybe not that much even. Um, should I start off, should I start off with that and then we will go into the presentations that are contemplated or?
Sure.
Oh, great. Don't share my screen here.
I did just the peckles. I just said the jock and.
Thank you. I need to share a screen.
What document is this?
Unless you're. We're gonna start with um twenty twenty five revenue projection. Um, and I'll have Stephen Bob, finance director, come in and give an overview of.
Okay.
The projection method that's entered into the current budget that was approved for the beginning of twenty twenty five. And then we'll, we have an update that's emboldened at the bottom of this document. Just showing what we have currently entered into the tentative tentative amendment. But it's important to give a little bit of a background to um, you know, the current that we're using and and sort of what, you know, ju- just the numbers in general, just so we can try our best to avoid confusion. Go ahead, Stephen.
Even balance finance officer. I think it's important to just take a few minutes to talk about our forecasting methods, because some of the metrics we're throwing out, I think, are. Maybe not completely understood, please, our question already.
No, no, just look at that.
The different deal. Um, you know, because a big part of this budget amendment is based on the revenue. Income that we're receiving so far today. So I want to describe two of the metrics that we've been talking about. First of all, we've talked about um a budget to actual. Variance. Minus six percent. And so this metric really is to measure how much we plan to receive this year against how much we've actually received this year. Some people are taking that to interpret that directly to our forecast for the remainder of the year. They are completely different, like a lot of financial metrics, you know, they're meant for a reason. Now, so let me give you some background. We came up with our forecast last December seventeen to enter it into the twenty twenty five budget. That was using November's uh sales tax receipts, so that the the most current data we had available and we created the twenty five budget was November year end metrics.
How was that? Are those the numbers from November or are those considered the numbers from September four?
Whenever I say tax receipts is always the what we see that month, which really is two months.
Two months, so we're talking September previous.
Right.
Okay, got it.
So we use November's numbers to come up with the twenty five forecast. And then we just basically, that became a baseline. We just took that stamp and I converted it into monthly, you know, revenue that we should receive. So it was a guess, I mean, this is what a forecast is, right, a guess? And it was even using some older numbers. Uh, so when we say we're six percent below on our revenue income. That just means it's against the guess that we or the estimate that we uh entered in the budget. All right, but it still is minus six, that's just math, we are six below six one percent below what we expected to get. Now, let's talk about the forecast. This is what this is, what I use to do forecasting, I think it's important for all of us to see what this is. Um, and this is, this is a an industry best practice, or I shouldn't say best, I'll say a leading practice, common practice. I first by start by taking. The four buckets of tax revenue received and I accumulate those buckets in the most current twelve month ending period. So for example, this is June twenty five. So for twenty twenty two's bucket, that's going to be all tax receipts, non-property tax, restaurant sales. All taxes from July twenty twenty one through June twenty twenty two. Same twelve months for twenty three, twenty four, twenty five. And that's what that first table is, is the the tax receipts by year from the twelve month ending. And the reason we want to use twelve months moving uh forecast like that is it smooths out the peaks and valleys. As you guys know, depending on what month I look at. I mean, it could be up or down, I mean, it could vary wildly. So by doing the twelve month moving totals, smooths out this uh the peaks and valleys of of our data. So step one, right there, you can already see, let's just look at for twenty twenty two. T R T brought in nine million, oh twelve, six nineteen. And then to twenty twenty three, seven million, nine thirty three, oh twelve. But those were twelve months of T R T taxes and all in the uh. Okay, so that's the first step, there's just the numbers. Then I come down and I just do the average. T R T from twenty two to twenty three. It brought twelve percent, as you can see in the table below, the twenty twenty three percent change minus twelve. So it's just simple math, that means. T R T of seven point nine million. Minus twenty twenty two. Divided by twenty two, it is just the the that difference divided by the the oldest year gives you the percent uh change. So the second chart. There's just the top chart we're looking at, that's just totals, twelve month totals. Then down a little bit, that is the percent change from year to year by tax category. You know, Sweden right here, you can see, you know, T R T went down twelve percent, it went up five percent, but down three percent. Um, for those three years. Now, so my estimating model then says, well, I'm gonna take the average of those three years to figure out or to estimate what the current year is gonna be. So T R T in the highlight, average three-year change, minus three point three, it's just the average of those three notes. Science, art, you know, you call it what what way you like, it's this simple, it's just that average. And so if I had to estimate what's gonna happen for the remainder of this year for T R T. Using just this forecasting model, I say we're gonna go down three point three percent. There's no economic value in what I'm trying to do, there's no political value in what I'm trying to do, it's just simple math. And then that bar column, it takes all of the different taxes, you can see the average three-year. T R T minus three point three, restaurant up three point nine, one up from sales and county option. One point two oh for hospital, minus four point three for car rental. The total average minus one point five. That's the simple average, Brian, you've asked about this before, if I do the weighted average, it's really close, it's about one point three. But I use the simple average here to. But but that simple total average is used for nothing, other than to communicate. How overall taxes are going, it's my forecast tax, I do it by the line level. I never just take minus one point five and and calculate a forecast. So that total average is really just for us to communicate, you know, what our taxes down. So the minus six percent, that's just what we've achieved so far this year. That's kind of just a fact of the matter, you know, or. For this year, but this is the forecasting model. Now, there is another option to do forecasting. Instead of doing a three-year, twelve-month moving total average, you could just look at year over year. If we look at year over year, and I'll just point it out, instead of doing this average. We could just look at what's happened right now. So in that case, we'd say T R T is, if we got year over year, it was just down two point nine percent. Brought up eight point eight percent. You know, down the line, but the average there is a little bit worse, but year over year, it's minus three point one percent. So if we use a one-year over-year average, our revenue forecast could be slightly lower. So I think we have. Well, let's go down to the next chart. Now I want to just talk about three possible options we have available for amending the budget today. And it's up to you guys, because all of these numbers are good. We could, um, actually, let's talk about, we could just say we're minus six percent below our. Income there to our target. If the rest of the year happens just like it does right now, it'd be fair to say we might be six percent under by the end of the year. Okay, there's one option, minus six, that's the the most aggressive, I guess, or the the worst case scenario. If we use a year-over-year forecast, we could assume that it's gonna be minus three point one percent for the rest of this year. If we use the three-year average, we are smoothing out all of the peaks and valleys and. But it also goes back in history a little bit, and maybe three years ago, doesn't matter, maybe it's too far in the past, but that would look at a minus one. So we started the budget year using the minus one point five, the three-year total. We could argue, have we missed that a little bit more than we thought? Maybe that's not as good of a measure or a method to use. So we have three options here as we go into this budget amendment. Worst case, minus six point one, because that's what we've achieved so far, or one-year average, just year over year, that's about a minus three percent. Or the three-year average of a minus one point one. That's just food for thought for our exercise.
So I have a question, when you say worst-case scenario of six point, I know those numbers have been flipping around a little bit, but say, let's use a six point six, which is what I think it is. That's been trending down this year, didn't start out at a negative six point six percent, it's been trending down. So worst case is, we could continue trending negatively further would be worst case.
Now, yeah, I'm I'm using a forecast, it's all a crystal ball, but it's using the math that we've had to date. So it is important to say, we have not, we've been under the entire year. I mean, we've been negative in our in our budget to actual variance, we've been under the whole time, so yes, we are have not. Even up to our estimation.
And so to follow up, thank you, Stephen, uh, so to follow follow up on that, year-to-date, this is the bottom of this document, bold, year-to-date actuals for these across these sales and use tax revenues. Um, is six point four million. Uh, the projection method that we used to enter in our projections for this year. Um, have would have had us at six point eight million at this point. Um, so that difference is four hundred and six thousand or negative six point one percent. And so that negative six point one percent is the metric that's currently being used in the tentative amendment budget that's presented in the packet. Um, and so and so in the simplest terms, as Stephen has said, this assumes we'll end the year uh six point one percent below what that original budgeted projection was. Um, and so that that's kind of currently what we're, uh, you know, what's entered. I would say that. There needs to be any other discussion about that, um, otherwise we, you know, we can move on with that assumption.
A quick question, which is uh of the upper graph.
Yep.
Roll it up just a little bit there. Uh, twenty twenty three percent change was twelve point or it was twelve percent uh down. Now, does the the twenty twenty four percent change, four point nine percent, base its numbers off of.
Previous.
The previous year? So we'd still be, I mean, five percent, we'd still be six percent. Down from twenty twenty two numbers there? Or does it, like, the twenty twenty four percent change, what's the base number that it was run off of, was it the pre- previous year?
Yeah, so go back up again, go up again. This, that's why it's important to understand, Gabe, let's just look at T R T. The twelve-month ending period, June twenty twenty two. And its prior twelve months was nine million. Roughly.
Yeah.
In that same period for the following year, July twenty twenty two to June twenty twenty three was seven point nine, so it's. There's a difference between those two, so it it jumps from bucket to bucket, that percent change. Just goes from that twelve-month period to twelve-month period, twelve-month period.
I just wanted the the point in my head to be like, we were twelve percent down and we weren't up the next year, we were just less down.
Those are the numbers, yeah.
Four-year recession then.
Well, but twenty twenty two is coming off of twenty one, which was the post-COVID year, which we all agreed that was this, like, explosive year. We we all, to me, an outlier.
But we're starting in, but if you look at the numbers starting in twenty twenty two, we start to level that big.
Right.
Lot and then peak.
Yeah.
Was at the end of twenty twenty one, so twenty twenty two is kind of a nice place.
Yeah, 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 exactly, I agree with you, yeah, so I mean, to me, yeah, I agree with you, I guess, to me, twenty twenty two is.
It's still a reaction.
That that reaction.
Still a reaction from.
Yeah, maybe I didn't make that, okay, thank you.
And then Steve, I'd like to just add that I know Commissioner Hadler has joined us on Zoom, and so just letting the, I believe, can people know that he's with us as well, and then I believe County Attorney will say something.
Just just to make sure everything's as clear as it can be, in the beginning, you explained that we had our projection originally, and then that percentage, basically, our three point one percent is the. Reduction from what our estimate was, right, um, good so far?
Yes.
Okay, then on this document, that doesn't, we're not looking at any of the forecast from last year.
I update that forecast each monthly, so the forecast we made in December is history.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just making sure for for everybody that's trying to follow along on online, these are, these numbers are independent of that.
That's right.
That amount, that's all.
Like most forecasts are, they're as good as the following day.
Right.
Throw them out.
Yeah, I just didn't want anybody to try to kind of figure out what our previous number was and then try to guess that number and then try to apply it to this, because it applied to this.
I do want to jump on what Gabe said, it's important to note that we've, I said there's three options, the six point one option or the one point five or the three point one. The budget amendment that's posted online is what I consider the worst case, the minus six point one. And I was, I was hearing from, you know, the commissioners, we still change it, but I was hearing like. We need to address this aggressively and not try to be optimistic, so the amendment is. A minus, assuming we're gonna be minus six point one percent in revenue collection at the end of the year.
And so just a question on that, so it's using a round number of our uh revenue at about like twenty two million, it's kind of what we came up with the last meeting. So in between the three point one and the six point one, we're looking at reduction there, anywhere between seven hundred and seventy thousand to one point one point three million. Yes. Okay, just to make sure that you understand that correctly.
Okay, um, I'm gonna touch base here because with this um, with this updated uh end-of-year projection that's entered into this tentative uh amendment. Um, that that brings some updated numbers with regards to the di- uh different revenue projection lines. Uh, including uh one of the larger ones here, which is the, which is T R T mitigation. And how some of that money is allocated uh as a general fund offset, so it's particularly relevant to this conversation. Um, and so starting with this yellow shaded box here, um, this is, this is basically the amended projections that are currently entered into the tentative budget. And so the the total amended projection um go uh. From, it goes from eight million seventy one, which is what what is, we started off the year at, uh, to seven million five hundred and eighty four. Now, that seven million five hundred and eighty four, there, that that's that updated, that's that that takes into account um how we performed against projections up to up to this point. Um, what we also need to do is run that, run that projection through changes that are effectuated by the by House Bill four hundred fifty six. Four fifty six, so that's up the up here in green, so there's some calculations, uh, the final quarter of the year, there's an extra quarter percent that is, will be levied. Um, and so that that's seven million five eighty four, uh, with uh H B four fifty six enacted goes up to seven million six ninety six. And then that, so that total raw number then gets, then then goes through a whole process of of getting split up based on. Uh, the split as it was, as it existed in the first half of the year. Um, and as it exists in the second half of the year, as well as the uh the extra quarter percent that that goes effective in the final quarter. And so what what we come out to is a an updated projection of T R T mitigation receipts of four million five seventy six. And when you compare that to what had been originally entered into the budget and or allocations to recipient um entities, whether it's the general fund or not. Um, at the beginning of the year, uh, there was an expected amount of five million eight four. And with the, with this updated projection and with House Bill four fifty six uh taken into account. Uh, that that goes down to four million five seventy six. Uh, that that difference being five hundred and eight thousand ninety nine dollars, like eighty-five cents, is uh is what we expect to come under our original projection.
Question on the uh calculation, uh, between seven one and ten one. Right there, it looks like you used forty-four percent for that.
Okay, um, let's see. For the, on the mitigation here?
No, just on the total tape, right, because when I looked at uh H B four fifty six, it's the first two percent of the tax rate. So from seven one to ten one, two percent of four point two five, since we're not collecting that four point five. So. Until October. Are you following me? Hmm, right, so it should be, instead of, hold on, so you had take two divided by, oh, uh, hold on, four point two five. And that beginning or that percentage from um July first through October first should be forty-seven percent and fifty-three percent, I think. I think you have it here as forty-four percent and sixty-six, is that right? Fifty-six. First, is that, is that me?
First, yeah. I see.
Yeah, you you have it at four and a half, but since we're not collecting the half percent at that, in that time period, it still states in 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 four fifty six, it's the first two percent of the tax rate. It doesn't say the first two percent of the four and a half percent. So I just wanted to make sure that we update that, update that right there so that it's.
Thank you.
I think is it's gonna, it's gonna shift the numbers just a little bit there.
Okay, thank you, I I will absolutely uh update that.
Yeah, I would also wonder. And as we aren't collecting our taxes, at least they're on a two-month lag, we're really not gonna see this, any of this revenue increase until December, correct? If it starts the fourth quarter, we would not see any actual increase in revenue until December.
It it gets accrued back in, so those collections that we make in twenty six will get put back in.
Okay, thank you.
Good question. Um, all right, so that that's the notes that I wanted to present for the revenues, uh, next, we'll move on to. The budget workshop document, it's called Budget Workshop seven one. And I'll try to kind of get through this document, so this first page is a a summary of all of the lines that were amended in the in the in the entire. Budget document that are highlighted yellow in the in the larger, you know. A few dozen-page budget document, so this kind of pulls all the all the lines that were changed and summarizes them. Um. I could, I could go through these now, I could, I I could maybe touch on them now, I could touch on them when we open the public hearing later, um. I guess, um. Not sure how we, I I I just want to be cognizant of folks here that, you know, the presentations that might need to happen, and I don't want to gobble up too much time. Um, and I want to make sure, you know, I do want to touch on this uh eventually, um, is there any, should I run through these quickly?
Yeah, I would say.
All right, so we have, uh, again, Stephen mentioned that negative six point one percent, uh, that that's the average uh decrease relative to projections. Uh, but each each line um is, has been reduced based on um how it is actually performing relative to to projections. Um, and so it might, it might not be negative six point one percent, but it is a um exactly, you know, what we projected each individual line out to be.
Okay, I just clarify that real quick, so like, let's look at um the uh the T R T, T R T was down like eight percent, I think. So then, are you saying that you took eight percent off the T R T or did you stick with the six percent?
Let me clarify, in this case. It is minus six point one across all tax categories.
Okay, thank you.
Before I was doing it by the individual.
That's why I just wanted to.
Form, but now this is just.
It's interesting. Okay, thanks, but I needed that clarification myself, obviously, and. Okay, so um we've got some revenue updates here that are that are proposed to be amended. Um, some de- a decrease in sales and use tax and county quarter percent sales tax. Um, there are some other revenue lines that um I amended upwards in terms of revenue, if our year-to-date receipts have come in already up up to now over what we. Uh, what we initially budgeted. So that applies to the state search and rescue, uh, Grand County Sheriff's Office, Homeland Security, overtime reimbursement, jail bail forfeiture grants. Uh, that's money that is has already been received above uh budget, so I'll go ahead and amend up there. Um, the Recreation Special Service District has contributed a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for projects that have been completed at O S T. Versus a hundred is what we, what we had um predicted uh in building the budget initially, so that's been moved up. Miscellaneous revenue, that's a line that um is used for some grant uh receipts um in our intergovernmental category, and so. Um, the, you know, oftentimes grants come up throughout the year that we can, we can't always predict, and so oftentimes that revenue comes in a lot higher than what we originally budgeted for. Um, this number, contribution, general fund surplus, so this is important for the conversation to come. Uh, we have, we had originally budgeted to pull one point one million out of the general fund surplus to create a balanced budget. Um, and that is, that is um operating under the assumption that there's a historical underspend, which is kind of kind of rung true year over year. And that 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 pull from the fund balance would, it wouldn't, isn't actually expected to act to actually occur. Um, and I'll touch base, we'll we'll touch base on on where we sit with that. Um, e- e- essentially, uh, we we, you know, I I have a high degree of confidence that we're already set to underspend by that amount. Um, however, with the in, with the increase in some unplanned expenses and decreases in revenue. Uh, our current, the current proposed amendment calls for a pull of one point nine seven million from the fund balance to balance the budget. So basically, the main thing I want to say is this one point nine seven million, um, it's not, it's not just adding eight hundred to this, uh, to what we originally want um budgeted in the red for. Uh, this is, this essentially, I I have a high degree of confidence that we 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 were already running balanced without this draw from the fund balance. However, with our new realities throughout this year, um, one point nine is the current um. Is the current amount that would be needed to fulfill all of originally budgeted expenses. Uh, professional services is an expense line and and.
Hey, Gabe?
Yes.
Is that, does that come from both the capital, uh, the the capital projects and the general fund then?
Now, that's just general funds.
So that's exclusive of of things like the um, uh, like the O S T gates, et cetera?
Correct, yeah, it doesn't.
Thank you.
Include, doesn't include the C J C or the O S T, O S T gates, yep. Um. Professional services um is an expense line, some, there are some legal and also recruiting services that were accrued there that have come over budget so far this year, so we'll amend that up. Economic development grants are no longer administered through Fund Twenty Three, but now into Fund Ten, so that amendment is more, that that is memorialized in this amendment with an offsetting revenue, because it's just kind of a pass-through of those state funds. Um, there's a separate document in this, there's a separate sheet in this document that describes the current underspend in salary and benefits that is projected to play out. By the end of this year, that was prepared by H R. Um, and so it just says, it's just a note here to see. Um and so it just says, it's just a note here to see the detailed breakout department by department. I'll touch on a couple of ano- anomalies in that document. Just so there's not any confusion there. Um and then contribution to other funds, so there's, you know, we originally budgeted. Through different funding sources to fund certain things, so I, you know, I don't have the authority to defund anything, I so. My my task right now is to fund what was originally planned to be funded and then the commission can decide. Um you know, if it wants to allocate contributions to other funds to make up for shortfalls that have occurred. Uh and so in this case, we have a Grand County Active Trails and Transportation. Um and the allocations made of TRT mitigation. Um and the uh allocations made for TRCCA revenues. Um for those to be made whole based on what, you know, but based on what was planned at the beginning of the year. Um these contributions would need to be made and that that number comes from this draw from the fund balance um. Then we have uh the Grand County EMS contribution, there's a there's a dedicated budget line for that, um that uh approved decrepmenture. And then we're moving into Fund twenty one here, that's the fund that is administered by the roads departments uh um for county optional sales tax. Uh that revenue is down a a small bit, the Fund twenty one had budgeted to put in one hundred and seventy eight thousand. Into its fund balance to balance, um and that so their 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 uh contribution to savings will be decreased. As a result of the decrease in revenue in Fund twenty one. Then on to twenty two, that's the TRCCA, there's a there's a number of and and Stephen, this is. This is why I thought, you know, this is why I I had made the assumption about it being line by line, because these these separate. Um line revenues based on the the updated projections you had given me. Um so like, for example, the O H V tax went up, you know, based on how it's performing.
That's a great thing, because in the original estimate, O H V was. It's presumed to be worse than six point one percent down. Okay, the original estimate had like a minus eight percent forecast, so moving it to six point one in some cases.
Interesting, okay, thank you for that clarification. Um and then a transfer from other funds, so this is um. This is displayed here in this contribution to other funds. Um which would be a the contribution that would be had had that would have to be made from the general fund. To the fund that administers TRCC, that's Fund twenty two, to make whole the budgeted allocations to the recipients of that of that funding. Which is law enforcement, uh O S T A and the fireworks, so we are the three recipients of TRCC. Funds in the twenty twenty five budget. And there's the Moab Office of Tourism Department Budget, that's Fund twenty three. Um I've got that included in this document in detail line by line. Um we have the downturn in TRT mitigation, um that will um. That's Fund twenty six, um as discussed here moments ago, we'll we'll be we'll likely need to do some updating to those figures. Um and the um the amount that would need to be transferred from the general fund to make that fund whole to. Make all of the planned uh uh full planned budgeted allocations to recipient entities of TRT mitigation funds. Um and then uh Grand County Active Trails and Transportation operates out of Fund forty seven. Um TRT revenue is removed as a transfer to that fund. Um and the 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 budgeted planned funding of of that fund by those funds is currently in in the tentative. Um replaced by a general fund, uh a general fund transfer. Okay, so those are the those are the proposed amendments that currently entered into this tentative amendment. Go on to the next sheets.
Um just a quick clarification.
Yeah.
ERCC is Star Hall Airport, West End, fireworks, law enforcement is. Correct?
Um. It's definitely Star Hall, I I think it's law, I think it is law enforcement and not airports um here. I'd have to, I'd have to look back on it, I I did, I did check it before the meeting here. Um it has been used to be allocated to to uh. Well, there's one way, we could just go right to it, why don't we do that? So here's Star Hall, there's that amount of twenty one four fifty nine. And then in the twenty five adopted budget, we have fireworks.
Yep, for eighteen.
That service.
Airport for six hundred and fifty thousand.
In airport, okay, great, thank you. So, yeah, it must have been, okay, well, so we try, we 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 had moved what what was law enforcement last year to airport uh this year. Okay, so thank you for that clarification. Uh right, alright, so I I just, there's some cells in red here and there's some explanations, it's not because. Um it's not very straightforward as to why those have occurred and I just wanna explain real quick. Um so there are some discrepancies on how benefits and salaries were allocated for the twenty twenty five budget, just on some. There were some, there was, there was a little bit of loss of institutional knowledge and how certain, how a couple positions salaries were allocated into what department. And so that we're just, there's there's just a little bit of a cleanup happening. So sheriff is showing their projection to be above what was initially projected. But as you can see, uh search and rescue, you had entered into the original budget, three fifty six and one twenty for salary and benefits. And that's being amended down to one oh five five and one thousand. That's mainly because these the SAR salary and benefits had always been used just for the the part time search and rescue staff. And that 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 is made up by that one oh five and that one thousand. Whereas the uh the 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 full time stat like the SAR commander Brad uh Brad Heinz, for example. Uh he had always been included in the sheriff salaries and benefits and we just wanna be consistent from year to year and how we do that. Um and so that that's why this two eighty three, two million eighty three and the sheriffs went up to two million one sixty three. Uh because some of those SAR positions um were moved from these SAR s- um salary and benefits. To the sheriff salary benefits and um also the the U R S benefit increase is is contained in here, so. The 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 increase in projection for the sheriff benefits um it. Is is it partly explained by the additional eighteen thousand in U R S tier two benefits, I think it's called. Um and so there's that, there there's that anomaly. Um as well as this has come up, Mel had mentioned it in the last meeting, we were looking at community center and senior center. Um as you can see, community center had been had been budgeted salary and benefits in twenty twenty uh for for beginning in twenty twenty five. And that was just a bit of a misunderstanding, um it's something that would have been cleaned up at the end of the year amendment, certainly. Uh but we'll, we have the opportunity now to clean that up and break out some of these senior center salary benefits into community center. And as you can see, these these this, these uh these very, these variances are are almost identical and how they're shaking out. Uh and so that explains the red and community center, cause that was decreased by almost the same amount in senior center. Um the eighteen thousand in O S T A is there was, we we can sometimes guess on new hires uh regarding what type of uh. What type of benefit package, um you know, an individual uh staff person might take. Uh but that that doesn't always play out exactly how it's predicted, um and so there were, there was just a difference here in. Um that that whatever um benefit package was was selected by a staff person, so. That explains that eighteen thousand uh variance uh in benefits, it can make a big, quite a big difference even one with one step. So um overall, the the variance here is under, just for salary and benefits alone in the general fund. The 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 variance is under nine hundred and fifty eight thousand eight hundred and seventy one dollars. Uh and so these these updated projections in green and red have been entered into this proposed tentative amendment. Um because we know that this is what we're likely gonna end up spending. And certainly, I mean, we're halfway through the year, um hopefully we don't have too many more vacancies, but certainly on, you know, they're they're likely. You know, again, I don't, I don't wanna wish for it, I want us to stay fully staffed and effective, but. There will likely be more, you know, there will likely be uh, you know, more underspend, maybe not much more. Um throughout the rest of the the second half of this year. Okay, and then um the Fund twenty three uh but uh detailed budget. Is outlined here, that includes the um. The update in transient room tax revenue, which we'll have to update again based on some of the. The the feedback that I received from Commissioner Martinez today, thank you again for that. And then there's a increase in what is being offered to Maddy, Mavon, the media agency um to increase advertising. A media that line. That's really the only thing that's different from what had been discussed earlier this year. Um because the twenty twenty five original budget, um you know, had had been done hastily and a lot of these lines are brand new to the budget. Because I know, I knew this house cleaning would have to occur to be able to to break out these um all of these expenses appropriately. And so going on to the last um page in this document. So there's just a, there's a, there's an estimated current general fund reserve balance of roughly ten million dollars. And so we had this ten point six at the close of twenty twenty four. Um there's reimbursements from the general fund of TRT to Fund twenty three. Uh for trail ambassador costs in twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four in the amount of six hundred and seventeen, seven hundred and forty one dollars.
Uh question on that?
Yeah.
Is just, so then what about the first half of twenty five on that?
Uh huh.
And then reserve, the reserve fund from. From forty seven as well.
Uh huh, yeah, so the uh the first half of twenty twenty five, we we can, you know, that 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 cake isn't cooked yet. And so essentially, we can just recode all of those expenses and we can treat them as though they were never spent out of uh Fund twenty three.
Got it.
And and so that that's what's represented by this entire five twenty six number here, you know, we can back all that out um or we will. Um and so that that doesn't have to be reimbursed if it hasn't technically been spent in that way. Um I don't have the reimbursement from Fund forty seven to Fund twenty three. Uh based on the fund balance there, I don't have that reflected right now um in this document um. I that's something that we will note and and make a transfer for um for the twenty twenty four financial statements. Um and so i- it's relation, um just as, you know, it's relation to this, the conversation right now about the twenty twenty five budget. Um is is not necess- because it doesn't have an impact on the general fund reserve balance, it has an impact on the the Fund twenty three reserve balance. Um you know, I decided to leave that out of this conversation.
Okay, I understand. And then do you know when we'll have those breakdowns of the restricted funds for twenty three and forty seven?
Uh. I think we'll have to, like, ju- just like the currents uh.
Correct, yeah, yeah, I mean, I just, I'd like to know, you know, as we're going into this, you know, toxic deficit. What do we have sitting inside of the Fund twenty three, what are those funds, are they TR? Or the uh uh um are the TRT promotion or the TRT or the TRT uh uh two A two, right? I don't know what that breakdown is sitting inside of our TRT fund. Um same way with Fund forty seven, right, I was asking, you know, what part of that is grants, what part of that is option? What part of that was TRT in that in those reserve accounts? I think those are the questions that I've been asking for a while, which would be helpful right now as we're going into, you know, funding deficits. Know what our reserves actually are and what it could be used for.
Um. Okay, certain, yeah, I I mean, I guess it would be um, it would be relative, relevant to this conversation to make up funding in Fund forty. Seven if there were, if there was available fund balance in that, um I guess that that would be. I, you know, I I see that being very relevant, of course, to the twenty twenty six budget preparation cycle and just knowing exactly what those fund balances are, certainly. Um and as, you know, I, but I think uh. And and certainly, we have to, we're having to monitor the Fund twenty three reserve balance, so it's not coming up against statutory limits. Um so certainly, we wanna make sure that we're we're identifying what's in there. Um I have reached out to Squire, the uh uh the accounting consultants and to see if that they would do a third party analysis. Of the of the Fund twenty three fund balance, um and look at that historic's um. The Fund forty seven fund balance, I have a, I have a pretty confident breakdown of of. Um what that, what that balance is and what the amount of that would be in there, TRT that needs to be reimbursed to Fund twenty three.
Uh I mean, but there's also, I mean, it's a restricted fund, so there's also restrictions on the grants that we have and there's also going to be restrictions. On option sales tax.
Right.
Right, so I just wanna know what the makeup is of that reserve account.
Okay, um I can present that, the Fund forty seven analysis that I have, I can present that by the end of this week, certainly. Um and then I I'll provide along with that an update on. Um you know, what the goal is for identifying Fund twenty three uh restrictions and that and that reserve balance.
Just a clarification there, that doesn't impact our budget amendment, it's just balances within a fund. Right?
Right, yeah, okay.
Yeah, it's separate.
It's separate, but it's also relevant, just right, it's there and it helps paint that entire picture of what is available.
Okay, so um so moving forward here, the, so we have this current tentative budgeted draw from the general fund reserve balance. That's in the the proposed tentative amendment and this, this assumes that all allocations may predicted or ma- or planned. In the beginning of the twenty twenty five budget year, um will be executed in full, will be made whole. Um and so that, um if you, and and so that's that's encapsulated in. Um you know, fun uh contribution to Fund forty seven for Grand County Active Trails and Transportation where 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 it had been funded by TRT. Um the funding, the allocations of TRT mitigation. Uh the allocations of TRCC and then allocations within the general, an allocation, that that I guess this one isn't an allocation, this is merely. Uh revenue that we plan to receive in the general fund of sales tax, um that we don't expect to receive. Um along with a few unplanned expenses that have been presented here with the uh the contribution to EMS, H R expenses. And the U R S contribution increase, um what I think is particularly valuable for the conversation is that. Because of this, because of this uh underspend in salary and benefits. Um being very close to what we are assumed underspend would be for a balanced budget. Um this this uh this, I'm fairly confident comes out of wash by the end of the year in terms of what we underspend and and, you know, maybe some. Maybe some types of revenue coming in. Um so basically, what we have here is a a current budgeted draw from the fund balance that is exactly. Or is almost exactly equal to um some of these unplanned expenses that we have coming. Or that 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 currently are entered into the tentative. Um and so the it basically, there's kind of this one to one relationship to if uh if you as the commission decide to keep all of these allocations whole. Um it, you know, it's ba- you know, it's this sort of easy one to one link to what is being pulled, what is, what would be planned to be pulled from the fund balance to do so. Um. And then just a little bit of data here at the bottom, what the final budget was last year, opening budget, um this year, twenty twenty two million. Um this uh tentative amended uh budgets. About twenty two eight ninety because of some unplanned expenses that were added in. And the and fifty percent of the budget year of this twenty twenty five budget year, based on the tentative um amendment. And what we have currently spent to date, so this is like halfway through the budget year, you know, budgets don't exactly work on a linear, in a linear fashion. But it's one, it's one thing that can be looked at, um that we're generally underspending our year to date fifty percent of our budget. Through fifty percent of the year.
But we all have revenues for two years prior and everything hasn't landed, correct?
Right. So, um.
And then back to your line there, amount over budgeted in twenty five, assuming historical underspend.
Yeah.
Of a million one hundred thousand. Number below also the nine fifty eight, those two numbers, shouldn't they add up to your one million nine seventy seven? And. Or am I not understanding what you've got there?
So this, so um here, let me do my best to just kind of start from square one, so this is what we originally budgeted. Um to overspend, knowing that we wouldn't, you know, just being feeling confident that we wouldn't spend it. Or at least the majority of the commission, myself and my own recommendation. And so the nine fifty eight represents up to this, up to this point and based on salary and benefits alone. Um what we've already underspent.
Oh, but does not include the one point three million that we're looking to be forecasted short.
Right, because that's encapsulated up here.
Right, so those two would basically wash each other out, we still have our short work that we have to deal with.
Correct, but I just, I wanted to make clear that the the deficit that we're looking at. Is not related to our 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 practice of over budgeting to.
I understand, yeah.
That that's all I wanted to pound out, because those things could easily get. Yeah, that, that's all I wanted to pump out, because those things could easily get kind of, um, you know, it could make the co- it would, it could make it more complicated. Um, sure, but we're, we're kind of lucky in some ways to have this kind of one to one relationship here, and I mean, see. We can see exactly what the impacts of all the making, of keeping these allocations whole would be.
And then, did you have a question, Stephen?
No, I, I was just keeping an eye on the clock, and I thought you guys were moving on to the commission meeting at three, but it's at three thirty, so I don't know how many presentations you guys have, but. Being mindful of leaving time. Yeah, um, and so, yeah, tha- thanks, Stephen, I, I, that's. I, I do have a, a document that I added on just this afternoon, because Commissioner McCandless had asked for a overview of capital expenditures for this year. Um, ultimately, the, you know, obviously, capital expenditures are, it's, it's an important conversation, um. But ultimately, that activity, um. I don't want to say it's not germane to the twenty twenty five budget amendment, but we know that there's a balance, um, and. You know, there should be an update of what that balance will be, based on, you know, upcoming, uh, you know, potential expenditures. Um, but because right now, it's like pickleball isn't an act, the pickleball court isn't an action item on this agenda, um. I, I felt like it was, it would just add more to this conversation at the moment, which isn't necessarily germane to us amending this budget. Um, it's just kind of its own, i- i- in some ways, I, I mean, it's, it's separate but related uh conversation about. Um, how the capital reserve, reserve funds might be used. Um, so yeah, that, that's, that's what I have for now, um, and so basically what I would, uh, you know, there are some presentations to be had. Um, but ultimately, I think, um, you know, what I wanted to tee up as much as possible. Is these allocations being currently entered into the tentative from the general fund. Making up for lost, for revenues that aren't available anymore for those funding um recipients. Um, how does the commission want to proceed? Um, does it want to pull all of this money out of the general fund balance to make everything whole, or does it want to make adjustments? And that, that's, that's basically what I really wanted to get to today.
But that's gonna come bef- after we've had our presentations.
I would think so.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Correct, and then I have a question on our presentations before we bring them up. Um, and I'll use this museum as an example. I believe that line item, it's a hundred and twelve thousand and change or something, but. Has that money already been given to the museum that has not? And, and I guess my question is would be is why, because if it was budgeted for them for twenty twenty five. When do they receive that money?
Given you sound, right, quarterly?
Uh, maybe there has been quarter, sorry.
It's quarters, yeah.
I'm sorry.
That, that, that answers my question.
And I believe solid waste as well, um, we, we disperse to them quarterly.
Quarterly, okay, I, I wasn't sure if it was a one time or however.
Thanks.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, thank you. And so we can then move into these presentations then. You're ready for that, Gabe?
I'm ready, thank you.
Okay, and we will start with the museum then, and um, I'll, I'll just remind everybody, it's, it's pretty fuss. This isn't a chance to give us a thirty minute spiel, we want to keep things to under ten minutes if possible. And then uh, some time for some questions if we have them. And we thank you very much for being here.
Thank you. We're gonna keep it under seven, yeah. Um, we're just gonna talk, we've got slides for you that you're welcome to look over, but we're just gonna chat with you today. Uh, my name is Megan Vickery, I'm the Director of Programs at the Moab Museum.
And I'm Ally Donnell, I'm the Director of Collections, we are two of four. Um, Director Sharing Executive Function at the Moab Museum. Um, the museum has received quarterly appropriations from Grand County since the nineties. While the museum's transitioned from a county entity to a nonprofit one. Um, appropriations have funded general operations and staff salaries since that time and continue to do so. Today, we'll present a summary of what we've done with um, our appropriate, or our appropriations this year so far. And what we plan to do for two, three, four.
Great, so in the first two quarters of the year, um, we've seen great success at the museum so far. You've seen admission of, um, just about seventy two percent year over year since twenty twenty four. Um, and membership rates as well have been growing, membership for museum has been up hundred and forty six percent since twenty twenty two. Um, reflecting both local and regional support that contributes financial stability as well as our general. High reputation across town, across town and across the region. Um, we've done a plethora of programming this year, including the history for guides training. This spring, we trained seventy local guides, including, including Commissioner Martinez, um, and his team at AFTEC, um. Providing accurate historical information to help them share mob stories effectively with visitors. Um, we've also opened one of our biggest exhibits yet, United Two Mob's Uranium Legacy, which has included. Um, several programs and um, welcoming just over five hundred attendees to those um exhibit related programs. Um, we bring exceptional visiting speakers and scholars who, in addition to the attendees, also speak very highly of their experience at the museum. For example, after his March shock at Star Hall, author Tom Zoller said museum staff are very impressive. And he was blown away by the United Two exhibit object quality, the signage, and the visible press to be stranded on par with what a graduate mind. Might expect to see at a major. Uh, we're also an important educational resource for students, offering free field trips for Grand County classrooms. Um, and we've served fifty five students so far this year through private tours and field trips from. Both Grand County as well as Weber County here in Utah and Steepwood Springs, Colorado. Um. Yeah, I have those.
Um, we've also made a lot of collections upgrades in Q one and two, um, that have been focused on accessibility and awareness. So we've increased public accessibility to the collections, the archives, the records, the one on one. Um, assisted research appointments for documentarians, authors and local enthusiasts. We've also implemented a series called Collection Stories that connects viewers with a deep dive of objects on and off exhibit. Um, and then we've started preparing public tours of our collection storage facility as well. We've been focused on professionalization, so last November, we completed a collections for preservation assessment program. And have been implementing those recommendations this year that align the museum with national standards and collections care. And lastly, we've been focused on growth too, um, and seeking private funding for necessary collection scope and space upgrades. Including professional storage solutions to house one of a kind prospects critical to the preservation of our region's history.
Well, that was the first half of the year, looking ahead, we uh, um. Want to mention that we are closely intertwined with the county's trails tomorrow plan. Functioning as the premier cultural institution for visiting tourists and as a community focused homegrown organization, supporting the lives of locals as well. Um, the Trails Tomorrow's go- goals of growing tourism adjacent businesses alongside fostering a tourism economy. That continues to support community happiness are equally met by the operations at the museum. Um, and this is demonstrated by what's coming in the rest of the year.
Um. In the rest of the year, we'll open our second phase of our current uranium exhibition, uh, titled United Two Aftermath. Which documents the fallout of uranium mining or what it had on human health and environment. Aftermath will invite viewers to reflect on how environmental challenges can inspire change. Encouraging a collective commitment to restorative practices that broaden our mining legacy here. Uh, associated programming will include content experts, history focused field trips. And new opportunities for peer to peer learning, uh, bringing local mining workforce into the gallery. And while that's up and running, we'll also be planning for the semi quintessential in twenty twenty six. Uh, which is America's two hundred and fiftieth birthday, um, and museums are participating nationwide. Uh, our goal is promote our institution as a primary platform for semi quintessential planning. Via partnerships with several cultural institutions and leaders from across the region.
Um, so alongside all of these programs and collections, preservation and all of these operations. Um, the co-leadership team is ensuring that the museum is financially healthy and sustainable. Um, and in that regard, we've conducted a large financial overhaul, maximize revenue, reduce our expenditures. And we've also undertaken the task of building out a more robust grant program. Um, demonstrating both financial responsibility and dedication to being able to support all of our programming. Building exhibitions and collections preservation. Uh, but all that being said, county appropriation that we are budgeted is essential to our budget. Um, as originally established in the first years of the appropriation, these funds help support operating and staffing expenses at the museum. Uh, allowing us to fulfill our mission, doing all the things that we've talked about today, um, under the leadership of a dedicated team professionals. Um, given recent cuts of federal funding, including from the NEH and NEA. And Institute for Museum and Library Services, um, our financial future is closely intertwined with that of the county's appropriation. And we, um, yeah, urge that it maintains at the amount budgeted for.
Any questions, Trish?
Um, approximately, do you know approximately what percent um, our contribution is of your total budget?
Twenty percent.
Okay. And then I have one more question, is that okay to ask?
Yes.
Um, what, how much federal funding have you lost? And again, maybe it's a percentage or a, just a, I don't know.
Yeah, historically, we, the federal funding that we received is modeled through state funding opportunities. Um, we've received a small amount of those this year so far, but looking forward, we're not anticipating.
Right. Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, when you guys mentioned that you're pursuing grant funding, which I greatly appreciate, I know. You know, in, in the program thing that I do, um, it's looking bleak. Future, so, so, thank you.
Originally, um, with the CAT program that I was talking about, we were going to apply for a larger IDH grant, around fifty thousand dollars. And also looking like, so, yeah, I appreciate that.
Sure.
Yeah, questions, so how many people did the um, museum serve last year?
Uh, but we've been. I mean, admission, um, in terms of. Funding has been, uh, in the six to eight thousand per month so far this year. Um, which, like we said, is a year over year pretty big increase, um, it was about five to six equal months.
And where your guys, yeah, I think the second question would be, so you guys have received basically sixty thousand so far. What is the plans for the other sixty thousand that would be coming in? But, God, quarter three, quarter four.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, um, it could go largely towards our fall programming, um, for some of our benefit packages. Um, and then towards the payment of our accounting and grant services which are contracted.
Sorry, to clarify that, those are all things that could be paid for, um, with the about six percent decrease in. That appropriation, if it were to be here, that of the TRT's uh, projection. The sixty thousand as a whole could easily pay the rest of, uh, that would pay for a portion of our staff salaries for the rest.
Is it gonna go, is it gonna go to operating or is it?
Operating, yeah.
It's going to operating, let's see, that's my question, is it gonna go to operating cost, they're not going to, you know, the. And then just the, the last, you said that you guys went through a, a, a financial. Um, we'll drill down, what percentage do we guys able to cut off the expenditures?
This is off of our operating budget.
Oh.
Um, that was about a two thousand dollar difference, two hundreds, two hundred thousand dollar difference in our operating budget, uh, given changes and staffing structure. Um.
It's took, it's took off two hundred thousand off of your operating budget.
One more, just, I just want to reiterate or have you reiterate, you mentioned that admissions were up seventy two percent, is that? Did I catch that correctly? Is that from last year?
Right here, yes, from last year, I see.
And then, and then your membership is of, of a hundred and forty four percent.
That's from twenty twenty two, so that's a bigger chunk of time, yes.
Yeah, I guess one more question, sorry. Do you guys keep stats when people come in? Do you just, just admission or do you keep stats of like where people are from? Do any, do, do any kind of surveys of?
It's mostly peer to peer word of mouth surveying with our front desk, um, staff. We have been starting to keep more track, most specifically on, um, where people are hearing about us. Which a lot, large part of that is digital marketing, like showing up on Google and thinking of that when people are looking for cultural opportunities in town. Um, but surprisingly, things like the billboard that we have north of town are also pretty high on the list, so. Yeah.
All right, I don't see anything else in the chamber, Jock or Melody, any questions? If not, we'll move forward.
Thank you.
Very much, ladies, appreciate the presentation. Right. And go to Maddie and the Grand County Active Transportation and Trails.
Okay, I'm gonna share my screen, and we'll do introductions. Okay, um, my name is Madeline Logowis, I'm the Director of Grand County Active Transportation and Trails, which is the GCAT department. I brought Anna today, Anna's our program manager, so at the end, if you guys have very detailed questions about operations, she's the best person to answer that. Um, so before I get started into the budget stuff, which are uh, the attachments that I um, added to the agenda. Uh, just a, a brief overview, um, also acknowledging that I just did my annual report a few weeks ago, so there's a ton more details in there. But I did just want to do a brief, like, overview before we, we start talking about numbers. So the GCAT department has two programs, it's got the Trails uh, Infrastructure Program and then the Responsible Recreation Program. And then within the Responsible Re- Recreation Program, there are specific projects, as well as the Trail Ambassador Program, which is like the boots on the ground. Um, the Responsible Recreation Program and the Trail Ambassador Program were both developed to serve visitors primarily. Um, so some benefits of the program are that they uh, assist with visitor safety and experience. So they provide uh, area information, they help orient visitors, they provide maps, they provide water. Um, and then they also do activities to like enrich visitor experience that are uh, more or less modeled on the Junior Ranger Program. So different family friendly activities. They also educate visitors about best practices to help preserve recreation assets. Um, those recreation assets include like the trails themselves, the landscape, and then our specific attractions too. So like arches, petroglyph panels, things like that, that people are here to see. Um, and so it helps prevent degradation of those sites, so that could look like trail damage. It could look like trash and human waste on the trail or vandalism, people like scratching into a front arch or a petroglyph panel. Um, and then finally, they educate visitors about etiquette, it helps protect, protect their own experience and the experience of others. And so what that's really getting at is uh, user conflict is a threat to visitor experience. So if people are coming here and they don't quite understand what to expect or how their um, actions might offend other people, we kind of help smooth that out. And so some examples would be like noise and throw news, things like that, that people might not really understand, um, how other folks knew that. And so, um, we have a peer reviewed USC study that shows that the program does, uh, in fact have a positive experience. Or approved visitor experience, um, and some implications of that could be return visitation or word of mouth promotion, people have a good time here. Uh, and then also the long term preservation of these, these recreation assets, especially as we see more and more people sharing these same areas. If we're expecting um, increased visitor use for many years. So, that's my little spiel, and then we'll get into the budget stuff. Um, so this is an overview, there's a little bit of repeat here in that this is showing those two programs that I mentioned, the Trails Program and the Responsible Recreation Program. This is the whole picture, just to show that we're kind of talking about the yellow piece here, which is what was previously TRT, um, and now potentially it's General Fund. Breaking it out by program, so the Trails Program, um. Has optional sales tax and then all that blue is different grant funding, I did update this from my annual report to include the ORI grant, which is like one point one million dollars. And then the Responsible Recreation Program, um, has some grant funding, but primarily has historically been that TRT uh, tax. This gives a little bit of context about the different grants, so again, we're just looking at the Responsible Recreation Program. And specifically, um, what I've been presenting is for fiscal year two thousand twenty five. But some of those grants, well, all of the grants that we use, um, they're on a multi-year cycle, so we're kind of looking at what we expect. To spend out of those grants this year, but they're kind of tied to a bigger picture, so for example, our OHVR grant, uh, which pays for our OHV Ambassador Program. This year, uh, we expect to spend around a hundred and ten thousand dollars, but that full amount is over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that they've, they've given us for multi-year. Um, we also have a contribution from the South, Southeastern Utah Health Department, they've given us about thirty nine thousand dollars. Twenty three, twenty four, and then we're expecting it twenty twenty five as well. Um, and then the Moab City, uh, we have an interlocal agreement with them, which does cover educational activities within a. One mile buffer of city limits, that includes the milk cream power, uh, power dam area. Um, and then also this um, graph here that shows fiscal year twenty twenty five, the one thing to consider, one of the things to consider is that it doesn't. Um, and then also this um graph here that shows fiscal year twenty twenty-five, the one thing to consider, one of the things to consider is that it doesn't include. Grants that have been awarded that we expected, that will be factored into twenty-twenty-six and twenty-twenty-seven budgets. So we were awarded our recreational trails program um grant that we put in for the spring. So there's about a hundred thousand dollars that in that grant that's for uh Trail Ambassador staff. And then we were also awarded, it's confusingly called an NPS grant, stands for Non-Point Source. Rather than National Park Service, um, and that is for uh continuing the healthy trails position. And then we have also put in application for an all-trail stewardship fund. So just a little brief overview of operations. Um, so this is just a a little bit of a description. When we're looking at the Responsible Recreation Program, we have the specific projects, such as media projects, um, business and event outreach. Volunteer outreach and the Waste Management Initiative, and then we have the Trail Ambassador Program, and we have different focus areas. For the sake of uh the presentation, when I was pitching in the budget, we're calling those kind of subprograms, because that's how we break up the budget. Um, so there's a hiking focus, an mountain bike focus, rock climbing, and OHV. I won't go into this, but this is in the packet in case you guys have questions about like what individual staff do. Um, these are just the high-use areas that we've operated in historically. Our partners, um, and then our recognitions, who we've gotten uh awards last few years. So moving on to budget contingencies. I made that a little bigger. Oh, sorry, it went away. So, um, just a little bit about the process of kind of how I got these. So looking at the full TRT budgeted for fiscal year two thousand twenty-five. Um, that amounts at the top, and then I got the year-to-date expenditures from HR reports, so looking at what we actually spent on payroll. As well as including like what expenditures we've already uh made that show up in the Castell software. And then looking at the remainder, so the the full remainder is um three hundred and sixty-three thousand. There's also a little bit of repeat information about the grants here, uh, but what I really want you to look at is these options, one, two, and three. So these are budget contingency plans that we went through. Um, option one, the one is pretty similar to uh our planned annual budget and operations. Um, there are still savings in here, and that is because we did cut a few. Um, there's a few like large line items, uh, the Channel Six videos that are sixteen thousand dollars a year. We decided at the beginning of the year we weren't going to do that, because we already knew we were pulling from the fund balance. Um, the full salary was uh budgeted when it should have been half, because part of that is grant-funded. So we removed that, um, and then also we had a position unfilled this spring. So option one shows um ninety-three thousand dollars in savings or twenty-six percent cut. And is still pretty close to what we planned. Um, option two is making some uh eliminations to subprograms and a decreased scope of work. So those three programs are. The climbing program, the volunteer program, and the uh business programming. And then the third option is just a uh more extreme contraction, so this eliminates five different subprograms. Um, and is the most. Uh, severe cuts that we've presented here. Some things to note are that, you know, we did go through everything line item by line item, so there's like more variation available. But we just wanted to kind of keep it simple and just show the three to represent sort of the spectrum we were looking at. Um, and then that's the overview, and then they're they're kind of color-coded, so option one, this is a bit of an overview that shows the staffing plan and the purchases. We have the same thing for option two. Option three, and then for more details, we also have, um. So staffing plan is pretty well laid out in detail here, but then for the purchases, we broke them out by subprogram, so general operations. Um, promotional items, the climbing subprogram. Um, if you want more details on that, and there's three more spreadsheets that kind of go through line item by line item, I'm gonna describe, I scroll to the end here. Sort of like the um. Contingency options, right? So sort of level one cuts, level two, level three. Okay.
Anybody?
I have a question, Bill.
Yeah, go ahead, John.
So on, when you talked about option three, eliminating subprograms, you didn't let us know what those subprograms were. What what would be eliminated and what would be kept as far as the subprograms go, uh, Maddie?
Okay, so we're on the option three overview page. Um, and so that would eliminate uh two staff members, that would eliminate the lead mountain bike trail ambassador and the lead climbing trail ambassador. And then the cuts are a little bit more nuanced, um, so we've kind of color-coded like. Um. You know, how many times we kind of went in and trimmed things down, but this would eliminate. Um, all of the special programming we have for mountain biking, climbing, volunteer business, as well as broadcast media, and then there's decreases to most of the other. Items, um, with the exception of the the general operations, um, which covers, you know, like uh equipment. Like the basic equipment for the program, um, and then the safety.
So it only, basically it'd only leave the hiking and the uh OHV intact?
Correct, and the OHV is grant-funded, um, and then hiking accounts for, accounts for uh seventy-three percent of our contacts.
Okay.
So hiking is by far the the highest volume of people.
Thanks. I guess, and then the uh, and then the second option, you said you'd, it eliminates climbing, so it keeps the mountain biking program uh more or less intact?
That one, um, no, so one of the three subprograms that would be eliminated would be the um. Mountain biking program, the climbing program, and the business program, and if um. It wouldn't eliminate staff for those positions, it would just eliminate the like, um, the per, the expected purchases we have for those user groups. So for example, for the climbing program, we have um climber coffee, in the past, we've done climbing movie night events. Try and like bring these people who are all over the landscape to one event, um, so those purchases related to that program would be cut.
Okay.
Good, one of the main areas was climbing, you do Wall Street and the cinema.
Wall Street, theater cinema, and ice cream park.
All right, thank you, ladies. Appreciate the numbers. All right, Chris, we will move on to the solid waste, if you wanna. End a few minutes with this.
Sure. My name is Chris Scoville, I'm the District Manager with uh Solid Waste Special Service District, one. Um, I don't have a presentation, there's not much I can explain to you guys in ten minutes about what we do, so I'm just here to. Answer some questions, and if there's some information that I can send everybody, I'd be more than happy to, and like I had, uh. Sent an email out a few months ago, if any one of the commissioners would like to do a tour or get to know kind of what we do. I'm extending that if they think.
And I've been on that tour, just for the record, to follow up, any of you others have, it's um quite extensive what they have on on. I know he's got some very good long-range plans out there that he's working very hard on, I know Mary is the liaison to that board, but. We. We've all, or at least myself and Mary both have worked on some of the property issues around there that he's faced with, so. I don't know if anybody else has any questions.
I know, I just, maybe this is just kind of a general overview, it's like, I know for for many years, it felt like you guys were. Were were struggling.
Yes.
But do you feel a little more solid now? How are you feeling overall?
Um, yeah, we we've done some improvements, we've got some in improved cash flow. Um, I I definitely understand making cuts, uh, we were in a position where every cut we probably made for every dollar we cut. We're spending now two to five dollars, that's just the way an operational organization uh works, and I did. Um, send over kind of some uh proposals of. For the commission to consider, you know, we bill in arrears, and I know there's uh direct correlations to volumes to our operational costs. So we're kind of willing to kind of look at maybe getting paid in arrears and maybe some kind of assurances, uh, that the money that the uh commission. Gives us for TRT is spent on Grand County uh specifically. But yeah, I'm sorry, overall, yeah, we're, I mean, I have to be really careful, like, we, I try to be a little bit positive with my my board, I go in there and. You know, there's, yeah, we're doing better, but be careful, because it could be gone tomorrow.
For sure, and I really appreciate you picking the reins and doing what you've done.
Thank you.
Mary, I see you've got your hand up, please.
Yes, I just wanted to mention that things are going uh significantly better. Uh, Chris is being pretty uh modest, uh, and but uh. Every penny we have is very important, I mean, I don't see how at this point. Cutting this year's TRT that is uh the solid waste receives would uh be beneficial to anyone. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mary.
And that 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 does go to everything that we can't spend now, we're gonna be spending for tomorrow. And that's just the reality that we got, for example, we did invest in uh. Infrastructure for our rearload pickups that does the curbside pickup, well, now I'm forced to rent. Which is adding a significant uh increase in uh operational cost. And I got lots of examples like that, once again, there's not much I can do here in ten minutes, other can just try to. You got, if there's anything that I can uh provide the board as far as information or like material items.
Well, maybe if you just kind of went through, I don't know if you have your copy of your proposals that you kind of had here, I don't know if you have a second to maybe just go through them.
Uh, as far as.
Just just what you provided us here?
Oh, well, basically, yeah, I just um could, like I had mentioned, uh. We bill in arrears, and I know that our our funding from TRT is based on uh. Uh, fluctuating uh costs from tourists, so um, I mean, the the solid waste district in order to. Kind of be a a better partner with the with the county, I mean, I think that it might make sense to. Fluctuate proposals based upon the the actuals, and that would go both ways, as kind of I mentioned, if it's down, our volumes are down. Um, I think making uh partnerships with the numbers might uh uh. Be good as far as our forecasting, I could have told you guys without the numbers that things are down a little bit, I also noticed that like special events. Are are similar in the past years, but then then the often similar events are, our volumes are down. So that was one of the the things I was thinking, I don't know what, I'm sure my accountant doesn't appreciate me offering things like this, but you know, it'd be something that we could probably. Work out, and then the the other thing that I threw on there is just that, as our uh. I guess area of operation is expanded, I want the the county's money to be kind of transparent, that it would fund uh things that are directly correlated to the the county. And the community, because I'm really, that's our mandate is to serve the community, and I take that pretty serious.
Thanks for coming to class with those ideas, that's great.
How far?
Go ahead, Mike.
Uh. How far is the expanse outside of Grand County? Where do you get service now? I don't know.
Uh, all the way to Colorado, uh, Needles. Um, actually, we've been down in Bear's Ears, there was a fire down there, so we made it down to Bear's Ears, um, and then up towards Great River.
Okay. So we're not, we're not talking that far away.
Uh, when you're driving thirty-year-old trucks.
Trish, did you have something else?
Okay.
Um, there were a couple of things that came to mind for me, um. I know that you and I discussed at one time that you're missing out on tipping fees. Because we've got somebody that's been hauling trash here out of the county and.
Yes.
Are are we chasing that down? Do we have any um legal means that we can try and enforce them to use our? And film?
Honestly, that was a conversation I was gonna maybe start with with Stephen, I'm not sure, you know, to try to work out the relationship as far as, you know. What kind of uh legal uh services I can kind of lean on that the county for, um, I've identified a few other ones. I know there's the ordinance, but there is, there's, there, I don't think it's really been followed through to exactly um how that can be enforced.
Okay, and if you'll, if you'll send out an email, sometimes for the special service districts, you guys are not, um. You are a part of the county, and sometimes we'll provide some information, but I'm not necessarily your attorney for a case.
Yes.
Um, some special service districts have asked for help from my office, we're happy to help out in a way that we can, we don't want to create an attorney. Uh, client relationship, I know, um, like Thompson Special Service and uh Fire and a couple others have needed help. So if you send that email, you can send it over to my office, and then please include your commissioner, um, Commissioner McGann.
Yes.
And then that way, we can all uh continue to communicate on that.
But yeah, and that's the way I kind of felt, is this kind of, it was the beginning of a conversation, and that's a little ways down on my my priority list. But it was something that I meant to kind of get around.
Yeah, and normally, if it's gonna be like a large project, like you're going to have to sue somebody and take them to court, um. We'll we'll probably have a conversation, it's probably best for you to hire your attorney.
Yeah, oh, and that, that's the way I kind of figured it, but at least kind of get some guidance, get the the county commission. Obviously, if there's an ordinance in place and any kind of a for enforcement, whatever, to be, you know, discussed and ordered on, I would have a fit with the with the commission.
Well, I I would think that if we did a little bit of research and find out what your legal rights are, and then maybe instigate a conversation with that company first.
Yeah.
Give them the option to.
Absolutely.
Play nice, I guess, for lack of a better word, before we go some other route.
I have a question, I have a question for, I have a question, excuse me, I have a question for Steve. I do think it's a Grand County ordinance.
Okay.
Not a solid waste ordinance, I would like to investigate that, but I remember when we were making it, we were working with. Uh, the city and uh the county and the solid waste were working together, this was under Evan. And so I'm wondering, since it's in Grand County ordinance, does that change our uh. Uh, process or the amount of effort we put into uh making sure our ordinance is followed?
Yes, yeah, that would have some impact to it, um, depending on how the ordinance is written and the teeth behind it, it could either end up being a. A civil penalty or criminal penalty, depending on what those, um, what your uh penalty clause indicates. Some, some of our penalties include a civil penalty up to ten thousand dollars, other considered class B or class C misdemeanor. Uh, so if if we, I'm more than happy to sit down with you and kind of go through it.
Sure, I can send it over, I think it's through thirty, twenty-five or something like that, right?
Yes, I I would like to be, maybe we can have a conversation with Chris, myself. And and perhaps another uh commission member to go over this ordinance and see. The res, you know, look at where the county is responsible and where the solid waste is responsible, because I see it being both since it's county ordinance. Does that make sense?
It does.
Yeah, thank you, Mary.
Anybody else? We appreciate Chris, appreciate you, Chris, um, nobody likes their trash cans that went over the street.
That's that's usually the time we get the phone call.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Yes.
Um, I forgot to mention in my presentation, just so you guys know, in option one and two, we do have nine thousand dollars also for. Solid Waste Special Service District for the Wag Bag Collection, which is also based on a county ordinance. Um, and then option three, which is sort of the bare bones one, does not have that in there, you guys know.
Thank you. And just for the public, that was Madeline Lobo, it's speaking, just giving us the options that she has that are in relation to. Um, the solid waste district. And so with that. Gabe?
Yeah. So I suppose I should probably just screen.
Gabe, do you mind, Mary's got her hand up, please. Gabe, do you mind? Mary's got her hand up, please. Mary?
Just a quick question. Uh, I know there's uh Gabe, you mentioned that we weren't going to discuss uh certain uh items in the budget such as the playground and the pickleball court. Uh, when would that be discussed?
That would be up to you. Uh, that would be up to the commission. Um, you know, I see it kind of being more effectively being its own, maybe its own conversation about capital projects or it's just a suggestion.
Well, I know there's a lot of angst in the county right now around the playground and the pickleball court and personally, I would like to uh have it kind of settled sooner than later so that the angst can go away.
I I think we all feel that way, Mary, but we're gonna have to get through um our list of essential or non-essential items first, but I know Trish has got a question here in response to that, and we'll start with her and then go to Mike.
Just a comment, but it might be the same one. I do think um it's imperative that we do it in a timely manner because we do know that costs are escalating every day. Um, my understanding, talking to that board and talking to Angie. So I think we've, we need to pick this really quickly.
Mike. If it helps, I was bringing it up in today within our regular commission meeting uh as fea- uh feature consideration. Uh, moving into our next meeting to bring up, discuss and move on with. Incoming, just so you know.
Anything further, Mary?
Uh, thank you. Uh, no, I, no, that's good. I just you know, it was, people are watching and want to know, and I would like to be able to assure them it's gonna be discussed in the near future. And then they would like some security that it's not going to be cut.
All right, thank you. And Gabe, we will go back to you, and I think that on that note, that we'll let Mike ask for that, be it the next commission meeting.
Okay.
But I I do agree with Gabe on that, that it was, it pertains to capital expenses and this year's budget, not really. Uh, it's it's a separate topic. I I know it all all goes to the budget, but it is this year's topic.
Oh, if you folks are, and again, just to clarify here, you guys are planning to put that on the agenda. What information would you guys want from Osta or any of the other people that are involved to have a successful discussion on that?
Uh, but question to that would be, I would like uh outline of the grant uh or outline of the grant conditions. And um I know with cost going up, I I want to know a- as best as possible, current exact cost. And if that follows within the grant, also, I did have a question on that seventy-three thousand that was outside the scope. That was part of the grant, but it was outside the scope of the contractors uh in their proposals. Uh, it was the electrical, the electrical and concrete outside of the playground and pickleball court proposal. Who would you like to get that? Angie, and she gave a brief one, but if there's more detail, I I would love it.
But do you want commission administration to do that? Do you want Angie? How would you like to convey that to them?
I I feel that Mark can give Angie a quick call, and this would be a a five minute thing.
I do think, Mark, that we need to look into that to see if that's something the contractor missed and the RFP if we missed including getting the, where's the, is somebody trying to get out of a seventy thousand dollar plus or minus? Electrical there, just try get to the bottom of where that mishap took place.
Okay.
For a little clarification. And then uh if we're gonna expand on that and request some further information, at the same time, not just the pickleball courts, but the archery and other things as we keep adding to Osta. I'd like to know what the long range plans and needs are of staff to maintain these new features out there. So there's it it's one thing that we've got a contract and a grant to build this, but what's the long term cost gonna be on a yearly basis for the county?
Sure, Mike. I I know it's been uh briefly gone over also. Uh county enters into land acquisition uh all the time uh from different entities. We really should be uh in this talking about solidifying county's ownership on the BLM portion of Osta. Uh, we should be looking into that also because half of Osta's grounds are not under strict control of Grand County. They're a BLM and Grand County crossover.
So what's, what's the, what's the rub with that?
We should buy it. Can we afford it now? No.
We we were gonna discuss that very item, but it got off the agenda, so. No pun intended there, but moving on, Gabe, we'll let this go back to you. I'm sorry for the grab and away from some of that.
Um. And so I I s- basically kind of going back, if if there, i- if anyone wanted to make any suggestions to adjustments that are currently entered into the tentative budget, um you know, I think uh that there there is a, there's a couple factors at play. There's allocations to uh to uh e- entities that are under the Grand County umbrella, like the solid waste district, like Museum, um like uh Grand County EMS, I believe. Um, and then there are also allocations, you know, that are federal fund offsets that are within departments. And so the, you know, I I guess at this point, we just entertain any any sort of you know, potential updated placeholders for the tentative budget. Um, and it would, this wouldn't comprise an official action, but perhaps by a straw pull, um, it could be agreed to update the tentative budget with some with with a new figure as it relates to some of these allocations as they are currently listed.
All right, I guess, Gabe, for some clarification, we're looking at what dollar amount do we need to cut between now and the end of the year to get back on budget.
Uh, it would be one point, one point nine seven million. Um, you know, and that currently we have ten million in savings to cover that, and so it's um, it would be up to the commission to decide what what amount um, you know, could be deemed acceptable or not um with regards to covering that 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 amount.
Trish.
I think we were right.
Go ahead, Trish.
I'm sorry.
Sorry. My preference would be to stay the course for tw- twenty-five, to take money out of savings and fund, you know, budgets as 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 they have been allotted. Um and then we're gonna begin the budgeting process, I assume, quick, right, for twenty-six here in the next, I presume, next couple weeks-ish. Um, and then we, we get really aggressive with looking at that twenty-six budget. But to me, to uh look at asking departments to cut programming, to look at asking departments to cut um staff is when we've also been spending a lot of money out of budget, I I think it's just wrong. But I'm I'm gonna leave that aside. I mean, I did state it. I probably shouldn't have even stated that. I I really would like to just stay the course for twenty-five. I realize that, you know, there's a lot of factors at play, and one is an economic downturn. I'll disagree with Brian's statement that we've been in a recession for the last number of years. We, we've actually had um, a lot of presentations in the past number of years where it shows kind of sustainable growth curve and and really with even those those blips, meaning the large downturn with COVID and the large um bounce back from that, we're really have just been on that upward trend. I think starting in twenty-five, that's not gonna be the case anymore. Specifically, what's happening at a federal level, I think the consumer confidence is tanking. I think tariffs and all of the other things are are retracting people's willingness to spend money and to travel. Um, I know I feel that way, that's for sure. I'm pretty scared. And so I think, you know, we can look at that into the future, but my preference right now is to stay the course. Is to fund people and then that gives them that ability for the next six months to really look at their programming in depth and see what they can do um to try to, to try to pull back their budgets a little bit.
Brian?
Yeah, I mean, push back on that, Trish. We are financial analysts, just said that we've been in a four-year recession. The numbers said that we've been in four-year recession.
I don't think he used the word recession. I think he said we plateaued after, after that bump after COVID.
I'll just clarify, recession is like a twenty percent drop over two quarters. So it's not technically a recession, but a contraction.
In twenty-five?
Twenty-five, although from twenty-two forward, we have been
Here gone now, four years.
The hotter recession, but contract. We've been going kind of flat, maybe a little under
Okay.
Since twenty-two.
That's right. Thank you.
And I'm not up, I guess, is what he's
No, I I I understand. I understand that. I heard him use the word plateau, and maybe I just, I don't know.
And then second, I think I thought I, I was kind of under the decision that we were gonna come in here and kind of start off by making a few decisions. One was, are we going to, as a board, decide to cut any essential services? Right? I think that will start right there.
Sure.
Uh, and then from there, we should decide, you know, which non-essential services we're willing to cut, um, you know, moving from there. Uh, I know that we're gonna be moving into budget season very soon, right? But I think that whether we make those decisions today or whether we make those decisions in September, these are decisions that we're gonna have to make. Um, and I would, I personally would rather not, I'd rather rip Band-Aid off and do it right now, just to make sure that we're that we're not gonna be dipping into our savings to be funding structural deficits.
We, Mary, you had her hand up?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes, yes, thank you very much. Thank you very much. I don't wanna, I I really don't want to go into whether we're in a, uh, where we are financially going or where we're at right now. I want to uh advocate for our staff. I think uh ha- being halfway through the year, to go to our staff and ask them to make major changes uh puts an undue stress on a group of people who are very dedicated, very willing to work above and beyond uh their duties. They have been very successful in staying within budget. So I think at this point, if we need to take a thou- um one million nine hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars out of uh savings to cover the deficit, we still have a huge amount more in our savings than we did ten years ago. I don't want to continue this process. Uh, over this last six months was the first time I've seen our revenue go down, and I don't want to see that continue, but I think to honor our staff and the people who work for us, I think we stay the course for the rest of the year and look for next year so that they can then go into their budget year for twenty-twenty-six and with knowing what they have to deal with, rather than pulling the rug out from underneath them right now. That's my opinion. I'd like to stay the course and take that money out of savings. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Hey, Bill, may I weigh in? I'm sorry, my internet's a little spotty here, so.
Yes, please do.
Thank you. Um, I I tend to agree with um with with Trish and Mary on this. I think uh, I think, I mean, we did a, we, we went through a long process creating a budget last year and uh changing horses in midstream. I mean, that's what, that's what we have developed such a large surplus for. I mean, ten million dollars is a pretty decent amount to have in the bank, and uh we've been able to increase that as, I think, uh Dana and I emailed last week showing the continuing rise in our um, in our general fund over the last six years or so. So you know, I mean, we have, we have some good years and some bad years. This is definitely not what you would call a good year by any stretch of the imagination, not arguing with that. But continuing to stay the course this year, um, and certainly not cutting any essential services um, I'd be in favor of and in budgeting next year appropriately would be my preferred path.
Thanks, Jac. And I want to make a couple of points. Um, one of them is I I don't think that we can blame the feds for our current problems. I know that it was stated, the tariffs and foreign travel and a few other things that the feds didn't put us through, we did ourselves. I I want to remind the commission also, and I know some of the commissioners are new, but there were some major battles last year in the budget season, and some of those battles were over just increases in department spending, let alone some of the staff increases that were asked for. And it ended up being a five to two vote against taking a con- more conservative approach to our budget, because it, as Mr. Vals has mentioned, since twenty-two, we have seen a decline here. It might not be very big, but if you continue to utilize the three-year or the six-year or the ten-year timeline, we can make the budget look any way that we want it to look. The reality is the realities are that we're in a negative this year that exceeds anything that we've seen previously. And I understand that we want to be careful and that we have staff that are gonna be affected by this. But we also have issues that we have to deal with immediately, that we can't wait till the end of the year. And because we have a savings account to sit here and say that we want to pull out basically two million dollars. I mean, it's short twenty-three thousand, but being the two million mark, when we have had some major battles in the last few months over trying to solve some of our problems with the sixty thousand dollar study that will help this county understand why we're in some of the depreciation that we're in. We've chose to use some of that money out of that capitalization for CJC, which goes to the most needy abused children in this community and the battles that we've had over that. And now we just are willing to take a paintbrush or pencil, a red one at that, and slash two million dollars out of our savings account, when I I guess I'm struggling here. I I I disagree with this. Let's just hold the course and paint a pretty picture and hope that it changes. I I'm, we're obligated to be conservative as a commission with our taxpayers' dollars. Mike, go ahead, though.
Just throwing, uh, no cuts to uh essential services. And in that, I like always during a regular commission meeting, my wife works for the Sheriff's Department, but again, uh, uh, no cuts to essential services.
I understand. Trish?
Um. I I agree with you, and if you, if you look back through my votes since the beginning of this year and all of these non-budgeted items, um, I did vote for the EMS, EMS contribution. Um, I it it's, it's complete hypocrisy um to state that because you you're saying it, and I completely agree. We all, we should be very fiscally conservative, but we have not been this year. We have made expenditure after expenditure and some quite lavish that do do not at all reflect that value system to me at all. So let's we just gotta get past, let's just get past the politics. We need to start, we need to start making some decisions. And making punches, I'm getting so tired of the just constant punches. It's just, I'm getting so sick of it. We need to start making some decisions. You better get the smile off your face. That's extremely rude. Both of you, please. It's rude. It's rude. It's rude. Stop.
Brian.
You need to start making some decisions. Okay. Bill, and you're the leader here. Can you please move us forward as the leader?
I'm gonna go to the next one, which is Brian, and then go to Mike if you're done.
I'm actually, I'm I'm actually not good, done.
Okay. Let us know when you are.
Okay, I will. You know, so it's, I just, I I just have a really hard time pushing on, pushing on department heads, pushing on employees. Our morale in in this county is low. And we've made, to me, some really poor decisions, spending already this year. Um, let's stop. Let's move forward. But again, we need to do things holistically. And I think we start the budgeting season, we do it holistically. We dive into each department's budget, piece by piece, which is what we've already done. And we do it, we do it holistically. I'm not sure what's what's up with the smirk on your face, Bill.
I'm sorry, but I'm just smiling.
No, you're smirking.
Okay. Are you done now, Bob? I'm not going to sit here and growl or grimace or give you a negative. I'm just going to sit here and be pleasant, Trish. That's just my nature. Thank you. Brian, you're next, and then Mike.
Oof, okay. Well, I mean, I mean, I think that that it's regrettable that we're in this position right here. Right? I mean, it it's crazy. I was just looking it up. You know, we're one of the few counties in Utah that's seeing negative growth. Right? I mean, I've looked it up. Let's see here, Washington County, they're up to, or one point one percent. Iron County, they're up one point one percent. Garfield County, they're up eight point three percent, right? Wayne County's up one percent. I mean, other counties are doing better than we are. So when I look at it, why are we in this position? It's because we top down our only industry that we have, which is tourism. I mean, I watched it for year after year up here as we just cut the budgeting, right, for advertising in this place. And so when you top down your only, the only industry that we have right here, this is the result. We don't get to have the nice things that we want. You know, I mean, I didn't want to come in here and have to come in here and start making budget cuts. Right? That's not where I wanted to be as a commissioner. You know, coming in here and 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 trying to do all this. And it feels like for the last six months, you know, we're doing nothing but trying to clean up. I think that budgeting in the, in December, I think it was irresponsible, right, to say that we were going to be completely flat, right? I mean, if you look at that, those numbers that we've seen right here, you can see that the trend has been going down. Um, you know, Stephen kind of had this three-year average that he talked about where he's like, well, you know, if you stand at one spot at the ocean, you know, the waves are going to come back and they're going to come back and they're going to come back. Well, let me tell you, if I went stood at the river right now today, I wouldn't expect the water to be where it's been the last couple of years, right? It's going down right now. We need to go ahead and we need to start making some tough decisions. And I mean, I I hate to say it, but I mean, I'm ready to start right now.
Mike, go ahead.
And several of my decisions this year have not been obviously fiscally conservative, but in all of our decisions, they're for our community. EMS contribution wasn't fiscally conservative, but it's for our community. It was willingly done by me. The contribution to uh CJC was willingly spent uh as previously stated. Uh, it's for our community. Again, it'll come up later that the pickleball and playground, again, is not looking at it fiscally conservative, but again, it's for our community. It makes it easier when it directly affects Grant County residents.
Um, Melody, and then we'll go to Mary.
Well, when I was looking at um some of the conversations that we had also was open positions and reviewing some of those. And I don't think um during the conversation, I was listening to on phone while I was driving here, um that we spoke about any of that. I don't think that we should be defunding any of the essential services. Um, you know, solid waste obviously means every penny, it's going to cost us more in the long run. Yet unfortunately, our non-essential service that's in the room is that our trails um ambassadors. And it's super sad because I think that they have a great program, but when we look at what's for our community, you know, like Mike just brought out, you know, EMS, we paid three hundred thousand dollars. I worked on the ambulance whenever they wanted to become a special service district and they asked for money from the county and, you know, they haven't received that mitigation money. So I don't feel like that was an expense. It was like, um, you know, not, it was a fiscal responsibility. You know, if ambulance doesn't show up and your kid is hurt, you're not going to be very happy with with anybody, especially anybody that doesn't give funds. Um, so, yeah, I didn't want to be sitting here six months into my commission um role and cutting people's jobs or salaries or budgets, you know, but I think, you know, Maddie did a really good job of of setting out something. She has option one, two, and three, and you know, three still is cuts and it doesn't necessarily take, look like I was listening on the phone, but but you know, employees, uh, it's not taking employees' jobs. It is cutting a big cut. So I really appreciate that.
Option three, actually, that's.
Oh, it has some.
Option two is kind of the reaction for just is preserving staff, sorry.
Yeah, so, you know, and 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 that's the department that unfortunately is going to feel the cuts of if, you know, with that suggestion that we go and we have at least seven hundred thousand dollars that we need to cut. When I look at it, you know, that one point three million, but we have salaries that haven't been filled for seven hundred thousand. So do, I do think that there needs to be some cuts. I don't think that we can just stay the course like Jacques and um Mary have recommended.
Mary, I know you've got your hand up. Go ahead, please.
Thank you very, thank you very much. Um, I, I don't want to continue. I, we've done this way too long where we go back and forth, back and forth, pointing the finger, pointing the finger. And for each one of us, when we point that finger, there are three fingers pointing back at us. So I I think it's an incredible waste of time for us to continue this around and around and around. I do want to say there is one thing that I think we should look at that has been done that is very positive. We have significantly increased our reserve. And that's been due to years and years and years of conservative budgeting. I mean, we've, we've more than co- four times what we had ten years ago. And so I I'm I'm excited and I'm proud of that. I also think that, you know, we can wait six months to do some major cutting. There are people who are relying on their income who are looking forward to having their income. Departments that, you know, I just think you know, the the season is over. They don't have, you know, they're, it's a seasonal, you know, they're hired season seasonally. Let, you know, they know they won't be having a position next year, but I don't feel comfortable having people lose their job right now when we have the means to go uh stay the course and not have people lose their jobs. And to also take the pressure off of our staff. Our staff has been under a lot of pressure for a long time. And I don't think, I think to be good stewards of our our uh staff, we should not worry about at this point doing any cuts. I, uh, you know, we could, you know, we will still be, if we spend that money, we will still be way above where we were. So I don't think that's fiscally responsible and it's not waving a, you know, pretending. I mean, I I don't take it, I mean, I'm I'm sick to see that it's gone down. It's the first time it's gone down in my tenure. But at the same time, I respect and care for our staff more than I than the pain that it gives me that our reserves are going down. So I've made my statement, but I would really appreciate if we could stop pointing the finger at each other. I think it's counterproductive. It's, it's, it's not, it's, it's making us, I've had people on the street stop me and say that our 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 commission is is toxic. It's, it's, to watch it is hard. I I we, I, we're better than that. All seven of us are better than that. So let's stop the finger pointing and move forward in a more positive and collaborative and respectful manner. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. I agree that there's definitely room for improvement probably in all of this as far as communication back and forth with the commission. I'll also state, though, Mary, that sometimes when facts are thrown out there, because you have no other option than to speak to us. And I know for a fact that the ten million dollars currently sitting in that fund reserve, five million of it came while I was on the commission from the lactate funds. I know several other millions of dollars that came in here during COVID. So to say that it's all from conservative budgeting is a little bit of an exaggeration. It's from the federal government, the reason that we have such a large savings account, a big part of it, more than half. And so I'm not pointing fingers. I'm not trying to be negative. I'm just trying to make sure that we all understand the facts that are stated here clearly amongst all the commissioners. And Gabe, I would like to ask back to Mallory's, excuse me, Melody's question regarding the underspend that we've had because of unfilled positions. And so when I see the one point nine seven seven million there, if I use her math, that puts us down in the one point three million realistically that we're asking for, or am I misunderstanding?
Sorry, go ahead, Gabe.
No, it's, my my math accounts for the the nine fifty eight there. Underspend is already sort of that's already built into the new tentative budget, those updated pr- um underspends into the salary and benefits. Um, and so yeah, ultimately, that that's already accounted for and that's already, that underspend is already swallowed up by by what we already budgeted to overspend.
Um, so realistically, we're looking at the one point nine million dollars here.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, the nine hundred and the one million wash each other out, is what you're saying.
Right.
So one nine is what we're looking at. And then.
Go ahead, Brian.
Just real quick, you know, I mean, and and not to try to start causing more problems, but this is the second budget workshop that we've had. And I feel like we've made absolutely no progress. Um, so I mean, I I do agree with Mary. I mean, I think that if we're going to sit down here and get into it, like, let's sit down and actually figure out how we're either going to fix this or we're going to fund this. But we've sat around now for two hours. Gabe asked one question, which was, you know, are we going to make adjustments based on this one point nine? And we have not given him any instruction yet.
I'm not comfortable taking one point nine million out of the savings account. So where do we start?
And does anybody want to go with essential services?
What essential services?
A lot of local ones. Services I see on here that are essential, we're looking at law enforcement, solid waste, search and rescue.
No.
No. Okay, non-essential services. We have the museum.
Are we gonna ask everybody what they're.
I'm I'm sorry, I thought I I didn't, I didn't hear anybody answer.
We have two people online.
Sure. Well, thanks for that.
Neither of them have their hand up.
Does, does, does anybody have an appetite for cutting law enforcement, solid waste, search and rescue?
No. I, I'm not in favor of cutting much, and essential services certainly fall under that, so I'm not uh in favor of cutting essential services.
Mary?
I'm not in favor of cutting essential services, no.
Neither am I. Mel- Melody, have you?
No, I'm not.
Okay, moving on.
Okay, non-essential services. We have the museum, rec SSD, and then GCAT Responsible Rec and Trail Ambassadors.
I'm, I'm not in favor of cutting any of those. I'll, I'll speak to the museum first. I think that um uh, I mean, we don't fund the museum at a very high level anyway, just over a hundred thousand dollars. And if we cut them just a little bit, it does, as they stated, that's twenty percent of their budget. Um, and that would uh, so so cutting that at all would would uh definitely cut into what they're working with. I think the museum fills are a very unique niche in Grand County in that it's a uh, it's a unique cultural attraction for us. We don't, we don't have as many cultural attractions as we do outdoor recreation attractions. Um, and of the ones that we do have, you know, things like the Folk Festival and the and the muse- the museum is, you know, holds its own spot. I've been on that board for five years now and I've seen the museum blossom. I was ju- I'm traveling right now. It's just, I love museums. I I poked into the local museum here and uh and it was cool, but it just reinforced my opinion that our museum is is outstanding. Um, I think it is going to do an even better job in the future of attracting people to Grand County and give them another option while they're traveling here. So I wouldn't be in favor of that. Um, what else we had? GCAT, I'm, again, I've I've advocated for that my whole time on the commission. It, you know, if, if I I assume we're going to cut GCAT in some way, and I think it was um, I I like that Maddie presented us options. Um, if I was to choose one, I wouldn't cut it, but if, but I think going to option one or two would be preferable. I I don't like cutting those programs. I've seen things like, obviously, you guys all know that I've run a bike shop on Main Street. I I think that those uh biking trail ambassadors have done a really good job for a lot of people. It's funny, I'm I'm visiting some friends from out of town who actually visited me two years ago and they still have the water bottle their son got from the trail ambassadors when they went to mountain bike Amub Trails two years ago. I was like, oh, look at that. Um, I think things like that go a long way towards attracting and keeping tourists coming into town. I firmly believe that they're part of promotion. I'll continue to believe that, but I guess that's irrelevant to this conversation. But um I I think those are very good programs. I think they're, they're extremely important for our tourism economy and for uh supporting our visitors here. And I, I would prefer to have a more holistic discussion at the end of the year um when it comes to discussing those. And there was, there was a third non-essential you listed, Brian. I'm sorry, I I was taking notes, but I didn't write that down.
Yeah, the the ones that I have listed here under the uh, over this is the museum, rec SSD, and then GCAT.
Yeah, and similar for the rec SSD. I think it's, it's interesting. There's some, there's a lot of pass-through there to OSTA. I served on that. You know, a lot of the rec SSD does really good things like funding youth programs here in in the county that my kids have taken advantage of for sure. Um, I don't think we've gotten into what exactly those rec SSD funds do. I don't know if we even could tell what they do. But I, I don't think we have the time to tell that. So I'd, 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 I'd like to consider continuing to fund those at the same rate through the end of the year as we had budgeted previously and and take a much deeper dive and really ask the rec SSD what those funding channels are next year when we're considering funding the rec SSD. Uh, I'm finished. Thank you, guys.
Yeah, Mary?
Uh, yes, uh, thank you, Maddie, for giving us three options. Uh, I've stated before, I I don't think we need, you know, I'm comfortable right now not cutting and holding this, holding the course and you know, seeing where we end up. But uh if we need to cut and and you you vote cut something, uh, I would like to go with the least amount.
Trish.
Um, I just want to speak to rec, rec SS really quick because I did go to the meeting um on June eighteenth and that's twenty four percent of their budget. Um, their mineral lease monies have been slowly trending down. Just so you guys know, you know, the whole of that, the those monies go to M and O for OSTA and then also their mortgage on the, on MRAC on the Aquatic Center. So um, they could probably next year cut some of their grant programming would be my guess. I mean, I hate to speak for them and Mike can speak to them for them, but um, you know, right now they have obligations that they have to meet. You know, specifically a mortgage on the Aquatic Center. And so to cut them now, I I I I just don't think they would, you know, I don't think they could survive. And maybe Mike can add to that.
Mike, uh, in short, uh, along with Jacques and Trish here, uh, Recreation Special Services District has dang near been a pass-through for funds back to Grant County and Grant County facilities. Uh, they cover heavy expenses. Uh, they have currently covered heavy expenses uh at OSTA uh and uh like stated, uh, MRAC uh mortgage, uh, it's uh twenty, twenty-two percent or twenty-four percent of the tot- uh totality budget. And it's a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, I think, was the, or a rough total on that.
One thirty-seven.
One thirty-seven, uh.
The TRT.
And, I mean, we. And, I mean, we have already seen over half of that, over fifty percent of that already come back uh through uh, the rec district back to Grant County, uh, and its facilities and capital improvements, so. But uh, in talking, uh, uh, even in the room, it it it's it's very clear that uh uh, we're all looking at uh GCAT as a department, uh, at the the funding cuts there. It is hard to speak. Um, it's hard to speak in any sense, uh, about getting uh rid of people's uh jobs uh right now. But it is uh, as stated in in title, uh, cutting essential services like or i- is not even a question. It's not even a question across all of us. Uh, but it being a non-essential service and we're needing to cut one point nine six one million dollars, uh, it's an easier place than cutting something that's needed by our community. It's it's the place to look to.
Brian?
So I I, you know, I think I'm gonna come from stances. You know, I mean, we we talk about what we as the, you know, as Grand County can do, but I I I mean, I see this as, you know, this money is representative of all the people inside Grand County. Right? These these sales taxes, these are businesses that are down, these are employees, we're getting cut at other businesses. This is being felt all throughout town. Right here, there are a lot of people that are making these same decisions in every little shop down Main Street right now. And I think that it would be irresponsible of us, because I don't think that the public can afford right now to fund non-essential services. With that being said, right, at the same time, there's obligations that we have made. Right? We've made obligations to the museum right now, and that's why I was asking about, you know, is this going to their operating uh uh expenses, right? There's obligations that we have made to OSTA. And they have, or I'm not sorry, not OSTA, but to the rec SSD, and they use, they're using that money, as you guys were saying, towards you know, the uh mortgage on the pool. You know, so I mean, there's it it, there's some very difficult decisions that we have to make, and I and I'd like to see it be made with a scalpel. I mean, I really appreciate um, you know, solid waste coming in and, you know, having, you know, to be honest and saying, yeah, we'd like to, you know, maybe we could do something in the rears to where we look at, you know, what the what the actual funds that came in is and take that cut. I mean, I appreciate the museum coming in and 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 offering up six percent, because everybody else in the county is offering up six percent. And it's just trying to figure out, and then Matty coming in with with three different options, right? It's just, we're gonna have to make some tough decisions. And when I have to make those tough decisions, I think that I would say that it's going to be, you know, um, that we stick with the obligations that we've made and we make the cuts where we can make them right now.
Any thoughts? I um think that there's a lot of people in this community that appreciate what the trail ambassadors do. And it's been a battle back and forth, and I appreciate the fact that Matty came in with the three options. I personally think that there should be a fourth option for them too, and that's that we consider moving them into a nonprofit. Where they come to us for funding, just like the museum does. Just like some of these other entities do when we need funding or when they need funding, and that we have the opportunity to fund that. And and that's one of the suggestions I'd make moving forward is that we start looking for a way for the trail ambassadors to be a nonprofit in this community rather than a part of the county budget. That they, that entire department is the fourth largest budget in this county payroll-wise. And it's, it's just time to start looking at where we can make some cuts, and none of them are gonna be pleasant anywhere we make them. So what do we need to do here for straw poll to give Gabe some direction, because we're basically out of time.
I have one more question.
Sure.
And since I didn't have all the papers, which meanwhile I was driving, Eric said I couldn't look at them. But when you said you adjusted the budget for that six percent, it sounded like you guys adjusted the numbers down. Did you adjust just that down in every department? Yes. So it's already, you know, we we, uh, Mark sent out an email asking people to try to cut the rest if they can. But did you, so people are getting their budgets cut automatically in the budget, or you just took the additional and you just took it out of the capital?
I'm sorry, I was confused. I was talking more about, or I I am not into salary benefits only, but um you know, other other department uh expense reductions um are not reflected uh current tended budget.
Okay, it will just be reflected if they go ahead and find that those savings and we'll see at the end of the year.
That was, the departmental budgets are a separate item from this primarily TRT. So we can address those as we move through the rest of the year at any time. But I did not want to cloud the RT issue with the individual department cuts that weren't now explicitly dependent to TRT.
Yeah, go ahead, Brian.
And then just, I I just have a question for Gabe once again. So that number that we're really looking to cut at is right around five hundred thousand dollars on this TRT, right? Is that correct? You said it back was five hundred and five hundred and eight thousand?
Right, um, and and so, you know, and that number needs to be refined, as we discussed. Um, I guess I'm not, I I don't know if I quite understand. I mean, the question of how much needs to be cut is kind of a
Okay, it's kind of short of this. The short Yes, and the TRT.
The shortfall from the TRT mitigation, currently I have at five oh eight.
Five oh eight plus the one twenty for the TRCCA.
Right, and yeah, and then GCAT currently, yeah, I mean, that's a that that's kind of its own. I don't know how you wanna tie that directly to TRT shortfall or not, uh, you know, that's not necessarily the same, but
I think that's
I'm gonna suggest, people can change their mind if they want, but that we're gonna have to put some items on the next agenda to actually vote on these. And that's probably where this will finalize, Gabe. It isn't a decision that can be made in this workshop anyway. So moving forward, I think we've got to have some items on the next agenda to address where we're gonna go with it.
And just a question, what does Gabe need from us right now so that we're set to make those decisions coming next agenda? Is there anything right now that you need from us? So that we can make those decisions?
Yeah, I I think it's just gonna be a matter of compiling what the decision points are related to these shortfalls, what other options there are to create room, or make, or generate cost cutting. Um, I think it sounds like perhaps uh Stephen and I and Mark and Quinn should sit down and and make that list, um and decide, you know, if there are some, you know, and we can run that by, um and and sort of create or refine the list of of sort of decision points that would be voted on, um. I don't know if I, it it sounds like essential services will, that those won't be considered for a vote. So would that be fair as far as moving moving forward?
Correct.
Okay. It'll be focused on. It'll be focused on the non-essential services. Um, will it also be focused on just general county departments? Um, you know, is there, is there, is there a desire to follow up additional cuts uh to county departments, or should we just stick with? You know, basically, like, you know, I mean, museum rec- recreation special service district and GCAT, I see are like the three main you know, votes, so to speak, with different, with varying options available. Um, but how how much further we wanna go beyond there, um, uh.
And where, I guess, can we go beyond there? Realistically.
Uh, I don't think I have a good answer for that right now. I don't, I don't, there's not a lot of really bright ideas that pop up.
I mean, one, one thing you've mentioned, and I think we've talked about this a little bit, is, you know, not filling vacancies. Right? And I don't know how how much that would affect the budget. Um, anyways.
Thank you for that. That would also, that that is an option. Thank you for bringing that up.
I don't know, I'm just kinda throwing that out. You know, we have a lot of vacancies, and and I don't know, you know, how much that would help, but and some of them obviously are essential, but some of them may not be. And I know we've kinda sent down that list and talked about it a little bit, but maybe we talk about that again. I don't know if that's of interest to you guys.
We we probably should have that list. And maybe we could circulate that amongst the commissioners. I don't think there'd be a problem with doing that ahead of time, right?
I mean, I know this is a little bit off topic, but I think it's 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 valid right now. I think that in the future, moving forward, if we did have performance reviews aired for the budget, I think it would make some of these decisions here, right? If we understood each position and where we, where the the cuts might be the easiest, let's just say, for the county. And that's something that we might wanna start looking at around now to get those performance reviews, and so that come the budget season, we're ready. We're ready with that, because I do think this is something that's going to through the departments. Unless 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 there's unless there's a change, I think that that right now, I think are the, you know, our most worth coming, or the the way that we could be the most active right now is to make sure that we're looking forward to how we're gonna be making those cuts come budget season.
Or maybe Mark, if we could get some guidance on how that would play out. I I agree that I think it was Mary that stated it, maybe it was somebody else, but we definitely have to be prepared for next year to um have some realistic approach to how this financial I guess not a recession, but depression, whatever we wanna call it. If that continues on, we we've gotta be able to look forward. We can't continue to draw down a savings account to justify just keeping the status quo.
Yeah, and I I know, like, I know that um it wasn't really well-liked. You, uh, I think by yourself, Chair, in particular, last budget season, that that sort of that budgeting to overspend as much as we did. So I'm imagining that this commission, as it's currently comprised, it wanna go, it won't wanna go as far as we did. Um, and so that's gonna be a big factor, so.
It is.
And really, so I wanna be realistic.
Yes, that that is gonna change every budget within, and I appreciate it, because it was a battle. You know, and and we we went from an eight hundred thousand over budget to, I believe, a million or a little over a million, and felt that that was acceptable, and now some of that's coming back to haunt us right here, so thank you, Gabe. And I, unless there's anything else, I think that um I'm ready to adjourn unless somebody's got anything else. All right, we'll take a brief recess, and we will come back at four o'clock. Thank you.
What's my Google app this morning? My Google Calendar has this from four P M to eleven.
Third morning at eleven.
I'll leave.
These jelly things, man. These things are great.
It is a corn. I'm hanging out here. I I get the fun, but I don't tell me that. I was just curious.
I.
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 Hey, that shouldn't really pay for the cleanup, that one.
Alright, we will open the Board of Equalization meeting first and. And we've got an MBA meeting and then we will get to our regular permission meeting, just so everybody in the audience and online understands. So. Starting with the Board of Equalization meeting. Those present are Commissioner Hadeen, Commissioner McCurdy, Commissioner Martinez, Commissioner McCandless, myself, Commissioner Winfield. With Commissioner Hadler and Commissioner McGann. Yes, online. So. To start with, we, on the Board of Equalization, we will need an approval of the meeting minutes for May sixth and May twenty, twenty twenty five.
I move to approve the minutes of May sixth and May twenty, twenty twenty five.
Motion by Commissioner Martinez, seconded by Commissioner McCurdy. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor of approving the minutes.
Aye. Ja- Jacques, aye.
Yep, I got you, Jac. Mary, we're waiting for you. I will do, with that passing, six with one absent Commissioner McGann, and she'll probably catch up with this online there eventually. And moving on then would be the approval of the settlement agreement between Club Utah Resort Group LLC. And Brian B. Edwards and Grand County. Yes, Mike. So moved. Motion by Commissioner McCurdy.
If I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner McCandless. Any further discussion on the?
Settlement agreement. Uh, just again for, for folks, um, listening in, this is a stipulated settlement agreement. Uh, the assessors reviewed this. I reviewed this as well. This came from negotiation with his counsel and this, uh. Amount brings up the valuation and lowers it to a, a point that's a fair outcome for the case. The alternative for this would be every year there was challenged assessed values that we would go, um, in front of the Utah Tax Commission. Have that be handled. Um, the assessor's not here, but I knew she was supportive of this. We've discussed this. Uh, as well. And so we believe that this is a fair outcome for, uh, resolution of all these appeals that went up. And as you note, in the, uh, stipulated settlement document, there was a number of different houses and bungalows. And so. Uh, I think there is, uh, quite a few. I think it's eighteen or nineteen in total. All of those valuations were appealed, all of them will be resolved. Any questions?
Alright, thanks for all that clarification. I appreciate the insight with you and the assessor. So I'll call for a vote on that. Um, all in favor of the settlement agreement between Club Utah and Grand County and Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mary, are you online with us for this vote? You're muted if you're trying to speak, Mary. Alright, we'll pass that one with, uh, six to the Z. Six with one absent vote with Commissioner McGann still not online with us. And with that, I will adjourn the Board of Equalization meeting and we will move on to. Public notice regarding the Municipal Building Authority. And that. Will have the same commissioners present as were previously mentioned in the Board of Equalization with. Two on Zoom, Commissioner McGann and Commissioner Hadler. And with that, I'll also invite up, um. Marcus Keller. Sorry, I forgot your last name, but please come on up and you can help us through this one.
Excellent. Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah, thank you. And my apologies on your name.
Oh, no, no worries at all. Um, so my name's Marcus Keller. Uh, I work with Cruising Associates. We're acting as financial advisor to the county and in this case to the Municipal Building Authority. As you look to issue bonds to finance your fire truck. So, uh, today what we're going to be discussing, it's actually. A little interesting, this process, but maybe I can just give you a few seconds, the history of how this came to be and, and what all it entails. So. Uh, a couple of months ago, or may not even have been that long. When was the last C I V meeting? I think.
It was actually June fifth, I believe.
Okay, so, so this about a month ago then, uh, the county or the authority, so the Municipal Building Authority of Grand County. Received authorization from C I V loan terms in order to finance this fire truck. Typically, C I V is a great place to get your funding from because it's usually subsidized rates, terms, so on and so forth. In this case, just to give everyone a reminder, you received fifteen years at one percent. For one million, four hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars of loan authorization. And so, great, great news. And just to kind of put that into perspective, if you were to go into the private markets to get that today. You would be upwards of four, four and a half percent on a similar security. So. You know, even though this is going to be a short term financing because it's intended to get reimbursed in the next couple of years from the FAA to pay off these bonds in full. You're going to be saving several thousand dollars of interest over that time. So congratulations to the authority, to the county for helping save some money. By going through C I B. Um, so in order to issue or get access to that money, that's what we're doing here today. You have to issue these financial securities in the form of a bond. Um, the, as we've talked to Gabe, it's Dana, it's kind of the whole team, Quinn, Mark, everyone involved. Um, the typical process and type of bond that C I B wants you to issue for this would be a lease revenue bond. We do this and it's something that's issued through the Municipal Building Authority. And that way, just to give you a little background without going into the weeds, unless you'd like for me to. Um, the lease revenue bond is kind of a, a lesser credit, if that makes sense. So. If you ever were to go to the market, you had a sales tax bond and a lease revenue bond. The sales tax bond would be a better credit and receive lower interest rates, whereas the lease revenue bond at lesser credit would receive higher interest rates, just based off the security. In this case, with C I B purchasing the bonds, they don't care. So it's going to be one percent, whether it's a sales tax bond or a lease revenue bond. So in the county, it's your, to your benefit. Say, great, we'll do the lease revenue bond because we're not going to get penalized with a higher interest rate. And so everyone kind of walks away from that happy. And it saves the county long term to be able to give you more options if additional financings come up. So, as today, so today you have before you for the Municipal Building Authority. Later today at around six o'clock or when you get to agenda item, I believe six. You'll have a similar resolution. It'll be the exact same thing, except you'll be voting on it as the county versus the Municipal Building Authority. But language, everything else will be the same. So, um, I, I may step out a little bit before then, but just so you know. That exact same verbiage, just now you're acting as the authority. Later today, you'll be acting as the county. So if there's any questions, happy to answer on those. Um. Today's resolution, what you would be adopting is your parameters resolution. Now, the parameters set today are going to be different than what's been authorized, and I'll explain that here in a second. So in the authorizing resolution or parameters resolution for the authority, you'll be adopting up to one point eight million dollars. Up to seventeen years, up to a max interest rate of five percent and up to a ninety-eight percent discount. And why I say up to and kind of emphasize that a little bit. We do this so that it gives you flexibility. So for some reason, let's say the fire truck came in and. Was a little bit over cost. Instead of having to go through this entire process again, and through another public hearing, public notice. The authorized representatives would just have the ability to increase that without having to go another six day period to do it. So. Gives you a little flexibility there, but the intent and ninety-nine percent likelihood is that we will be issuing the bonds as described by C I B. And if anything were that, were to change off of that, then we would come back to the county before anything goes further. But we just like flexibility. And again, this is recommended to us from C I B as well. Um, and so this resolution would set those parameters. It would start a thirty day contest period. It would also call for a public hearing. That public hearing was scheduled, I believe, for August fifth. And if that's, then members of the public could come speak to it. If they have any issues, questions, concerns, they could ask those at that time as well. After the public hearing date, um, then you would be authorized to close those bonds. And, uh, receive funding to a P T F account to pay for that fire truck. So. Kind of the, the short of it is, this is just the first step to get the ball rolling in that process. Um, sorry, I probably spoke too much, but is there any questions, concerns at this point?
Um, I don't have any, but if I could, um, I skipped or missed the approval of the meeting minutes, let me back up.
I'm sorry.
Come forward with this one and I apologize. So if I could get somebody to, um, make a motion for the approval of the meeting, minutes from the meeting of five twenty-seven. Five seventeen, twenty twenty-two.
I'd like to make the motion. I approve the, uh, the minutes from the meeting five seventeen, twenty twenty-two.
Motion by Commissioner McCurdy, seconded by Commissioner Martinez. Does anybody have any discussion on those minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor of approving the minutes from the meeting of five seventeen, twenty twenty-two.
Aye.
Mary, are you with us now? Alright, not getting a response, we will approve those minutes. Six with one absent, Commissioner McGann absent. Moving on then, we will look for and. Look for a motion on the approval as stated by Mr. Keller.
Can you repeat the parameters?
Yes, absolutely. So I. The parameters that would be adopted today are one point eight million. Up to seventeen years.
Yep.
A max interest rate of five percent. And a discount rate, which won't come into play here, but a discount rate of up to ninety-eight percent. And do you need the financing terms as well of what you're currently approved? And, okay, you have that.
I was just imagining that we needed to keep, uh, put those parameters inside of the motion.
Okay, perfect, yep.
Sure, go ahead, Melanie.
Okay, so I will make a motion to, a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the issuance. And sale of not more than one point eight million aggregate principal amount of lease revenue bonds. Series twenty twenty-five, delegating a certain. To certain officers of the Municipal Building Authority. The power to approve the final terms and provisions of the bonds within the parameters set forth therein. Fixing the maximum a- aggregate principal amount of the bonds. The maximum number of years to seventeen. Over which the bonds may mature. The maximum interest rate with the bonds may bear, which is one point eight.
Oh, five percent.
Oh, five percent. Five point eight, oh, it's five percent. Um, and the maximum discount from par at which the bond may be sold. Providing for the, and that is how much? Ninety-eight percent.
Yeah.
Providing for the publication of a notice of public hearing and bonds to be issued, providing for the running of a contest period. Authorizing the execution by the authority of a master resolution, an annual renewable master lease agreement, security documents, other documents necessary. For the issuance of the bonds, authorizing and taking all of the other actions necessary. For the consumption of the transactions contemplated by the resolution and related matters.
I'll second.
Good job.
Seconded by Commissioner Martinez. Do we have any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Those in favor of. The consideration of approval of the authorization of the one point eight. Bond for the fire and, and those in favor.
Aye.
Aye, Mary McGann.
Yep, thank you, Mary. That passes unanimously. And with that, I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you for your time, Mr. Keller.
And Commissioner Martinez, there's another lengthy one. In a couple hours, you get to read that one, right? Is that? Thanks, everybody.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Alright, I will call to get, order our regular commission meeting here. If we would all stand for this. With the legal. Alright, thank you for that. And we will start off with our regular four o'clock citizens to be heard. And we will start in the commission chambers. Do we have any volunteers? Yes, sir. Please come forward, state your name and. You request a three minute. Or less conversation. Thank you.
Uh, my name is Dave Wagner. Talking about high density. Anything you do that makes it more difficult for Grand County workers to get housing is the wrong thing to do. We don't need people in Monticello, Glanning, Green River. Buying up this property. My second point is instead of wasting sixty thousand dollars on a timed entry study. How about investigating gas prices in Moab? Because it's consistently fifty percent cheaper in Grand Junction. Or fifty cents cheaper. That's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Yes, please, Ms. Myers.
Hello, Commissioner, Caitlin Myers, uh, speaking on behalf, not on behalf of any entity. Um, so my opinions are informed by, but, um, wanting to speak on H D H O and. On the discussion about multifamily going through forty-five units per acre. Um, first with H H O, I submitted a comment to you, um, kind of reiterating, I support this. I really appreciate the approach that the subcommittee took. On this, I think we found a really great compromise, really explored a lot of ideas. So, um. I'm, I'm feeling really hopeful. I would encourage you as you're considering tonight. I think that the. Ownership occupancy is a big conversation. Um, I think. Everyone kind of falls in different parts on that. I think that what is proposed, that first option. Is a really good compromise to see how, kind of pilot, how it works to open up for occupancy. Um, I, since I was on staff, I've always stood by occupancy over ownership. So. Um, I think particularly as the market has continued to shift, I think opening it up and continuing to explore ways to. Support development. I think it's a great idea. I think, um, having kind of easing into that is going to get more opportunity. See how enforcement works through Housing Authority. Um, so I've heard some concerns that that might make it more complicated to go to occupancy. Um, so, yeah, I, I would encourage you to consider taking that approach rather than, um, cutting or sticking to it early. Um, and just exploring that. Um, relatedly, I know that we've also had conversations about H B thirty-seven. I, I'm really interested to watch the discussion tonight about, um, the multifamily residential zone. And I would love to talk about that. Subcommittee, I think there's been lots of studies and conversations about density would be a big thing for occupancy. So. Um, not taking a stance, but definitely want to be involved in those conversations. Um. Yeah, I think the way the commission's approaching housing is collaborative and responsive to what we're seeing and. Um, please continue to keep me involved in those conversations. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. O'Brien.
Uh, Bob O'Brien from Castle Valley for the record. I've written you all regarding, uh, the two, uh, two elements of the H D H O, uh, planned amendments or proposed amendments for tonight. I'm going to comment on these, uh, 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 items now. And I'm just going to give you a summary of what I've kind of sent to you before. Twenty percent open market and actively employed household split for the H D H O housing ownership. Wasn't just pulled out of the house. Wasn't just pulled out of the hat. It was a well-vetted agreement made after community members and developers. Comment commented on the H D H O in several workshops and also in the public hearings. Changing this agreement, I believe, is unfair to the citizens who agreed to sacrifice. Increased density in their neighborhoods. And to workers who deserve deserve eighty percent of all of this opportunity. So I want them to have that eighty percent opportunity, not just fifty six percent opportunity to own. Uh, deep restricted houses. The program does uh was designed to increase opportunity for homeownership by workers in Grand County. And extended then to the local uh people in Spanish Valley. The eighty four five three two uh zip code, uh. And under the current uh amendment, it would extend to Monticello. Uh, Green River, uh, and Blandy, that's seventy five miles from the intersection of Center and Main Street. This is not what was agreed to when citizens agreed to increase neighborhood density in Grand County. The current amendment would also make forty four percent of the houses built. For ownership under the H D H O open. Housing, open the in the open housing market with only fifty six percent. Reserved for local workers. This is not the twenty percent, eighty percent agreed in exchange for increased. Neighborhood density. I'm gonna emphasize the importance of ownership. Ownership is an important way for local uh workers to build wealth. And at least some financial security. For some, of course, it's part of the American dream. I urge you not to approve. These two H D H O amendments. They would decrease the percentage of housing reserved for ownership by workers. And allow workers outside of Grand County and the Spanish Valley portion of San Juan County. To be uh eligible for such housing rather than reserving it. For these ho- this home ownership for our local workers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister O'Brien. Do we have anybody else? Yes, please. Step up, introduce yourself.
That's not Nobia?
Oh, yes.
My name is Pete Gross.
Thank you.
I submitted written comments regarding the H D H O proposed amendments. I won't belabor that. Also, what Bob O'Brien said. Covers it far more eloquently, far more thoroughly than I could. I just want to add though that um. Stay with the intent of the original H D O. Uh, the second thing I want to mention, the sixty thousand dollar study on arches timed entry. Um, first of all, even if, this is very dubious that it would, even if that study. Confirms your perception, the timed entry is uh detrimental to um Moab. Um, the N P S has a different mandate. Arches is owned by the entire country, not Grand County. The N P S mandate is to preserve and protect. These lands for future generations. So even if it does. Um, you know, if the sixty thousand dollar month of amount of taxpayer mon- money you wanna. Spend, I think, waste on this study. It's not likely to have any difference in the outcome. On a related note to that, I thought if I were coming to visit Moab, okay, I'd be looking at where am I gonna stay, where am I gonna eat? Et cetera. And if Arches were on my agenda too. It's very simple. Arches, you go to one place, two dollars for your entry thing. You made your reservation and most people are able to get their first choice pretty much readily. Whereas if you're trying to figure out where you want to stay. You could end up, you know, there's so many different options of. Motels, hotels, glamping, camping. Uh, you could spend a couple of hours trying to figure out where am I gonna stay and where am I gonna eat? You know, are you gonna go just to city market? Go buy food or real estate market for someplace else. Anyway. The reservations, it's not even the least bit owners compared to all the other decisions you have to make to come to this Moab. So anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yes, please.
Hi. Laura Long, uh, speaking as a citizen of Grand County. Um, I am here to talk about the H D H O and I might be beating a little bit of a dead horse. Um. But just to reiterate, the intention of the H D H O was to give den uh developers a huge density increase. In exchange for eighty percent local ownership. Um, and so that way it would give us people who work here in Grand County a shot at owning a home and building a life here in the community that we care about. Uh, the changes that you're about to vote on tonight weaken the original deal and its intention by cutting ownership protections and letting more homes be owned by outsiders. As long as they rent to locals. And that sounds great on paper, but the problem with that is that it keeps people in this community as renters instead of owners. And we're not able to build equity or financial security in the community that we care about. Also, the seventy five mile radius increase uh just increases competition for people that don't live here. Um, or for the people that do live here and and now we have to outbid people in Monticello and Green River and wherever else. Um, so there's all that. And then there's also an article written in the Times Independent in twenty twenty three. Where a handful of developers, including the Murphy Flats developers, stated that the costs of building in Moab. Were around three hundred and fifty dollars per square foot and that was the bottom of the barrel. Uh, and that's with low grade finishes and I highly doubt they included costs of excavating on a hillside in those. Numbers. Um, so to me, it seems like after reading that article, the builders in Grand County at least somewhat know what they're getting themselves into. Uh, when it comes to building housing in Grand County and I don't think it's fair to change a countywide affordable housing policy. Because of cost overruns on certain projects. Um, it's also pretty unusual and rare that we even got to pass this H D H O considering the state of Utah's track record on overriding policy like this. Um, honestly, I'm pretty surprised that they aren't tearing it apart right now. Um, and to me, it feels like we're diluting one of the only tools that we have here in Grand County that support the local workforce here. Um, and I really hope that you guys reject the changes and keep it as originally written. Uh, you all ran on affordable housing in your campaigns. And um, I think this is a chance for you guys to follow through on that promise to your constituents. Thanks.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else? Yes.
Good afternoon. My name's Dennis Silva, living in Grand County. Um, this revision. That you're proposing reminded me of a. Long ago, citizens to be heard. Uh, that I was part of. And uh. A man named Ned Shealy or Ned Shumway. Was disappointed in changing an ordinance that that article established. And he suggested that the commission was acting like a ricocheting bullet. Couldn't tell where it was gonna go next. And this is a similar situation. I mean, you're proposing. Affordable housing and now you're taking it away if you. Change that, you know, if you changed to this. Lower percentage for. People working in the county. And I don't think, I don't support it at all and. I thank Bob and Laura for. Um, detailing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do you have anybody else?
Yes. King Eric has got it.
My name's Mary Moran. And I just want to reiterate some of the things that have been said concerning the H D O H O amendments. Um. I I think that some of the proposed changes seem good, such as the one. Affecting the ease of obtaining home loans, but I am concerned about lowering the number of housing units. Um, to be sold to the working and working there. Um, for one of the reasons other people said, but another. Point is just that if you do lower the percentage. Um. It. It uh. It means that the houses cost more because it changes the market. The idea is that if you had. More units that are only available to. To working people that it lowers the market a little bit for those slots. Because can't, it can't be bought up by a developer from. Anywhere else in the world. Um. And my second point is. To consider the difficulty of enforcing who lives in the housing units that are bought by outside developers. But required to be rented to local workers. What if the unit is empty? Um, is it because the new owners couldn't find a renter? Maybe because they were asking too much rent? Or is it because they had no intention to rent it and they're just using it as a vacation home for the whole weeks of year? That's something that's really hard to enforce. You'd have to catch them staying there. Um. And even if you did. You could argue they were there just working on the place to get it ready to rent. Um. Anyone living in Moab or Grand County can probably name some. Living violations or other ordinance violations. People renting out their homes for a week here and there, renting out a separate undisclosed apartment in their house without paying the taxes for that. Lighting installed in new construction. Violates the dark standard. Owners of second homes that declare them as primary residences for tax purposes, et cetera. So it's hard to enforce stuff, I think. Keeping that in mind. It's very important.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, please come forward.
Record Mary O'Brien with Castle Valley. I don't know how many of you own homes. But if you do, you probably understand the numerous benefits of that. For fourteen years, my husband and I rented homes. And finally, when I was thirty six, we were able to buy an eight hundred square foot home. In which our two children grew up with us. We sold that home and now own an eight hundred and fifty square foot home in Castle Valley. The full ownership of a home brings a security and stability and a greater likelihood of engaging. In the local community than renting. The H D H O was crafted in the interest of creating a market for our local workforce to own homes. It's working. I know that some of you on this commission have looked into this and affirm that H D H O developments. Are being constructed and are about to be constructed. Proposed revisions to the H D H O that help workers borrow money to buy their homes here in Grand County are good. But two proposed revisions only make it harder for local workers to buy their home here. First, the proposal to allow anyone, anywhere to own forty four percent of the H D H O houses. Reducing the portion that must be owned by local workers from eighty percent to fifty six percent. And secondly, the proposal to redefine the word local work to mean work in Blandy, Monticello. And Green River rather than Grand County. Neither of these two revisions honor the H D H O project that was agreed to by developers around here. Neither of these two revisions promote work in Grand County. Hopefully, at least four of you will vote to help, not work against the people who work here in Grand County. The nurses, construction workers, service workers, firefighters, police, teachers. In short, those whose lives and contributions are invested in Grand County. Hopefully, at least four of you will abide by your campaign rhetoric that you were gonna work to make housing affordable. For those who work in and contribute to Grand County. In the case of your vote on these two provisions, whom you serve will be obvious and on your record. As a commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else in the commission? Yes, please come forward. Introduce yourself.
I'm Allison Mathis. I live here in Moab. Uh, a couple of comments. First off, as many people have been talking about about the high density overlay. I believe that the two proposed changes weakens the whole idea of this and will make it harder for ordinary workers to be able to afford a home. Both of those changes, changes the definition quote local. And changing the proportion will make housing more expensive and will price more people out and go totally against the idea of the H D H O. So I'm urging you to um oppose that. Secondly, I wanna um. Add a little bit more about the timed entry study. I've worked in visitor services. I know how the national park's gonna work. The existence of the timed entry does not mean people are not coming to Moab. What it does mean is that people are having quality experiences. Going into the park and going to enjoy the town. If you're trying to get to Arches and you gotta wait in line for however long. You're wasting your time. Whereas if you get a ticket and you know you can get in at two o'clock, you can go out in the morning and go to Corona Arch or something and enjoy yourself. And also as a local, the timed entry means that during the season I get to go into Arches. Because I can get my ticket and I can go in and not have to waste a bunch of time standing in line, which really matters when I have family and friends or just I wanna get. Enjoy it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, please.
Saxon Sharp in Moab. And I submitted a letter uh to you. I won't go over that. It's about the H D H O. I'd just like to re- reiterate that I agree with whatever what else is saying in here. Uh, particularly keeping the eighty percent, twenty percent ratio and then keeping the eight four five three two. And uh. Another thing I was thinking about is if you change those, it seems like it starts the commission down a slippery slope. What happens if investors who are either, who've either bought the twenty percent or the thirty percent. Come to you and say, oh, I can't rent my place under these restrictions. Are you gonna then say, well, we're gonna lose that and further erode? Uh, the H D H O concept? So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else in the chamber? Yes, please.
Hi, everybody. I'm Laura Harris. Um, I'm here as an individual, but uh we'll say that I participated in the. Portable Housing Subcommittee that we uh discussed in the the subcommittee about this group um in the previous months. Um, I appreciate the collaboration that we've been able to um create between all of us. Um, I just wanted to add a couple of points. I was the main enforcer of the administration of the H D H O program for two and a half years at H A S U. Um, as the program was up and running and. From what I discovered, um, it works somewhat well. However, there are many challenges to the monitoring and constant upkeep. I think it takes a lot of education for all of the occupants and all of the individuals who are moving into the homes. It takes a lot of high level delegation between property managers and potentially uh. Future investors and owners of these homes. And so I would like that to be very clear. Um, that enforcement needs to be a very important part of this action if that is the intention to have local people. Who are living in these homes. So I really would like to reiterate that. Um, second, when we're looking at the pipeline of what the H D H O. Units that we have currently vested, um, there are already about a hundred and thirty units between two properties. One of which is under construction and one has been vested for a while. Um, a hundred and thirty thirty fully rental occupancy. Products. Um, and so I just do want to keep that in mind as we're talking about changing potential ownership to occupancy. Um, just recognizing that in the grand scheme of numbers, we do already have many opportunities for this rental occupancy. And so I would encourage you to think critically about um whether we would like to make smaller the. Uh, the distribution of H D H O pipeline products for actual local owners. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else in the chamber that would like to speak? Yes, please.
I am Brittany Mountain. Um, I wanna talk a couple of things. So I heard a bunch of comments and um I wanna go to housing first first. So. There is, they just sent out a a survey and I can't remember if it's Caitlin's group or what, but um it talked about. Um, how much of your percentage of your paycheck goes towards your housing. But what it doesn't break down is cost of ownership. And so there's multiple people out there that would be one, you know, small little water. But water problem like with a, you need a new washer or dryer or those types of things that would really hurt them. Um, and that's why typically a lot of people like to rent. Um, multiple businesses uh. Provide housing for their, for their um employees. Um, I'm even one of them. And so not everybody is a homeowner at the end of the day. Um, it doesn't mean that we don't need to strive towards that, but we definitely have a lot of uh opportunity in. In allowing for a little more flexibility. Um, also. Also, if you want to save some money and not spend the sixty thousand, accept the study that was there. The purpose of that sixty thousand is to prove those numbers. So I, I think that that's important to understand because that report either needs to be validated or completely invalidated or accepted. We, my opinion on that, and I do pledge my allegiance to the United States and that flag, even though some of us don't. And that's important for me to, to at least be aware of what government should provide. And to me, it's safety and protection. And with government in general, they get a lot of, especially you guys, you guys are over a budget. And my, my thought with that is you need to stick to essential services and what is important for your the constituents and who's living here. So when we look at using money, I think GCAT's great. However, I don't know that that's essential in what you guys have. So I think there's plenty of nonprofits out there that could pick that up and say, "Let's go to the Red Rock Forest rulers or let's go to the river guides and let's go to these different groups" and try to create something great. But I'm still trying to understand why county money is going to go against what every, I mean, we need, we need safety, we need protection, we need infrastructure. We got to go back to essential. So that's just my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else? How about online? Do we have anybody online that would like to speak, citizens to be heard? Seeing nobody online, I will then go to this gentleman here.
Hi, I'm John Kowash and for housing advocate for many, many years. Just on you, the ordinance in front of you. I don't understand why it got watered down. I don't, you weren't even the council that originated this concept, right? Correct me if I'm wrong. But, you know, personally, I would be happy if ultimately the category of HDHOs, HDHOs be revisited, you know, because in the three towns where I've reported on local government slash housing issues, everybody jumped right away on, extracted from the developers, you know, and it's never really worked out that great in any of these, any of these towns. You know, a big part of it is that you're, you're going to the wrong people who aren't motivated to do this. You know, they're motivated to participate in the local economy and build market rate stuff, you know, and, and you can't blame them. But, you know, in Moab, it's been kind of a sad track record for how much private developers have succeeded here. I mean, I, I think of the Walnut Lane trailer fiasco as an example, where, I mean, it's been six years. They were going to have a public-private partnership to replace those trailers with new construction. Six years and I don't know how many times they struck out. They, you know, nobody came forward, you know, with the price that worked for the project. And in contrast, we've seen very dramatic success from the nonprofit slash government sector. So that, and I, I just ask you all to, to not get too focused on the, on the incentives when we have some other really promising avenues for, for getting more housing.
Yeah, good.
That's it.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else in the chamber? About online, is there anybody else online that would like to speak, citizen to be heard? All right. With that, we will move on then. We have an agency report for us. We've got some gentlemen here. Thank you. Bruce.
And you.
Any of you who want are welcome to come up and sit there if you want to part heads.
Matt might share with us.
I'm Grand County Fire Warden Bruce Jenkins. Work for Forest and Fire State Lands. Matt is our Southeast Area Manager. We have Rudy Sandball from Price. He's our Southeast Area Fire Management Officer. And then Isaac Engelhardt is my new engine operator so that we can operate a Type VI engine to go to fires. What I would like to provide for you today is kind of like twenty-twenty-four's updates, what happened in twenty-twenty-four and what's possibly going to, what it's going to look like for twenty-twenty-five. Our cooperative wildfire system is the agreement that we do with our entities to help establish a way to go forward with fire mitigation, prevention, and preparedness. So Matt's going to talk a little bit, little bit later about the new for twenty-twenty-five CWS program. But I'm going to touch up, touch base on that twenty-twenty-four updates. Our MOUs that are signed with the entities which, County, Moab Valley, Castle Valley, and we have another participating entity and that's Grand County AMS. So with, working with the departments, it's our, we put out the effort to with our agreements and our common objective is to suppress wildland fires. So to give you an idea, NWCG is our National Wildfire Coordinating Group that provides the, the standard and force Fire State Lands, make sure the standard is within these departments. So just to give you an idea, our, we red-card them with their qualifications so they can go out on fire. Grand County AMS currently has fifteen red-carded folks. With their medical qualifications and their fire qualifications, they can go online fire lines to provide that medical assistance there. Moab Valley Fire Department has seventeen red-carded firefighters. This includes three engine bosses, which qualifies an engine, an apparatus to be qualified with their personnel. And they can go nationally, locally. They have some trainees, so they have some ICT for fire and firefighter type-one trainees. They have three of those. And then, of course, two water tender operators. So they have water tenders that are in the fire rate agreements. Castle Valley Fire District currently has no red-carded folks, but they maintain all the required training and equipment inspections. So department personnel, of course, the, the ability, the work pass test is their ability to get the red card. So that's, that's a three-mile walk in forty-five minutes with forty-five pounds on your back. So just to give you an idea of what's happening in Castle Valley. So the red card folks can respond nationally and locally. So let's see, last year, you may not know the terminology, but PC's participation commitment is based off of the historic fire in the area and the high-risk fire. It's a, it's a number that is calculated based off of the, those costs for the fires that the state picks up and the numbers come back to the county and the departments to do the work in mitigation, prevention, and preparedness. So last year, Grand County, their PC was ten thousand one hundred and seventy-three. And it was met quite easily. And I like this program that the, or the old emergency manager implement. And that was the, the voucher to collect residential cleanup, like the watering materials and other debris that are fire hazards. So with that, there was two hundred and three participants that signed up with the voucher, which is equates to about one hour of volunteer service that they did to clean up and bring to the landfill. And they, yeah, they exceeded the ten thousand with that program. And they're going to do that. They did that program again this year for twenty-twenty-five. So they will show that in the twenty-twenty-five's actions on UAC. That's a program that we have its website based that they can put in the, the actions and totals for the year. So this year's PC did go up to twenty-one thousand. And working with the new emergency manager, we'll get her on board to input these actions that will show. Cody McKenney with the Road Department, he's very helpful and he's been tracking all his costs with the fire mitigation, the the cleanup with tunnel weeds and roadside material that gets knocked back. So it's not a fire hazard on the roadways. So we shouldn't be able to hit that twenty-one thousand, no problem. I, I know I've bummered with the fire matrix and the weekly things that come in for deciding whether we go into restrictions or not. And I'm sure you've already heard that we went into restrictions on the twenty-eighth. There are stage-one restrictions. Those, those stage-one restrictions are no open fires of any kind except for designated campgrounds, which are the, the fire reins that are metal and their campground that gets supervised by our recreational, recreational employees. Of course, no smoking except for those vehicles and vegetation-free areas like dirt. No fireworks. So that's a big one for county. The city still has the ability to have, since they're incorporated, their own ordinance for fireworks this year. And as far as you know, fireworks are still on. So some of the other things are with equipment. This year, the county's CWPP is expiring. But I'll be working with the new emergency manager to get a CWPP put in place, which is the the county or the community wildfire preparedness plan. That'll get updated. And that's all I have for county updates. Would you like to say anything on the twenty-twenty-five CWS program?
Everybody, Matt McCuttrick, Southeast Area Manager. I've met most of y'all, but if I haven't, hello, good to see you. As far as CWS is going, CWS is basically the system the state uses to pay for a large fire incident for a county or municipality. And Grand County is doing a great job of participating. So we just want to keep that going. And thanks, Mark, for having that meeting where we talked about that. Appreciate that. And if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to me. We can resolve any questions that you might have or, or to Bruce. Just a reminder for all, if there is a fire incident this year in Grand County, I'll be the person that will be working on the administrative team for that fire representing the interests of the state and the county and, and the city of Moab if, if relevant. So I will be working with y'all if that's going on and checking in, giving you updates. In the past, we've talked to Bill. Is that still a good plan to kind of contact you?
Yeah. Oh, that's totally fine. Myself for administrative.
Well, yeah, thanks for the time. Thanks for having me. That's really all, all I have for y'all today, but appreciate it.
Yeah, we appreciate the update and the report. Any questions? Anybody? Mary Jacques, any questions?
No, no, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike, we're good. Thanks for the update. Appreciate it. All right, moving on, mission member disclosures. Mr. McCurdy.
Pretty standard. My wife works for the Sheriff's Department.
All right. I don't see anything else. So we will move on then to general or the, yeah, the general commission reports and future considerations and how about if I start off this time rather than putting Trish under the gun to be in with here? I will start off that I was in a sustainability meeting with EMS on the eighteenth. A lot of discussion there, which is also tied into our budget discussion. So that I think they're under some critical budget issues, just like the county is. And I think moving forward, we're kind of all tied together with this. I think that's a big part of the essential services in the picture that we have here. I was also in a meeting with our new engineer where Dan Stenta zoomed in and kind of updated our engineer and gave him a very long to-do list, I think. Admin was there with me, but I think Dan Stenta gave him more than enough work to keep him busy for a while. And let's see. Also in a meeting with Gabe and Steve regarding some of our budget issues, also with some questions, with Seth Overson chimed in around the TRT and the HV four-five-six moving forward. I thought that was a great discussion. I personally learned a lot about the TRT that I didn't know previously, and I think I've been as involved in that as much as anybody on the commission, I think, over the last couple of years. So it, it was, um, I think Seth is a wealth of information and having access to Seth and be able to ask him questions, I think that's a huge benefit. Let's see, I was also in a meeting with Rocky Mountaineer Train folks. It was a Zoom meeting. And coming out of that, there was an invitation to ride on their inaugural train ride from Salt Lake City through Moab to Glenwood Springs and on to Denver. I haven't totally decided if I'm going to accept that. They do have a media familiarization rate so that I'm paying for that and it's not seen as a gift, but I haven't totally committed whether I'm going or not possibly. So they have that coming up. And I, I think that's a, a big positive for our community to be able to have train service, although it's not regular commuter train. It's more of a tourism-type thing between Salt Lake City and Moab as well as Denver and Moab. So kind of looking forward to that, moving forward, whether I'm on the train or not. And then I had a couple other meetings here. I was part of the Property Tax Advisory Committee through UAC. There's a lot going on this year already with the interim, with the legislature around different portions of that. And in that meeting, we heard from the assessors, the treasurers, and from the recorders, at least the recorder from, I believe it's Duchene County, was on that board, gave Shelley Brown. And from my part of it, I think the big thing was, again, we are going to be working on centrally assessed and hopefully be able to see some movement in that. I've been on boards regarding centrally assessed for a couple of years now, and I would say that we just have not yet got to a point where the state legislature is quite ready to move, but they think there's a chance that they will this year to help the smaller counties out such as ourself who are continually hit by centrally assessed. And then I was also in a meeting with Mr. Keller, who was here today, and it was basically around the same thing that we discussed or that he discussed in our MBA meeting. So that's all I've got for me. We'll move on, Melody, and go around the room if we can.
Okay, so I was in the same EMS sustainability meeting with. Bill on June eighteenth. They just continue to discuss. Options to fund the EMS. Um, then, of course, we were all together last Monday at a budget workshop. And then la- later that day, I met with um. The Chair of the Economic Opportunity Advisory Board and the Caitlin and Laura. From the Mobber Area Community Land Trust, because we were speaking about. Um, the existing RCOG grant, um, the way that it was written by the contracts that had to be completed by the end of this year. But if they don't complete it by by the end of October, then we cannot. Go after the funds for the EMS grant for the RCOG. So we were discussing. How feasible it was going to be for them to spend those. It was a three hundred thousand dollar grant. Um, they said that they needed. Help with um legal review as well as getting the final plat. And I think that if the county can help them get those done, then they will be able to um. Move forward and hopefully get included by October thirty first, so that we can. Put in, if not, we'll miss that date, and we'll have to wait till next year to use that. So so stay tuned. We're talking about that. I think. Everyone feels optimistic. Um, I did. Attend the Echo Canyon Municipality Board Meeting on Tuesday via Zoom. That was actually their second board meeting. Um, because I wasn't on the board yet prior to that one, so I had that meeting. The main order of business. Was to vote to engage with OROX as their municipal engineer. Um. Then I had a couple of meetings with some local residents. One was Maurice Miller. He was he was the local mayor corpse, and he's talking about economic development grants, and so I'd be excited to get him with Melissa Jeffers. Who has accepted that position, so that's super exciting for economic development. Um. And then I also met with another. A resident that was interested in learning more about local government, as well as I had lunch with Caitlin Myers and the mayor. I'm just kind of catching up on housing and city. Projects, so agenda review. I attended a few of the interim policy steering committees. I didn't identify like like Bill. I didn't miss a lot of that. I didn't identify anything that was a specific concern yet, but I'll stay. Stere realized, and then Economic Opportunity Advisory Board, we did review the processes and procedures that we used for the grant process. This year, as well as a plan going further, um deciding on what kind of criteria they would be putting those grants forward. What different? Things to do with pursuit procedures, applications, possibly uh doing the workshop for that pre-applications due. And then having some of the other partners in the community there to help them. Um, we did discuss possibly doing a plan to engage with the high school career. Teacher, um, so that there could be a business startup package for Grand County High School students that didn't want to go to college, that maybe started business. Um, so there could be some funding with those grants, help with the business plan through the SSBDC, and then um USU was offering to possible. But keeping classes, so it kind of be a package deal to get them. On their way on on a new little venture, and so more needs to come in that one as well. And Trish and I had Friday. I felt like I was busy. Friday, we had a water planning meeting um with Jay Olson. And Haley Curly Lynn, she's a planning technical. Um, assistant, and then Jay is the county water land conservation manager for um the Department of Natural Resources. And they came to support the county um in getting, doing anything they can to help us with our water element. To in our general plan, which the state's asking us to do that by the end of the year. They also talked to us about the agriculture. Agricultural protection areas and ordinance. Um, there is an ordinance required of that, and Chrissy was in that meeting as well, as well as our new engineer at. He says, so that was good information. And then I did was on a Zoom with Marcus from Cruz and Associates yesterday um. Present when he was presenting some information on public safety funding options as well.
Thank you, Brian.
Yeah. Um, I don't have too much to update on right now. Um, a couple of things that I've been working on are in for discussion a little bit later on today. Um, let's hear the the one big thing was on the twenty seventh, I went to the UAC Natural Resource Committee. Um, and then Sam Crofts from Mike Lee's office was there talking about the housing bill. Um, he also talked about the wind and solar that's going to be um. On federal land, and there's going to be a twenty five percent shareback for local governments for wind and solar. Um, and then when he was talking about the housing bill, um, a couple of things that 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 we discussed was one, kind of the vagueness of the bill. And where that kind of came from. Um, how the bill kind of went and kind of worked along with the footmark that's already inside there. Um, and then what the qualified bidders was, was just something that was added, Bill. And then how that kind of like went forward to uh towards affordable housing. And then I also brought up the impact of the five mile radius to the Moab and the current trails that we have. So we 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 talked about quite a bit of stuff, and I was actually surprised to see that there was a lot in there that that I didn't see it originally. Um. He also uh talked about biochar, which is kind of a new thing that's kind of coming up, and um. Sure, we'll be hearing a little bit more about it, but uh, yeah, it's kind of interesting. Um, and then lastly, I just want to um kind of express a little bit of my disappointment on the uh the um process of position letters. Um, especially the one that was addressed to Senator Lee and my current uh and to John Curtis. You know, my understanding from Commissioner Higgin, the proper procedure for that type of communication is that we would have a chance as a commission. To, I, you know, they will have a a process as a commission to go ahead and comment on something like that. I was told that, you know, I've tried to follow that process. And um, you know, and then when that process wasn't clear too, I tried to submit a letter to the um, you know, for inclusion inside the agenda. That letter wasn't there. I mean, it was only just to try to broaden the conversation a little bit. And I just believe that this approach, you know, is kind of inconsistent, being collaborative. Yeah, and the transparent process.
Yeah, yeah. Um, it's just that that legislation.
Wait until we come around and you can speak to it, if you would, please. Thank you.
Yeah, that's.
I was just trying to speak directly to Brian.
Okay. Either which way, doesn't matter, but yeah, that was that was what I had. And then just for future discussions, um, if we could try to get something together, Mark. Get an update from the Spanish Valley Pathway contractors and kind of see where we are with that process. Like to see if you can get a little bit of movement happening there. That's all I got. Thanks.
All right, Mike, please. End of my month was actually easy. Both my meetings were canceled from the. End of this month, uh shameless plug, County Fair, uh July third, fourth, fifth. Uh, I will be hosting the volleyball tournament. Expect to see some of you there. Uh, we will be extremely sunburnt, but we'll be okay. Uh. Uh, along with all the goings, uh, I know it'll be listed in paper and. Uh, our general public will be out and seeing a parade July fourth at nine AM on four hundred East also. Uh, most of the details can be found. Uh, either through uh Osta on Facebook or in all papers here very soon. But other than that, uh, future consideration, uh, I. Uh, spoke to previously would like to revisit. Uh, the contracts and the the totality of uh pickleball and. Um. Playground. Uh, bid, et cetera, with my added questions to that. Uh, along with the seventy three thousand uh. But. Other than that, that's it.
All right, Mike, thank you. Trish.
Um, awesome. Brian, first I'll speak to that, and and I really do try very hard to do that. I just knew that 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 legislation was changing so rapidly. He, I don't know how many rewrites he had. Three, I think. And then, to be honest, I kind of had a feeling it was gonna get pulled. Like, I didn't know how in depth to go, right? Um, and it did get pulled out of the big, you know, out of the, there was so much backlash from. I'm I'm a hunter and just that hunting community and even very conservative um organizations when within the hunting community. Were were quite opposed to the bill. Um, and you spoke to the vagueness of the bill, which hopefully, you know, if he proceeds with the Houses Act. Um, and I've read some of the old iterations, and I I think there's some, you know, like you said, flipma allows for that for the disposal of public land, so hopefully that's the map. Um, avenue that they'll take instead of doing something like that, because it it. There was a lot of backlash. So so I I I will in the future, I just, you know, I it was, I I kind of thought, well, I'll throw it out there. I think it'll all pull it. You know, in the end, um, and then it was just changing so rapidly that it was hard for me. My guess is I I actually rewrote it twice. Because the legislation changed within those couple, you know, times. So so my apologies for that. All right, um, so really quick, I went to the rep board uh for Mike on June eighteenth. I've already spoke to a couple of those things, but a couple of things to add. To that meeting is they do help with fireworks, so that's another part of their budget that they were really concerned about. And then the other thing that I think will be, um, and I'm not sure how to address this, and I'm not putting it on you, Gabe, but we talk about the grant funding with the new TRT legislation. Like if there's entities out there that obviously can apply for scrap grant funding, how do they access that? Wh- wh- how is? Information going to come out of the state? How do we let those entities know? So it's just, you know, something, hopefully, um. The state will provide some clear, some clarification and clarify for. And so on the twentieth, I actually met with um the head of the southeastern region for the Division of Wildlife. Um, he wanted to discuss how prevalent chronic wasting disease is in the city of Moab. And Castle Valley and in in the resident deer, and they really actually. Know quite a bit because they have collar data now, so they know that, for example, these deer that specifically are down kind of around the Meth Maston Reserve, they don't ever leave town. They have a little. You know. Path, their little migration pattern, but they don't leave town, and they are riddled with chronic wasting. Um, the deer in town aren't living be beyond three or four years. They really want to discuss like strategies to. Remove deer. Basically, to eventually, really, the objective is to. Probably. I don't want to use the word zero out the population, but calling. Calling, thank you. That's that's the proper term. Thank you. So I told them, you know, to start with. Um, possibly in the city council, same with Castle Valley and start there, and then just let them begin to strategize how to approach citizens, because. You know, anytime you want to call. There's going to be some backlash, but they are, it's it's chronic wasting is awful. It gets into the soil, it gets into the water, it gets passed. Um, right now, just deer and elk, um, but you know, it's one of those ever evolving um diseases that we don't know a lot about, but. Bad deal. All right, on the twenty third, I went to a planning commission meeting. The bulk of the discussion there was the Novak Rezone out in my area, which is right across basically from. Lynn Horrison's from the vet clinic, and that would be thirty acres of rural residential to small residential. There was quite a bit of public um that came to speak. Fourteen people spoke at all. Um, and I think one of the big things that came out of that was this need, and I'll speak to this later when we have discussion items. Um, about basically our land use um code needs to be updated, but in the end, that failed five to two, again, really great banter. Um, I have spoke to representative for the developer, and I believe they pulled that application. So it won't come to us. On June twenty seventh, as Melody mentioned, we met with um the Department of Ag. I think the big thing for me that came out of that is um. We are going to have a meeting on July twenty ninth at the Grand Center. I haven't, I'm going to meet with UDAF tomorrow. To talk about the specifics, but the goal is to talk about ag protections um in the valley and possibly. Uh, passing an ordinance in which people can voluntarily sign up for these ag protections and and will. I think Chrissy, well, she's not here. We basically spoke to this idea with. The update of the water element within the general plan, that she would have OROX deal with that um. Anyways. And I think that's better. Yeah.
All right, Jacques, you want to take this?
Sure, and I apologize if I cut out a little bit. I I apologize for not having my camera on. The internet's not super strong here, and every time I do, it uh. Cuts out. I I don't have a whole lot to report. I've been traveling. I was going to bring up the Spanish Valley Drive as we have a new engineer. I would love to get a uh. Subcommittee meeting on that scheduled. Um. If admin could handle that in the near future, and also to bring our new engineer up to date on that is. That is a crucial position for the Spanish Valley Drive um project. Um. Uh, let's see, I I don't have that much else. Um, I've been traveling in New England, visiting some friends, friends uh friends from Moab. Uh, folks who work in tourism, just as an aside, up here, they're very close to Canada, and all of them have mentioned that uh Canadian tourism is down significantly in this area as well. Um, and lastly, on a fun note, I played my first pickleball game ever the other day with with friends here, and it it's fun. It doesn't take up a lot of space. I can see uh why people love it and um, yeah, I think it would be a great great addition to Moab to have some more courts. So that's all I have today. Thanks.
Thank you, Jacques. Mary, do you want to finish this off?
Oh, yes, uh, yes, thank you. Uh, yes, uh, the main thing I have to report on is the solid waste. We have, uh, we are purchasing a water truck, which is really good news, I'm sure to anyone. Who has been up there with the dryness. It's been difficult to. Uh, for uh vehicles, heavy vehicles to drive on such uh. Uh, dry sandy soil, so uh the water truck will be very valuable for that, and it'll be valuable for. Uh, keeping uh, making it so that there's less fire danger at both of the. Uh, landfills. And uh the. Uh. Grant for the. Composting is moving forward. It's exciting. It's also their little nerve rack because. They had their funding pulled for a while and things stopped. The funding is back, but they kept uh the grant kept the same timeline, so they're really scrambling to make sure they get things done in a. In a fashion. That will make it work. And uh, we're working very closely with the. Recycle Center in Grand Junction, and looks like we have some good. Movement forward with our glass recycling, which is very exciting. So things are moving forward there in a very positive way. Uh, and then I've spent time at some of the workshops everybody else has been at, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mary. All right, we will move on to our elected officials. Gabe, do you want to start us off?
Uh, I just want to say um that I wasn't able to get the minutes ready for the packet, so we can omit that from the consent agenda. Other than that, um. Preparing for the BOE Board of Equalization uh season, that'll that'll kind of ramp up after the tax evaluation notices get sent out. So there's just been a lot of detail oriented work, getting that lined up and set up. Grammar requests. Of the budget preparation. Still staying pretty busy. I've got a UAC clerk conference up in Box Elder County next week. We'll report to that.
Thank you, sir. Stephen.
Not too much to update. Did uh. Just standard work. If uh folks need any assistance, wants to go to meetings, let us know. We've done that for. A couple of meetings. One helpful reminder on emails. Do you have Mister Valles and I, and you call us Steve? We don't know which one you're talking to. Um, so I'm usually Stephen, Steve, or Mister Valles, or Mister Stocks, however you want to call us. Uh, that's the only thing that. I've got for today. Thanks.
Yes, sir. I don't believe we have Jameson online, do we? All right. We'll move on to admin then, Mark.
I I don't have anything at this point, Mr.
All right, thank you. And so we can move on then to our general business. Action items. I will start us off with the approval of the consent agenda. We do have a public hearing, but that'll have to take place after six. So as far as the consent agenda. We've got the ratification of payment of bills. Get my reader, sorry. For the total bills of a million sixty six thousand two hundred and seventy five dollars and fifty seven cents, total payroll three hundred thousand. Four hundred and fifty dollars and forty three cents for a grand total. Of one million three hundred and sixty six thousand seven hundred and twenty six dollars. We've also got the ratification of the notice of award for the airport taxi lane expansion, E, G, and J. Ratification of independent contractor agreement with Bor-Tex fireworks for Fourth of July fireworks show. Ratification of quote exempted. Quote acceptance for the NRCS grant, All American Wash. Water crossing structures. Recreation Restoration Infrastructure Grant Award and Contract. Ratification of ICA with Elite Events for shaped structures at the Grand County Fair. Ratification of Letter of Support Co-op Grant, twenty twenty five Moab Office of Tourism. Then I believe I've got the addition of. The consideration. No, I do not. I'm sorry. That I believe that's it then. Without the, we we do not have the approvals for the meeting minutes. We'll wait for those till the next meeting. All right, if I can get, please, Mike. We'll wait for those till the next meeting. All right, if I can get, please, Mike.
Motion to approve this, right?
Motion by Commissioner McCurdy, second by Commissioner McCandless. Discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Mary, are you with us?
Yes, I am. I'm sorry. I, I.
Okay, that passes unanimously. So we will move on then to the consideration of the resolution. We have somebody that wants to read that motion out for the MBA?
I'll go ahead and give it a shot.
Okay. Good luck.
All right. I move to approve the resolution authorizing and approving the execution of and delivery of master lease agreement by and between the county and the municipal building authority of Grand County, Utah. The authority authorizing the issuance and sale by the authority, not more than one point eight million aggregate principal amount of the lease revenue bonds, series twenty twenty-five. The bonds authorizing the execution by the authority of a master resolution, security documents and all other documents necessary for the issuance of the bonds. Authorizing the taking of all other actions necessary for the consummation of the transactions completed, contemplated by the resolution and related matters.
Motion by Commissioner Martinez, second by Commissioner McCurdy. Do we have any discussion on that, Municipal Building Authority? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Oh, do you have some discussion?
I just want to make sure. Does that encompass all the, all that was needed with that?
With, without having all the numbers?
Yeah, without having the numbers stated.
I can amend the motion to include up to seventeen years with a maximum interest of five percent and a discount rate of ninety-eight percent.
Second, the amended.
Okay, motion Commissioner Martinez, second by Commissioner McCurdy. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
And that passes six with one absent. Commissioner Hedin has stepped out.
So just noting on that document, that document, you'll have the shift Commissioner Hedin down to the absent category. Just noting that for you guys.
Okay.
Just hope whenever it gets executed, because it has everybody's your breath. All right.
Okay, noted. All right, we will move on to the grant application for DNR OHVR grant, Grand County Search and Rescue, Mr. Saleh.
Yeah, I, I'm not a hundred percent sure of the, of the process and I, and looking and looking back. And looking back at years past, it looked like some of these grants had gotten commission approval before they were applied for. So all of the thinking today is, I'd like to move forward with applying for this grant. Let's do it at the end of the month. What this grant would do would be to fund, well, we don't know exactly how much this grant would fund. It's based on the award. But I'm seeking to get two OHVs or search and rescue to replace a couple of machines that are upwards of twenty years old. The grant, from what I understand, has the potential to be a hundred percent funded by the DNR. I don't think that's super likely. The, we had this approval last year and they only decided to fund twenty-five percent, so we would be coming up with seventy-five percent. And I've kind of reworked those numbers to paint ourselves a little more favorable. Because I don't think they really accounted for a lot of the OHV Advisory Council, that is, that approves, that awards these grants. I, I don't think they had the figures quite right. And so right now, I'm not asking for any money. I'm just asking to seek approval to, to see if we can get this and potentially get some new equipment for, for our organization.
Yes, Mike.
Well, I'd like to make the motion. I move to approve the application to the Utah Department of Natural Resources for the OHVR grant by Grand County Search and Rescue.
Motion by Commissioner McCurdy, second by Commissioner McCandless. Any further discussion?
Yes, Stephen. I just, if this grant is awarded, would it be within this annual?
No, the, the, the award would not be until January of twenty twenty-six. So I would, if, if we're, if we do get an award, I would put it on the agenda to come back to see, you know, if we can get, how we can budget for this and, and work that when the time comes.
That would be my addition is as soon as you know, let us know.
Yep.
Right. Any further questions or comments?
I just question, what, what's the current state of the machines that you guys have or know?
Well, we've got three machines that are have been purchased since twenty nineteen. A fourth machine was from twenty eleven. It's on its, its way out as well. And then our, kind of our backup machines are from two thousand and five and two thousand and seven. And it seems like a lot of machines. I'll give you the example, earlier this year, we had a day where we had five SAR calls in one day, all of which were requiring UTVs. And during that time, we had two UTVs have mechanical failure. And so we were, we were shorthanded. So what this would do would be to kind of give us two more reliable machines and then kind of start phasing out these twenty-year-old, eighteen to twenty-year-old machines. So.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yes, sir. So then on, on the background information, it, it states that the total amount for just pulled the OHVs is going to be about eighty thousand, seventy-nine thousand, five hundred thirteen. Is that the total amount of the request for the grant or is there more than that?
Well, no, that, so that would be the total purchase price. And the way that works is the, the county pays for that upfront and then gets a reimbursement. We're hoping that reimbursement to be seventy-five percent. And that's the way it's written now. However, in talking with the DNR, there is a lot of talk that they could potentially fund this at a hundred percent. So then at which point the county wouldn't be out any money except in the, on the front end where we've got to to get a reimbursement. And we just don't, I just don't know what the DNR is going to come up with as far as, as an award.
I, I'm just kind of estimating ballpark, like worst case scenario, if they only funded twenty, twenty-five percent, then the county would have to come up with sixty, sixty thousand. Let's, you guys come back and talk about that a little bit.
Yeah.
I'm just.
That would be a worst case scenario. That's a hundred percent county funding at that price.
And, and we're not at this point approving any budgetary. Now, now we're just giving the approval for the grant to be applied for.
Yep, correct. Yeah, and I, I just want to make sure that, that, that we apply and the only, only thing your individuals that apply for grants is that sometimes if you were to receive the grant and then we're not willing to fund it, the granting agency, no pun intended, they, they might feel slighted by that. And I don't know if that's the case in this circumstance or not.
I don't think so. I, I would speak to that towards basically as to what happened last year. And that was, we were awarded the twenty-five percent match and we declined it to take that offer. So I, I don't think getting an, an award and then not taking it is detrimental to future applications.
And I'll, Scott and I discussed this and we wanted this on the agenda, just so that you guys have a heads up that this could be coming as a budget request for twenty twenty-six. So kind of get out ahead of the game. Make sure you guys know that if we get this grant, like, like Stephen said, it's kind of poor form to turn it down. So if, if we do get this grant, this will be needed to be budgeted for in twenty-six.
Right. Anybody else? Questions, comments? All right, I will call for a vote, motion. Remind me. McCurdy, McCandless, thank you. All right, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Scott, thanks for bringing that forward.
Thank you.
And the next one is a letter of support that I put on. I didn't have anybody asking if they wanted to amend or change it, so nothing's changed on that. And if Mr. and Mrs. Kuhlander would like to come forward, we can have some discussion around this. This is a letter in support of a cannabis pharmacy in Grand County and more specifically Moab City. And I'll let you guys kind of lead this along, but I do believe that you've already been to the city and seen approval for them, from them.
Yes, so my name is Dashil Kuhlander. I'm the CDO and the co-founder of Fujimad. We're a medical cannabis processor. We've been working within the medical cannabis program with oversight by UDAF and DHHS for the last eight years now.
And I'm Olivia Kuhlander. I'm his sister, not his wife. She was here last time. That's Brittany. She's another member of our team, but, but the two of us grew up here in Moab.
Yeah, we grew up here. I graduated two thousand and three, two thousand and one. And my wife and I, Brittany King, we constitute pretty much the entire executive team of this company and board as well. So we just really wanted to come down and answer any questions that the commission may have and express our gratitude to Chair Winfield and the rest of the commissioners for their consideration on this project. I know it can be a sensitive issue, so we definitely wanted to be here to, you know, be able to be really candid and answer any questions anyone might have. And I do want to emphasize the fact too, that we have not yet been awarded the license. The application window actually opened today and it will stay open until July thirty-first.
Right. And then just as far as my participation in this, I worked with Senator Vickers when this legislation was passing in this last legislation system. And I don't remember the House.
The House sponsor was Representative Jen Daly Provost?
Yes, yes, thank you. And so there was some work up there to change this legislation a little bit. This has been ongoing for a couple of years. And so this is slowly moving forward and really this is an opportunity to support somebody locally here with this pharmacy. Because there's a lot of interest from a lot of other people that want to come in here and some of which are major. You know, they're big corporation type cannabis companies. And so for me, it was easy to get behind somebody local and to be a part of this. Having worked a little bit and then I forget the lobbyist name also.
That's Ray Hennessy.
Yes, that's right. She was a lot of help in getting this through the legislature as well. So just want to make that comment. But any questions? Yes?
No, I'm ready to make a motion. I move to approve the letter of support endorsing the establishment of a medical cannabis pharmacy by Fujimad.
Motion by Commissioner Martinez, second by Commissioner McCurdy. Any further discussion?
Yes, sir. Just a quick question. What has been historically at that site of the, the current proposed pharmacy site, one seventy?
One fifty-six.
Okay, great. Now, just the letter of support, I think quotes one sixty east. So just, just a quick editing now to make sure they get the address right on there. Yeah, so the, the front building there is the one seventy. We've executed an LOI for the back portion and that's the one sixty east. Okay, great. Thanks.
Thanks for catching that, Gabe, but we had already on my desk, Dana, we, we had the other address in originally and we switched it to this one. So.
Yes, Trish. Comment, my mom battled cancer for a very long time before she finally passed away. But she was in a state that allowed medical cannabis and it really was a huge, you know, help for her, especially near the end. So I, I'm happy to see you guys, I don't know if you went away and you're returning to do this, but it's great.
Thank you. That, that means a lot to us. Our mother Jill Kuhlander was a longstanding resident here and she was, she passed away from cancer in twenty seventeen and she was one of the ones to start this, like, with the group.
Canyonland Cancer Support Group.
Yeah.
Here locally. Yeah.
That's part of the reason that we went into this.
Yeah, we founded the company the next year. So we've seen firsthand how it can help with any black care hospice. And, you know, this is a very strictly medical program. The state legislature wouldn't have it any other way. And so everything that we do is really for, for the patients and done in the most medically savvy way possible.
Mary, I see you've got your hand up.
Yes, thank you. Yes, I have my, my mute. I'm not muted. So thank you very much for calling on me, Bill. And I want to begin with by thanking you, Bill, for being a champion for Fujim. Since the, you know, the legislation, I know you were up at the Capitol, you know, working on helping make this bill, one that helps get smaller businesses into local communities. So thank you. And I wanted to just express my excitement about having a pharmacy in Moab to help the people who are struggling with not just cancer, but other chronic illnesses that this pharmacy could be of great benefit. So thank you, Dashil and Brittany and Olivia. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Mike?
Glad to see you back in the community. Some of us might have gone to school with you.
Uh, some of us.
Yeah, yeah.
Definitely.
Uh, second is, thank you, guys. My biological father's on his third bout of cancer and is a user of medical cannabis. And it, it really makes a difference in day-to-day interactions. So, so, thank you.
Yeah, it, it does make a difference. Having survived cancer myself, which a lot of people don't really know about me, why I was never the type of cancer that this would have had any benefit for, but I saw a lot of people in and out of the hospital through my process. And I, I know a lot of people that benefited. It's understandable. So without any further comment, I will call for a vote. Those in favor of the letter?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mary and Jacque. That passes unanimously. We will move on then. Thank you, folks. I appreciate this and I apologize for, for this.
No worries.
And I just want to say too, we're more than happy and always available to answer any questions anybody might have. Bill has my information. So, and we certainly look forward to coming back and reintegrating with our, our old shared community. So.
Glad to have you back. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, folks. We will move on then to the approval to allow county insurance provider to cover volunteer work to be completed for the archery range. Trish, Commissioner Hedin, I'll take that away.
Yeah, I mean, I guess.
And I believe, do we want Tess?
Yeah, I think that'd be great. That'd be great. Kind of like proceeded forward without, I, I basically was able to swindle my partner into doing the majority of dirt work out there at the archery range, but he finally, he was like tapped out. And so I kind of proceeded with, my goal is to get volunteers via the Dedicated Hunter Program with the Department, or Department, Division of Wildlife. And in doing so, I had like already gotten my volunteers and I was proceeding forward and I reached out to Stephen and he's like, I think we better check and make sure that this will work out. So, and I don't know if you just want to say what you came up with Tess, but.
Uh, yes, certainly. I'm more than happy to, to speak to what I passed over. Would Stephen, if you're, go ahead and then I'm happy to.
Sure, happy to jump in. So just background information for everyone. We're looking for individuals to assist, assist in completing the archery, the layout of the design, every, or the physical work on it. The difficulty that we've come up is individuals want to help, but then they're nervous about the, the insurance, whether that can be used or not. So what might be easier is if they're working or they're blessed by our insurance company to, to do the work. And so Tess reached out to the insurance provider and she can correct me anytime I miss it, state anything. But if they're considered official volunteers, then there is an ability to extend some coverage to them. For example, if they fall and break a leg while they're out there, we want to make sure that the county is protected. The additional follow-up question that we need to answer is whether that liability coverage will extend to, let's say they're, these are always nightmare scenarios. Let's say they're digging something out and they run into a pole and that pole crushes, kills somebody. You know, are we covered? Is there liability for that amount of work? And so we're still ironing out some of those follow-up questions. But it's something that the county is, is choosing to do this project. It's a good project and we want to make sure that people can come out, volunteer, sign the necessary paperwork to be considered an official volunteer and then have that insurance coverage for them and then also for the county as well. So that's kind of what led this discussion. Instead of having maybe a, you know, separated, you know, fifteen different individuals, fifteen different insurance cards. fifteen different individuals, fifteen different insurance cards and everything else, you have them uh be considered official volunteers. They're added to a list, that list is monitored and updated, updated. It could be by our risk analyst or it could be by OSTA. And and then we have them all there. If there are issues, we report it and consider whether they should be considered on the list. And then, like I said, the secondary question is whether we're going to incur liability if a tragic catastrophic catastrophic event occurs, so.
Um and so no compensation is going to this? They wouldn't truly be volunteers then?
Yes, that's correct.
The only thing, Bill, that I did tell it if people were bringing equipment um is that we would pay for fuel. I mean, I do have a grant. I'm just trying to like squeeze the lifeblood out of that grant, right? So if that makes sense, I have about forty-five thousand. I've spent none of it thus far, by the way. Um but but I I think that's about what I have, but I'm trying to, I said I would compensate for fuel. Um but we're almost done with the dirt work, you know, uh I just need a little bit of final grading and and most of the stuff after that will be um and I've already got a couple volunteers. Anyways, the bulk of stuff, but I was hoping that that money will just pay for materials is is my hope.
Very good. Michael?
Uh twofold here. One, in making, in making this motion, would it, does it automatically cover Grand County Fair volunteers? Would, I mean, does, is this a total assumption?
Well, so if we, yeah, the information from the trust, they indicated if we carry an official volunteer list.
Okay.
Then that that's what we need. We we need to have that encapsulated. We have waivers that are done on everything, but that is something that across the county, we should be um keeping track everywhere from trails to OSTA to anywhere that anybody comes on the county facilities property and starts engaging in volunteer work, so in that, I'd like to make a motion.
Uh in slightly changing the recommended motion here, but I I'd like to make a motion. I move to approve Grand County's insurance provider to cover official volunteer work. To be completed uh at OSTA or Old Spanish Trail Arena.
Right. I have a question.
I I think that's so, I I think that's close. We are just authorizing staff to uh seek that coverage from the insurance provider. We're not dictating that they do cover it, because they may say no. Um but it's exploring that conversation with with staff to say, hey, will you guys ensure this? Will you cover it and whatever? But we didn't want any individual commissioner to go and, you know, Commissioner Aden was very forthcoming, come and and talk to me about that. We just don't want anybody to go to, you know, staff and say, hey, we want you to do this, X, Y, and Z. And so that's why we're looking at this. Again, we don't have the full range of what the insurance provider will cover. So if they say, hey, look, if they're doing dirt work, no way we're going to cover it. Then we'll have to go back to the drawing board a little bit, because we want to make sure that everybody's doing this safe and that the county's uh covered liability-wise.
Understand.
And I always think in doomsday areas like people dying, because that's where your your most amount of liability is going to come from.
And then my question is, is this the, uh so we're basically asking for a general liability and are uh workers' comp to be extended?
Yes, that's correct.
So those are the policies that we're looking to go for? And then what is the, or what is your, we haven't explored this option yet, but what is your thoughts on what the financial impact is?
That's a great question. I'm happy to clarify that that further. My, what I was um in my communication with the Utah Trust contact, he actually indicated that currently our liability coverage of will cover uh volunteers in this classification for medical expenses, so they would be covered under our workers' compensation if, say, again, they fall and break their leg, um they wouldn't be covered under our indemnity insurance, which is essentially loss uh loss of wages if they can't go to work because of the broken leg. Um the piece that we are missing, and I greatly appreciated that Stephen brought this up after I discussed this question with our contact, is we understand what cover, what coverage we have for the volunteer. We don't know what coverage we have, not against the volunteer, but does that, does that make sense of it?
General liability. I don't know what it's called, something else, but it would be.
So that's what, so that's what I'm going to clarify tomorrow. Um but currently it's, it it falls under our current plan, so I don't anticipate that there will be a financial impact.
Thanks. And then we would probably have each individual sign some sort of, because we're basically adding them to our insurance policy, right?
Yes, so so what we would do for that is I've seen every, every department has been wonderful about this. They have their their own essentially volunteer packet or volunteer form. Um and typically we, and by typically, I mean in every case thus far that I've seen, the director essentially acts as that designate for that site, if that makes sense. So the library has a very good system, OSTA has a very good system, et cetera. Um to where they would essentially act as the designate for that site, that person who's tracking and maintaining an official list of volunteers.
Very good. All right. We had a motion. Did we have a second?
Not yet.
Not yet.
A second.
All right, motion by Commissioner McCurdy, seconded by Commissioner Mark Tosenz.
Did folks online have any questions? Sorry, I know how it is, but.
Yeah, any questions, Mary or Jacques? Anyone else?
No, I don't. Thank you.
All right.
No, I don't have any question.
Given no further discussion, I will call for a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Mary?
I'm sorry, yes. I thought it was still open. Thank you.
Thank you. That passed unanimously.
All right. Thank you all very much.
Yeah. Chair, if we had a three-minute recess, Bart Prince would be able to join us at five.
Bart's off.
Oh, wonderful. Never mind. He is faster than I told him.
Yeah, I saw him show up there a little while ago. All right, so so that being said, we will move on to number ten on our agenda item, which is the ordinance amending the Grand County Land Use Code four point seven high-density housing overlay. Ms. Hoffine, please join us.
Wasn't it Friday to come up quickly? All right. Um just wanted to point out that I added a number of public comments to your guidance agenda packet this after or right for lunch. Two more have commented, so that will be, those will be added. Um they were all sent here, so I'm assuming you've had time to review those. Um this kind of overview of some of the things I brought up last time. The planning commission vote um has recommended approval of what was presented in in the packet. Um there was some, just a lot of discussion on local area and ownership. Um they asked me to point out that local area, there there were two votes against what is presented in front of you. And then on ownership, there were three votes against what is presented in front of you. Um with Mary, Obie, and Long against on the final vote. Um we have public comments from Ronnie Schultz, Caitlin Myers, and Ben Riley during our public hearing, and those were all for, you know, amending the HHO. Um to date, just some numbers for you to keep in mind. We have fifty-three on deed-restricted units. Um Desert Soul has thirty-four deed-restricted units coming online in the next couple of months. And an apartment complex approved as Legends has ninety-eight deed-restricted units uh coming online. Building permits have been pulled for that apartment complex, um but it doesn't seem that substantial construction has begun. Um there are roughly sixty vested units that will not be built because final plot was not recorded in accordance with their development agreements. And that's all I really have so far. I'm sure you guys have lots of questions.
Um move some initial context. Uh Bart, um I provided the document to him with uh not exceptionally a lot of, lot of time that he um was able to go through. There were some things that maybe his recommendation, my recommendation that uh are kind of addressed so that we go through cleanly. I don't know if you guys want to ask questions of Chrissy or if you want Bart to kind of run through his piece.
I have some questions for Chrissy. The which way? It's fine. I don't know if Bart's going to answer some of my questions that might.
Let's, let's do this. Uh Bart, what do you think will work best for you? And you're muted, but I know you're not, you're unmuted, but we're not hearing sound. Nothing yet, but nothing yet. Perhaps, oh, he's figuring that out. Brian, why don't you, you can ask questions. Chrissy, go along.
Cool. So let's start here. Number one is one of the things we had talked about was um adding an interest uh reported to the title right there.
Yes.
Is that inside there?
It's not in there, but we don't have to have it in there. We can file a notice of interest on anything they want. So the, yeah, so the county along with uh HOSU file notice of interests. Um I have drafted those. Um we'll just file those and then HOSU will be notified anytime title was pulled.
Okay, and then let's see here. Street one, add that one. I understand. Um the other one that I had is from an email that you had, so I didn't see inside here. We just talked about the nine-month restriction, which would basically preclude people from buying these homes and then not staying inside them.
Yeah.
Where is that going to be once again?
So that will be in the new deed restriction that will be filed on top of properties, because development agreements and final plots have already been reported. Um we can add things like that onto it, so that would be in the new deed restriction. There would be some verbiage that talks about an aggregate, an aggregate of, I believe it was eighteen months out of thirty-six.
Eighteen.
Uh yeah, and that is.
Want to make sure that there's someone actively.
Mm-hmm, and that is similar to an SIA, so it's not in front of you, it's not in here, because yeah, it's just a contract people entered.
I just wanted to make sure that you still have that right there on the table. And then um yeah, I think the other question's, that's all I actually, yeah. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, Bart, are we able to hear you now?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, yes.
Great.
Thank you.
Excellent. Um as as Stephen mentioned, I just got this recently, so I haven't done a a legal review of it, but one thing I did want to make sure that the commission was aware of, and I think needs to be addressed if it's going to be adopted, is that at least the version that I have, which is the one from the agenda, the the formatting and the numbering is off, so that there are gaps in the sections, which presents a problem, because there are also internal references to some of those sections, which is going to create ambiguity. Uh so that needs to be resolved um going forward before it's adopted. Um as well as I noticed in the section, what is it, two qualified household, there still seems to be uh a um decision that needs to be made on uh the definition of the ownership exceptions. Um with Romanate I, Romanate uh double I, and then there's two alternatives there as well. So that needs to be resolved as well, and and that's just something that I noticed that that would need to be done. We would ask that if it does get passed tonight, that it has a, an effective date perhaps two weeks from now, so that we can complete the legal review in time in case we we spot any legal issues that can be raised. Um and then it would become effective if we don't.
It, are you, are you done, Bart? I don't want to step over the top of you.
No, I'm done. Yeah, that's it.
Okay, cool. I was just, it's not really questions, it's maybe just um a recommendation for the chair. I'm just wondering if we shouldn't break this down into talking about and making a vote on the local ownership, then the local area, and then the remainder of the modifications, the amendment. So it's just a thought, um because that was kind of, to me, like the, you know, we spent one whole planning commission just talking about one thing and another, and so it's just a thought.
No, I don't, I don't see a need to break it into three. Um I'm open if some other commissioners want to discuss that. I personally would like to address a few things um regarding this HDHO. As we move forward here, and the HDHO was never designed as subsidized housing. The HDHO is for the missing middle. It's not subsidized. There's no government subsidization here. There was an increase in density allowed to the contractors to try and build into this, but this isn't for affordable housing. The land trust is free land. That's how they got subsidized at Arroyo Crossing. And it's important that we remember that they got a huge subsidy, subsidization there. And they didn't, they don't own the property. This is a whole different can of worms with the HDHO. The rules are much stricter than they are at the land trust, and so we've, we've got a my recommendation is is that we vote to open this up as the planning commission has recommended that we do. The original intent hasn't been met, and I appreciate and respect the fact that Councilmember Myers or whatever title she was under when she's here, she's been with us for a very long time from when this was designed and when it was first implemented. And for the record, I was the first permit issued for the HDHO, and I was against it from day one when it was manipulated and changed from the original intent. And maybe it wasn't manipulated, maybe just when legal got into it, they found all kinds of problems there. So really what we're doing here is we're coming in and amending something that hasn't been working in the five years that we've been in the middle of this. We're at, I think you said sixty-three homes out of three hundred, and that's been reduced because I believe somebody is um missed their date on their phase three.
Yes.
So it's reduced down to two hundred and fifty or sixty homes in five years. This is not a success, and there's, there's this huge need to open this up, and I I know that we've had comments from a lot of people that don't like the seventy-five mile thing, and I want to address that as well, because we are opening it up to people that work in Grand County by allowing somebody who's currently living in Green River or Monticello. I know of somebody who lives in Blanding, who drives to work every day to work at the county. So by opening that mileage up, if you think about it, we're letting people that work here possibly live here. We're not trying to subsidize San Juan County's housing or Emory County's, but we're trying to help our local workers find housing here, and that's why I'm I'm a fan of the seventy-five miles. The eight, four, five, three, two didn't cover. We have police officers, we have medical, we have engineers, we have all kinds of people that could be living in Grand County if they could find the house, and that's why I'm supportive of the recommendations that came forward out of the planning commission, and I'm welcome to hear others. They want to speak up, Brian?
Yeah, well, I mean, I'd like to start off with just putting a motion out. So I move to approve the amendments to Article four point seven of the Grand County Land Use Code as presented in ordinance the HDO Land Use Code Amendment twenty twenty-five and HDHO Exhibit A as recommended by the Planning Commission with the following corrections. Number one, make sure that we add a notice of interest recorded to the title, a learning HOSU of sale, to ensure the buyer is a qualified household. Two, amend Section Four under definitions to a person with a work history required under subsection A one through A three of this section for the two years prior, and then this is the section I would like to add, or has lived in the local area for five years prior to retirement, or the widow, widow or widower of a person who satisfies, satisfies the foregoing requirements. Number three, under Section Three, Application Process D renewal. After request to contact each renter on an annual basis to re-qualify the household. A qualified household, this is the part to add, qualified households' renter must not be changed during the year without the reapproval thirty days prior to change. And then four, recommend to staff and the county attorney under Section Two Qualified Household to make sure that we're clear that the deed restriction for the twenty, thirty, fifty split of the units in the development stay within each deed restriction.
And then do we need to make a note to what part?
I can go through those each, you know, kind of as as we go. But right there, and then and then also, I'd add that the fifth one right there is that the um, the property um occupied by an actively employed household for an aggregate of nine months during all of the prior calendar year with supporting evidence be added to the restriction as we had discussed earlier.
We still need the verbiage. I think Bart would like final legal review.
Yes.
Sorry.
With an effective date two weeks from now. Pending legal review.
And 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 the ability to clean up the gaps in in the sections.
And the ability to clean up the gaps in the sections. That's a lot.
I hit it all.
I hit it all.
Bart, any, any additions on that motion?
No, that's great. That's my, that's my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Second, but I still have a question.
Okay, so, yep, I see him. So, uh, motion by Commissioner Martinez seconded by Commissioner McCurdy with questions, and I'll go to Michael first, and then Mary, and then Jacques, and then Trish.
Uh, just a quick recap. Or what's the, what's the number of homes out of three hundred that will be part of this? There's no more being approved to this. So we're, we're, what's the number?
As, okay, so when you guys approve, like, if this gets approved immediately in two weeks or so an ordinance will take two weeks to be approved. I don't know if he meant two weeks after, in addition to the two weeks of an ordinance takes to become effective anyway. So it gets clarified by, but anyway, um, zero immediately. As far as what will become appro, like, the rules and regulations will change. So the way Ha Su will go, will go about approving people changes. But as of like, when you pass this, nothing, no deed restriction automatically changes. We have to go through that separately. So those will have to come to the county attorney's office, enter into those. Um, so yes, approval will change, but immediate changes, none.
Okay. And what's the totality of the number of the, and effect? In the, uh, hundred and fifty, hundred and fifty-three.
Well, fifty-three have COO right now. Um, there are some that have been approved. Uh, there's ninety-eight de-restricted apartments and thirty-four de-restricted uh, but these are all, yeah. So there's fifty-three, thirty-four, and ninety immediately.
Okay.
That could.
Yeah.
All right, Mary.
Uh, yes. Yeah, okay. I wanted to make sure I wasn't muted. Uh, yes. Uh, yes, what I wanted to say is I uh, have, I like the way it's been changed to make it easier to get a loan. And approval for a loan, I think that was a very, very good change. I'm comfortable with the increase in uh, the definition of employed. You know, opening it up to different, you know, and uh, uh, people who work, live and work in Moab, but may have a, a job that they work on the internet, for instance. And I like the idea of the, the additions of being a widow and those types of things I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable with. I would be comfortable with the seventy-five miles if we had it clearer in, in the ordinance. Cause I called Chrissy today, cause I read it over a number of times, and it doesn't state what your intent was, uh, Bill. Cause I agree with you. I know Nicole that works at the uh, at the uh, BLM and people who work for sovereign lands and such have had to live out of town. And, you know, Monticello or Green River and move into Moa, you know, to, and then commute to Moa for work. But in the, in the present language, it just says seventy-five miles. It doesn't just make, I would like to see some language in there that said, se- se- uh, seventy-five miles for people who work in Grand County. Then I would be comfortable with the seventy-five miles. I'm not comfortable with just the seventy-five miles. I am also not comfortable with the new split. I think changing those, what we're talking about changing is enough. I don't think we need to change the percentage at this point. I, I, there was an article, I don't know how many people read the Salt Lake Tribune, but there was an article in the Salt Lake Tribune on Sunday, there was one, and then a different one on Monday discussing the importance of owning a home. How owning a home helps people uh, get out of the cycle of poverty and a cycle of, you know, it, it's a secure mechanism to enable people to, to become secure financially. So I'm not at all comfortable with opening up to have people from outside buy these units, then rent them. Because that was not the intent. The intent was not only to have housing for locals. It was also to enable locals to have that security of owning as opposed to renting. So I'm very comfortable with those three changes if we clarify that if it's in seventy, that the person has to live and work in Grand County. They can't live in, you know, is that, I think that's really important. Cause we wanted our local workforce to have housing. And I just am not at all comfortable with changing the uh, percentage. Thank you.
Was that it, Mary?
Yes, that's it for now. I, yes, I, and, and I'm a little, I would almost rather I kinda, I, we've talked about it in the past, is I'm a little uncomfortable approving something without a, us, a legal review being in front of us. And the, the word changing that Brian mentioned, I think having it for people to look at would be much clearer and safer rather than voting on it tonight. So I would prefer to wait for legal review, and I would like to not have the change in the percentage. Thank you.
Thank you. And Jacques, if we could hold up, what I would like to do is hold the six o'clock citizens to be heard in case there are people that want to speak to this issue. And we've also got a public hearing that I need to open. If that's fine with you, Jacques, I'll wait until we come back from that.
Yeah, that's no, no problem, Bill. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, do we want to start with public hearing? Yeah. All right. Then I'm going to start with citizens be heard. I know a lot of people are here to speak. Um, we'll start here in the chamber. Yes, ma'am. First one with your hand up. State your name, and we've got three minutes, and take it away.
Um, my name is Barbara Hicks, and I have set through the last two budget workshops, quite an education. Really admire you guys with your doing, put in a lot of time and effort. You really seem to have a good handle on those complicated financial statements and really admire what you're doing. So today, I'm at my takeaway when things wrapped up before was that some of you want to take a hundred percent of the shortfall out of reserves. Some of you want to take none of the shortfalls out of reserve. What about a compromise? What about you take half out of reserves and, and try to find a million dollars, and I'm rounding, rounding, out of the budget? Now, you've only got six months to carve out a million dollars, and I don't know how you're going to do that if you don't cut uh, wages and benefits, because that is about eighty percent of, of non-essential departmental expenses. So good luck with that, but I encourage you to maybe come up with a compromise, some out of reserves, some out of the budget. Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am, please step up.
I have a little offering for you. I know you've been here all day. Okay. I'm just going to pass these around. You want to take some? They're nice and old.
Thank you.
You're welcome. My name's Ann Goodspeed, and I'm here on behalf of the Friends of Moab Pickleball, a vibrant, growing community here with more than eighty locals and players. Thank you for opportunity to speak, and more importantly, for all that you're doing to serve Grand County. We recognize the tough decisions before you today and truly honor the complexity of this work. That said, I'd like to briefly spotlight the transformative topic of your, of this on your agenda tonight, pickleball. It is the fastest-growing sport in the nation, and for good reason. It's more than recreation. It is a life-saving, community-building force. In a time of rising loneliness and mental health challenges, the sport delivers what they need most: connection, movement, and joy. I'd like to just recognize Michael Toninelli, who by Matt, thanks for being along, stand and share a little bit about your story of pickleball.
Okay. Okay, I actually, he'll be given a chance to come up, ma'am. So.
Okay.
Your time.
Okay. So it, the science is clear that raffles, racket sports like pickleball improve brain health, reduce depression, and lower the risk of dementia. On our courts, retirees are getting active, teens are unplugging, and newcomers are finding fast friends. It's providing purpose, health, and belonging, all in one simple joyful game. It's the cheapest therapy you will ever find. We're not just here to ask, we're here to partner. We've set up a nonprofit accounting for fundraising. We're ready to support tournaments alongside Angie at the arena, and we've got a team of volunteers who will happily help with court maintenance landscaping and even weed pulling if needed. Moab's a place of movement, magic, and pickleball is proving to be a part of that. But, but would be so much more powerful if we had a dedicated space. If now isn't the time to fully fund the proposed arena courts, please understand, we understand. But please don't put us on your back burner. We'd love to be a big part of this page next year for twenty twenty-six. We would love to be host a tournament for something like this. It would be super fun and do many, many more things of that nature. Thank you again for your service, for helping make Moab a place where we can all connect, move, and heal together here in God's playground. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for the break.
You're welcome.
I know we uh, don't normally interact, uh, and this is not a, a direct interaction. Uh, can you please get with uh, ComAdmin and be part of a few, I, I made it a future conversation for our next uh, agenda. But please get with ComAdmin and be part of that conversation too. Uh, it'll be coming up next, next round.
Okay, let me end that. It's.
Thanks.
Okay, you're welcome.
All right. Yes, Mike, please. Oh, sorry.
I'm pretty short today. My name's Mike Toninelli. I've been in Moab since seventy-six. I bought a house and started a business in eighty-four. Last time I talked to you guys, I talked about how uh, the community of pickleball, because I had just retired and I lost kind of my family. I lost all the other contractors. It was real quiet, and the dog. I didn't tell you about the health part. Uh, painting for fifty years is a lot of work, and it feels really good to sit down. And I know it's the kiss of death if I, I sit down. Pickleball makes me get up and makes me get up early. And so, um, I guess to each one of you, like, what would it feel like if you can get, if you can help somebody stay healthier, be happier, and be more agile? Like, what would that be worth to you? And then times that, times the eighty people that we got that, that are just on our chat, let alone people that come. So, um, that's about it. Do, I mean, I don't mean to throw the, this in there, but Blanding had ribbon cutting last week on their flipping pickleball courts. Blanding, you guys. Hey. Any of you that had kids in school know what that means.
Happy birthday, Mike.
Thank you. Oh, it would be an awesome present.
All right, next, please.
I'm Everett Goldenbrand. I live in Spanish Valley. Um, I'm not very informed on the HDHO thing. I haven't read all the documents and stuff, but I've been doing a bit of research. Um, and beyond this, um, you know, decision, obviously this problem will continue to exist, right? Like the loophole of housing in, in Grand County and Moab for employees and affordable housing in general. Um, Park City is about twenty years ahead of us. If you look on the curves in terms of the medium housing price, that, those sorts of details. Um, so now their median home price is over two point five million. Uh, there are workers gaining, you know, longer distances to get into Park City, for example. Uh, they did take proactive action, including creating a formal housing authority, kind of a more government sanctioned housing authority rather than having nonprofits in town, and that seemed to be actually pretty effective. Um, Aspen and Steamboat also have formal housing authorities. And then another strategy they used was land banking. So buying up land early while it's cheaper and holding on to it for a long period of time and then using that uh, later. Actually, Grand County is probably doing better than Park City if you look at the same curves in terms of the affordable housing that's available. Um, and we do have strong nonprofits in town addressing this. So I think, you know, it's good to think also about the future beyond this decision as well. Yes.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Yes. It's possible for me to speak for the second time?
Yes.
Well, a lot of you. Okay. And do tell me if I'm out of order. I'm just going to tell you to clarify what I've said earlier, but it might clarify something else. I believe the seventy-five miles is what makes a person a local employee. So a person who lived in Price, who worked in Moab, who, you know, required hours and et cetera, would be a locally employed person and could get a house under the HDHO in uh, Moab or wherever the house was built. It's where you work. So if this change goes into place, somebody who works in Blackberry is an actively employed household and can buy a house or houses the HDHO houses. So that's, that's the difference. That is actively employed household is working within seventy-five miles. But somebody who's three hundred miles away who works in Grand County is an actively employed household and could then move and get a house in the HDHO. That's my understanding and reading of it. We had the same discussion of planning commission meeting, and one of the planning commissioners uh, didn't understand that it is complex. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Yes, please.
Good evening. My name is Barb Cross, and I live on Hunt Ridge Drive. Sometimes I feel like senior citizens in Moab are being ignored. Pay taxes that keep going up. We are ignored by the local school board who make it extremely difficult for us to play at the school despite, despite the fact we all pay school taxes. We try to be nice to visitors who come play at the gym, but it is difficult since we only have two courts to play on. But pickleball, pickleball folks who come here are very nice and appreciative. I just want to mention our friends, Wally, Juan, and Diane, who have come to Moab for the past two years for the whole month of February. They play pickleball in the morning and hike in the afternoon. I think that would be a great tourist app for Moab, as the hiking arches is fantastic in the winter. I also mentioned a good place to eat was Broken Ore, and I saw them at the Broken Ore twice. So people, they're staying for a month, they're eating in our restaurants, and they're here in February. Uh, please consider helping us get to the pickleball courts. Although I'm retired, I still work for Grand County Hospice part-time because of the lack of nurses. I need pickleball courts for my mental health. Uh, and I think it's great for all the senior citizens in town. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, please come on.
Hello, my name's Patty Jones. Um, there's just a couple of things that I think haven't been said about pickleball courts that I'd like to uh, offer up. It's been five years since we've been trying to get pickleball courts in the city and county. For the first three years, we've attempted to get pickleball courts through the city. Um, we went through all kinds of avenues and searched every place that there was to position them and, and come up with nothing. Um, although city tried and, and we tried, and now we're here, you know, through no fault of our own or your own to try to get this accomplished. So that's the first thing I'd like to say. And the second thing I'd like to say is I'm a, like a half cup empty type person. But when I look at the figures for this pickleball courts, and your guys' initial um, cost was six hundred thousand dollars, and the city generously offered up a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which brings your amount to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is a lot of money, but when you think you're getting a state-of-the-art playground Which is a lot of money, but when you think you're getting a state of the art playground and eight fabulous pickleball courts. That's you're never going to get a cheaper deal. There's never going to be a cheaper deal than that for you guys if you hang on to this for another how long? And I don't know how long that would be. It's, it's never going to be such. So you can either have a cup half empty. And not no courts or half full and pay the lowest price you'll ever have for such a, it's a good deal. Thank you all.
Thank you. Anybody else, please?
My name is Sandy Phillips. I've lived in Moab area for 13 years now. You're hearing a lot about what pickleball, pickleball does for senior citizens. I think what has been overlooked our presentations to you is that this is the fastest growing sport in the nation. There are 30 high schools in the state of Utah that have competitive pickleball clubs. We are leading the nation in that respect. It is not just for senior citizens. It is used by the middle school PE teacher as part of his curriculum. And it is growing and we need to address that. I was horrified to find out landing has courts now and we don't. So I would really like to see us address that and get that fixed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody online?
You could ask.
Any online that would like to speak at the six o'clock center to be heard. All right, seeing none, we will move on and we will open. The public hearing. Inside number four. Okay. Right, this is. Public hearing for the Grand County midyear budget amendment. We'll open this public hearing. They'll ask if anybody's here to speak on the public. Portion of the Grand County budget amendment. If not, we'll leave this open until Wednesday at 5 o'clock, I believe.
Wednesday of the week preceding the next meeting.
Wednesday of the week preceding the next meeting.
At 5:00.
All right, so what else do we need to do here?
Make sure there's nobody here to speak on it online, et cetera, for a public hearing.
All right, is there anybody here to speak in the chambers or online regarding the Grand County midyear budget amendment? Seeing none, we will leave this public hearing open until Wednesday at 5:00 PM of the week.
Wednesday night.
Wednesday night.
Wednesday night.
The night, thank you. All right.
Bill, Bill, just a minute. Bill, this is Mary. I'm sorry. I didn't get my hand up in time, but I think a couple of those comments for citizens to be heard. Were really more, they were probably thinking it was the budget hearing. So I guess I could ask them to resubmit their concerns about the pickleball course and the Ms. Hicks that talked about. Compromise.
And they, they've all left the commission chambers, Mary, so.
Well, maybe somebody will tell them. Thank you.
All right.
I can make sure those comments are included in the record for this hearing.
Sure. Yeah, and and Gabe said, Mary, that he would include those comments for this public hearing.
Thank you, Gabe, because I really do think there was a bit confusion.
Okay, and we will go back to our discussion regarding the changes to the HDHO. And where I left off was Jacques.
Thank you, Bill.
Just for for people trying to track along, item number 10 ordinance amending the Grand County land use code 4.7 high density housing overlay. Can I repeat the motion? We, we actually, that's actually a fair point. We actually are having to write out your full motion. Make sure, I don't know, I can't, good faith, and I don't know if anybody else can repeat that, the motion we're having to write it down.
Good, that was. This is Jacques. I was, I was next up, but I did. Thank you, Bill. When Brian was reading his motion, I was having a few technical difficulties, so I didn't hear everything he heard. I think it would be helpful, maybe, maybe Chrissy would be the right person, maybe somebody else just to. Just to point out the additions in in plain English or how they affect the change. Maybe Brian would be the best person for that. And then after that, I did want to stay on and just make a couple of comments, if that's okay.
Sure. And and just one more note, Dana is going to repeat verbatim. So we're going to get it verbatim what the motion is because that's what it controls. But you can give input on the items because there are addition, a couple additions.
Sure. Yep. So the the first is is just to accept the HDHO as was recommended by the planning commission. And then the additions right there, the first, we want to add a. A notice of interest recorded to the title that will alert HASSU when there's been a sale. Because right now they're having some issues with not, so if it's, you know, if it's a local, if it's a local title company, the local title company knows how to work with HDHO. But if it's an out of town title company, it might not know to alert HASSU to make sure that it's a qualified buyer prior to the purchase. So that's where that first one is, is just to make sure that that's in there. The second amendment right there, which was. A person with a work history under subsection A1 through three of this section for the two years prior has lived in the local area. I'm sorry, has worked basically in the local area for two years. The addition that I'm asking for here is that somebody who's lived here for five years is allowed to, and then is retired would also be a qualified household. And so what that would be is like, let's say that someone has lived here for, I don't know, five years and worked remotely. Right? I would want to make sure that they're still considered a qualified household. Because under the current regs, retired people who did not work in Grand County would not be considered a qualified household. So that's where that recommendation was coming in right there. Three, under the renewal process right there. If someone was, if somebody had rented out the units, right? Right now, there's only, it looks like there's only a spot for those units to be. Basically reviewed by HASSU on a yearly basis. But if we have like, we have CNHA who has people, they might be moving people in every three months on something like that. We want to make sure that if that's something is going to happen where renters change within that, within that year period. That they're qualified through HASSU prior to changing renters right there. And then the last one right there that has to do with that 20, 30, 50 split is the way that it's, it's written. I want to make sure that the deed restrictions are attached to each unit sold. So that there's no floating of those numbers inside of a development. So let's say that a development has 100 units, 20 of them could be sold to anybody that's around, right? You could just sell those on the free market. 30 of those units you could sell to out of town investors. And then 50 of the units would have to be sold to local, to people who live here locally. Right? So they would have to be sold here locally. What I want to make sure is that those deed restrictions are attached to each deed right there. And it's not the development's job to say, well, we have this many right now and we have 20 over here and we have 30 over here.
The lot. Off the chart, yeah.
Exactly. So it's attached to the lot. And so that's, those were, those are the ones right there. And then the last one, hold on, let me just look it up because I got it in an email here. Is. To stop people from being able to rent the, or to basically out of town people to buy these and, or even in town people. To buy them and then not have these units, you know, occupied by primary residency. We would have an aggregate basically of nine months that they would have to be lived in each year. Right? Or 18 months over, over 36 years. Because, you know, 36 months, I'm sorry, months. So that if there was, you know, if they had a bad time when they couldn't do a rental, right? Then we could go, okay, well, there was a little bit of time, but we want to try to make sure that these units are not being used as second homes. And that's what that, the purpose of that restriction right there was.
All right, Jacques, I know you wanted to come back after. Hearing Brian clarify that.
Yeah, thank you. So sorry, I was, I think I got all of that, but the retirement addition that they have to have lived here. For five years prior to retirement to qualify. So you can't, yeah, right?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Okay, I think I got all that. Then I think my, my position on this is. I do, like Mary, I, I, I definitely prefer the 80 20 split. I think that's, that's my biggest hang up in the, in the whole. In the whole recommendation from the planning commission. I mostly like the direction of where this is going and I'd be, I'd be quite supportive. But I think all of the other modifications. It would be, it would be good to, I mean, we can always change this again. We can come back to it in a year and and going with the other modifications. And then seeing, seeing how that helps move units and get people in units. How that would work under the. The ongoing 80 20 split before changing that to a 50 50 would would absolutely be my preference. Otherwise, I just want to say that I appreciate all the time and effort that's gone into this. I think, I think these are some welcome changes and looking forward to seeing how it works out.
All right, thank you, Jacques, and I'm going to let the county attorney weigh in here.
Just, just if anybody has additional questions for Bart, he's joining us. And so if there were any questions that we could send his way, I think we really appreciate that. That way he can go on a dinner date or whatever he's got planned for tonight.
But then, I, I was after Jacques.
You have questions for Bart? Because that's what we would like to do is just let Bart go. So if there's any question. Do you have a Bart question?
No, I'm not.
Does anybody?
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, Bart, and that saves the county money by letting him go, so.
Can I just, just raise one issue? I haven't heard anyone address the, the commentary that's still in the ordinance under section two qualified household. A2 ownership exceptions. With the two alternatively, alternatively's down there that are still part of the ordinance. So if I could just encourage someone to clean that up, if the bill gets approved tonight before it gets approved.
We'll make sure.
Do you see what I'm saying?
I understand what you're saying and I'll make sure that it's addressed. I think they're just, they wanted options as far as ownership goes, so that's what those were for. And I think that we will make sure that it's, yeah, we'll make sure.
Okay, great, great.
Thanks for your time tonight, Bart.
Thank you, everyone. See you later.
Appreciate it.
Question on that, is that, are those three options right there? Or are those, are those three separate qualifications?
No, those are three options for you guys to decide. So it was.
Serving a local area and?
No, 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 sorry. He's talking about a different error. He's talking about the. In section two qualified household.
Okay, hold on.
Of the rules and regulations. So go clear to 4.7.13. Section two qualified household. Yeah, so we have highlighted, yeah, the highlighted, I think so, and below that we have alternatively and below that we have alternatively.
That was addressed in the motion?
Yes.
Yeah, that was addressed in the motion because it was as recommended by the planning commission.
He just wants to make sure it's for the fourth way.
Yep.
Okay.
Excellent.
Again, thanks, Bart. All right, Trish.
I, I think I want to start by making a substitute motion. So I moved to approve the amendments to article 4.7 of the Grand County Land Use Code with the exception of. I would like to retain the 80 20 split from the original HDHO program ordinance. And keeping local workforce within 84532 zip code.
All right, we have a substitute motion by Commissioner Hadeen. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner McGann.
If possible.
Discussion.
Yeah, if possible, I'd like to make a couple of comments surrounding that.
Well, let's, um, let's follow in order after the motion. Mike's been waiting. And then we'll come back to you.
Armed dead. To the previous motion, Brian's on that. It is, it is very much so. I'm going to put a continuous and expanded workload upon HASSU for the policing of this. I, I am just here to put my support in for HASSU. If the need is there, that they have one of seven support in expanding services to HASSU. To make sure that they can actually do their job and follow through with this.
Well, let's discuss Trisha's substitute motion. Vote on it and then come back to the original if that doesn't pass.
Okay.
Melody.
Okay, so on 75 mile radius. I think that the reason that I was selected was to stay in, to have a little bit of unity as far as, you know, we just passed the. Purchasing plan or purchasing advisor policy and 75 mile radius. And so I think that's why that was selected. And I think that it's important, we have a lot of people that work out right now. The compromise's not really employing anybody, but it should be really soon. And, you know, if we don't include that section, then we make all those people go live in Monticello or LaSalle. And not be in Grand County. So and as well as if it happens to, you know, there's uranium out there. So I think that having people, a lot of people live in Moab and work outside of the area. But it's close. There's still citizens of Grand County. They, they don't want to live in Monticello or LaSalle. They want to live here. And I even think that if we had people that were living in Monticello that were to qualify, they probably would leave to Moab because our wages are a lot higher. So we, we'd add more workforce into our community. And I, you know, I just don't really see it going that direction. I don't see a lot of Monticello and Blanning people buying a home in Moab and commuting and making lower wages. They're going to want to have, make those better wages here. But we do have people that work for the park service or the forest service that do get transferred. So they could have a house here and then they get transferred to Monticello and Blanning. And so then they would fit in there. They would still fit in that. So that's where that 75 mile radius fits in there. I don't think that they're going to be coming in and taking up all of the homes just because, like I said, they have a lot lower income in those areas. And imagine that they would just love to get a home here and move here and work here. So that's just in the 75. I'm 100% for it. So I won't be voting on the substitute motion. I do think that there is a little value in opening up some of that. I would take the recommendation of the planning. And zoning as far as opening up of people from out, outside owning those and being rentals for those, the workforce.
Brian, did you want to address the substitute?
Yeah, I'd like to just address the substitute. So 80 first.
I guess you said Mike and then after that I was supposed to go after Mike and now.
Go ahead, Trish. We'll come back to him.
Well, I'm trying not to raise my hand anymore because I get a little.
I'm glad you speak, God.
I'm, I'm having a really hard time tonight and unfortunately it started with. You know, the bullying behavior at the very beginning of the meeting and I want to, I want to state that very clearly. I am a very, very strong woman. I, I am. You're not going to find a lot of women that'll kill an elk by herself and and pack it out by herself.
I think we should go.
Let me just, let me just state this, but the bullying needs to stop. The snickering, the, you guys, we are above this. And that behavior earlier on was really disturbing me. And I'm going to call it bullying and it needs to stop. Okay? I'm gonna ask you knew that. I tried it, I, Brian earlier.
Point border right now. I, I was just told that I wasn't allowed to discuss my motion and now we're talking about bullying. Let's, let's talk about the substitute motion.
Great. So I made this motion and I was not around when this program was developed. However. It was highly vetted. It went through a lot of iterations and the communities took some hits. You know, you look at that, the, the individual that lives next to across from Buzz Bates. And they are now literally overshadowed by that HDHO. And I know that he's, he's sent in complaints about the development. And so we need to understand what these communities have conceded to do. They've given away that density. They have changed the character of their communities in order to have ownership for our workforce. And that ownership we gave those developers a certain amount. So that it could go to the open market, and the remainder was for ownership for our workforce. And all of us, all of us that I'm looking at ran on affordable housing, and this is one of the few things that. This county can do to provide affordable housing. We're not the, we're not the land trust, but what we can do are small little steps like this to help. And so by ratcheting it down, we're just giving away that we gave them that density and now we're giving them more. And speaking to that, one of the developers at the very end of one of those planning commission meetings, she didn't catch that. That split had changed, and when she called, she's like, just thank you so much for changing the actively employed, some of the definitions and the lendability. It it helps tremendously. She was, that will help tremendously, and so she didn't even realize we gave her. Even more to the open market feasibly. She was happy with the changes as such. And so I just really want to for you guys to understand that. And there's not a lot that we can do to provide affordable housing. These are minor things that we can do, so changing that split, even if it's. I don't know how many households it's gonna manipulate fifty, I don't know, I didn't do the math on it, but. That's a loss, that's a loss to our community. And so I just kind of wanna state that I know I'm not gonna win the vote, but I do want people to revisit the idea of. The capabilities that we do have and standing by those capabilities.
Alright, Brian, back to you, and then we'll go to Mike.
Okay, so first off, I guess let's start with, let's actually read the intent of the program as it's written. Right, because there's a lot of people and they've taken the intent and they've 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 made it to what they wanted to say. The intent of the program is facilitating the provision of new housing units. Used for primary residential occupancy by actively employed households. Period, that's it, right? It doesn't, and 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 I do, I agree with people that that wealth is built by homeownership. But if we don't get these things built, right, eighty percent of zero is zero. Right? If we don't go ahead and actually get some of these units built, right? Then 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 it then it's gonna be nothing for anybody, right? We have the opportunity right here, right now, we have fifty three units that have a certificate of occupancy. Right? Fourteen of them are sitting on the market because they were unlandable. Right? Fifty three out of three hundred units, right? That's an F in my mind. Right? They're not being built, this is, this program was defunct. I said, what the whole purpose of revitalizing this was to try to get the units that are already vested. To get them built so that we can provide housing for people as quickly as possible. There's fourteen units that just by opening up the lending, we will be able to make these available to people. In the next couple of weeks, right? They will become lendable. We also have thirty four that are coming online. Right? And then we also have ninety eight that are sitting there wondering, I'm sure they're looking at us right now going, what's gonna happen right now? Because they might be sitting there going, great, this is actually gonna be something that we can. And build and that we can sell and that we can get people in Grand County moved into houses. I said this at the beginning, I don't know why we are restricting people from the outside who want to fund our affordable housing. Right? We are allowing people to come in here and invest and put people that we have right now living in vans inside of apartments. That's what we're trying to do right here. We are trying to open this up so that people have the opportunity to go ahead and find some rentals. Now. The way that I see this coming out in the future, people will talk about the market forces that are on there, right? Well, if we don't have anything built. Right? There are gonna be no market forces that are gonna cause this to go up or to cause the price to have any kind of stability. If these do get built and we actually do get caught up in our rental market and we have enough rental units. The prices on those rental units will no longer be a solid investment for the people who are who are owning those from outside. The only people that they'll be able to sell those units to are people who live in Grand County. You know, I wanted to talk a little bit about the seventy five miles. The reason that we use the seventy five miles is because Grand County is a. Big county, it's a lot bigger than Moab. Right? And we need to make sure that we're looking uh looking out for the people who work in rural areas as well, right? People who who work out in Cisco. Right? They need to be able to qualify for this, right? People who work out in the Buck Cliffs, they need to be able to, they need to qualify to work for this. People who live in Green River, yes, there's people that live in Green River that are still in Grand County. They need to be able to qualify for this. People who outwork in Spanish Valley, right? They need to be able to qualify to work for this. And if they don't live in Grand County, right? We have such a big portion of our population that lives in San Juan County and works in San Juan County. Right? We needed to make this open enough, right? We need to come and start looking at affordable housing of, we need to get out of the way of ourselves. That's what's slowing us down. Why has nothing happened? Is because we put too many restrictions in there. Nothing gets built, nothing. Thing gets done, and we keep this crisis going, and we talk out of one side of our mouth how we want to go for affordable housing. And on the other hand, all we do is put our restrictions down and stop any kind of development.
Mike, please.
Actually, a lot of points were in in compass between uh Trish and Brian here. Uh. When, when did this ordinance uh begin? When it was worked on and what did this go into?
Uh, I think it was started to be written in twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen uh. I wanna say the last word was just, I don't even, I could.
When was yours?
Long time ago.
Okay, so. I actually think I've built more homes in five years than this project has. As brought on board. We're, again, we're talking maybe a hundred and fifty homes. Not a complete guarantee, but fifty homes, fifty three, fifty four homes are built. Anything we can get. Do to have this project sunset and work on another. Housing project, we need to get done. Uh we're we're in our own way. That was a great statement said.
I'd like to call for a vote.
Alright, um I'll call for a vote after I've made some comments here. Number one, I want to remind people, the HDHO is not affordable housing. Affordable housing is subsidized. This is not subsidized. This is not a loss. The loss is that there are people that could be getting into homes. Changing this is not a loss. Changing this is a win for this community and for those that need it the most. Hmm, and so with that said, I'll call for a vote on Trisha's substitutes. Seconded by Mary McGann, all those in favor of the substitute?
Aye.
I think they're toast. The motion failed. Commissioner McCurdy, Commissioner Martinez, Commissioner McCandless, and Commissioner. Winfield against.
Yes, sir, sure. Um Dana went through the efforts of typing up the motion, so everything we're working there.
Thank you. Thank you Dana.
Thank you Dana.
Alright, with that being said, I will go back to discussion on the original motion. If we've got anybody and Dr. Mary, Phil, Phil, raise your hand.
And and sure, I'm also going to email, I just, I realized that Commissioner uh. Commissioner Hadler and Commissioner, again, do not have it, and so they, if you wait one moment, I'll make sure that they have come give it.
Okay, thank you. And again, thank you Dana for rushing that through.
Is that, to clarify Stephen, is that gonna get emailed to us?
Yes, it's coming right now, Jacque. And alright, I will go back to discussion, Brian.
Yeah, just open up that motion real quick. So. First off, I'd just like to say, you know, in the in the whereas is on this, you know, I think there's a really important thing. As the HDHO program is a pilot program. Right? And I think that's one thing that we that we forget. This is not the silver bullet that's going to solve affordable housing. This is a pilot program. We're supposed to take it, we're supposed to manipulate it, we're supposed to see if we can make this work right here. So that we can see if this is something that we want to continue on in the future, or if there's something that we want to just let go. Um, you know, it's our job right here to actively monitor the success and the shortcomings of this program, and from time to time. Revise aspects of the program in to, in order to improve its goal of providing house, housing to the local workforce. That's that's right there, and I think that that's really important, but I'd also like to just speak real quick on how we came to this right here. There was a lot of hard work and a lot of people that came together to work on this. Um, I mean, Chrissy put in a ton of work, Trish, Mike, we all sat here, we did things that we didn't think that we could do. We had. People in the real estate, we had financial lenders, we had the housing task force, everybody was sitting around at this table. And we said that we were gonna try to get this done because we all understood how important it was to get people into into housing. And we worked through it in two days, and I mean, it was pretty rough. I don't think that anybody thought that we were gonna make it as we were going through this, and we got it through. And then we got it into the planning commission, and we've had some negotiations, right? We've had some compromises, and that's right where we're sitting at. Speaking to Mike's point, I did speak to Ben at the Housing Authority, and some of these revisions right here that I've made. Are some of his requests that he could help enforce this program.
Yeah.
Right? So we really have looked at all the partners, and I think we've done a really good job of trying to come up with something. That the majority of people would go ahead and really appreciate, and I think that it might, I don't think it's gonna move the needle. Right? But I do think that it's gonna open up the house, the housing market for at least fourteen people. And that's fantastic, right? Even fourteen people is great, because when you look at fourteen people out going out camping in their vans right now. I mean, love to see them moved inside of, inside of a place.
Um Jacque, I'll go to you next, but would you and Mary confirm that you received the email?
I did just get that email, thank you.
Thank you Jacque, Mary, did you?
Yes.
Alright, thank you.
I'd like to call for a vote.
Uh Jacque's had his hand up, Mary.
Yeah, I was just, I was just gonna say, I'll be, I'll be super quick. I I I very much prefer the eighty twenty split. But I think Caitlin said it really well in her email that we shouldn't let the. Perfect get in the way of the good, and I think that a lot of these changes are are very helpful. So even though I supported the substitute motion, I'll also support this motion and um. I'm looking forward to seeing what this does for for housing in our community. Thanks.
Thanks Jacque, and and I will call for a vote. I would like to just comment briefly. This is a compromise. This is a compromise. There, myself, I just wanted the entirety of this opened up. And it took a lot of. Discussion back and forth to get to where I'm willing to accept this compromise. I wanted even more. And I I think that's important, and and I want to encourage Trish and Jacque has already weighed in and Mary. I encourage you to realize that this is a huge compromise that we've come to here, and that that we're all trying to make this. This work for residents, for people who need housing, th- this isn't about. Bill's ego or anybody else's, this is about trying to open some houses up. And so I'll call for that vote.
Sure, just one, just making sure we do it, do it right. So on number five. The line reads, the property occupied by an actively employed household for an aggregate of nine months during all of the prior. Oh, no. For recommend to the staff and the county attorney under section two qualified household to make sure. That we're clear the deed restriction for the twenty thirty fifty split. Of units in the development state within each deed restriction, you'll want that to the.
Locked.
Lot.
To the lot. Yes.
Agreed, yeah, otherwise that could be manipulated big time.
Yeah.
Alright, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor of the motion, um as you received it, Mary and Jacque and the rest of us have in front of us here, I'm. It's quite lengthy, so I don't want to repeat it. Unless you want me to.
It's good practice to repeat it, the public has no idea what.
Okay, can do that, okay. I'm gonna call for a vote. To approve the amendments to article four point seven of the Grand County Land Use Code as presented in ordinance. HDHO Land Use Code twenty twenty five and HDHO. EXA. As recommended by the planning commission with the following corrections. Number one. Make sure that we add a notice of interest recorded at title, alerting Ha Su. Of sale to ensure the buyer is a qualified household. Number two, amend section four under definitions to a person. With a work history required under subsection A one through A three of this section for the two years prior. And this is the section I would like to add. Or has lived in the local area for the five years prior to retirement. Or the widow or widower of a person who satisfies the foregoing requirements. Number three, under section three. Application process, Ha Su has to contact each renter. On an annual basis to requalify the household. A qualified household's renter must not be changed during the year without the approval thirty days prior to the change. Number four, recommend to staff and the county attorney under section two qualified household to make sure. That we're clear the deed restriction for the twenty thirty fifty split of the units in the development. Stay within each deed restriction, which goes to the lot. Number five, the property occupied by an actively employed household for an aggregate of nine months. During all of the prior calendar year with supporting evidence added to the deed restriction. Number six, with an effective date two weeks from now pending legal review. Number seven, and the ability to clean up the gaps in the sections. Alright, I'll call for a vote on the motion as just read. All in favor?
Aye.
Mary?
Opposed.
Okay, the motion passes with one opposed, Commissioner McGann. And that allows us to move on to.
Uh Bill, I'm going to leave. I will be leaving the meeting.
Okay, Mary, we have two discussion items, just so you know.
I will listen to the. I will watch.
Okay.
I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go be with my family.
Yep, thank you, Mary, appreciate you hanging in there. Alright, we will move on to number eleven, which is a discussion on Grand County landscaping ordinance, Commissioner Martinez.
Yeah, so give me one second, I'll pull up what I have. So, yeah, this is, you know, this came from, um I was at the um. Um a workshop with Quissa over water conservation, and it was brought up that there was. No possibility, um that Grand County residents are not able to qualify for the. Um. For the buyback purchase, I think it's three dollars per square foot for removing grass and. It's three on their website, yeah, it's three, it's three on their website. I think, could be two, but I think it's up to three dollars per square, at least what they had on their website when I, when I last checked it. But um, yeah, anyways, and until we actually adopted these. These um, these four um restrictions for new developments. So what this is right here is I'd like to see this get added into our landscaping order, our land use code. And so that we can go ahead and start offering this restore, this um, this credit to the residents. Um, a couple of things, you know, this year, we're, you know. We're we're in a drought this year, there's not much water. And a big portion that's coming from our single source aquifer is going towards watering grass. And I know that the planning commission has been working on a larger overhaul of not just the land use code, but also of this. Of the landscaping um ordinance, but I I think that that this right here is just a quick fix. To get us through so that we can start getting, and there's lots of people, this is not like one or two people that are sitting there. Waiting for this. I mean, when I was out campaigning, I talked to a ton of people that this was a big priority for them. Um, one of the things is, is you have to have your grass green when you apply for this. So they're out there needlessly watering their grass to make sure that it stays green, so that when this ordinance does pass, they can get that three dollars or two dollars per square foot. And add it and add it on there. So that's what this is right here. I'd like to see that this becomes a priority that we can get through the planning commission. Um, and that we can go ahead and get this ordinance. Um, and that we can go ahead and get this ordinance through so that Grand County residents can apply to this credit.
Yes, Melody.
So I I had been contacted by residents as well. I had reached out to Candace that works for, um, cover natural resources and she sent me. Some information. Katie Murphy had been working on it when she was in the planning and zoning. And so I got met with her. And it was a it's a big complex ordinance. And so I realized that would take some time. Um, but you know, when Brian had this with Quissa, he said, well, we can make this simple and just get it done. I I mean specifically. I think I emailed you guys all, um, the landscaping incentive program ordinance adoption facts. It's really simple. Um. It just says that there are no residential lawn limitations for the backyard. The ordinance does not affect existing landscapes, only new construction. And then this program is not for new construction, only for participating, uh, participants replacing this existing lawns. And it is two dollars per square foot. And and once we pass this ordinance, the only thing that we have to do, we don't do anything. Then we just let the state know Candace gets a copy of it and then people can log into. Waterwise at Utah dot gov or conserve water at Utah dot gov and they just go through the application. Send the pictures of their lawn and then they get reimbursed for that that. And it's a lot of money. I mean, you do dirt work. I just, I wish I don't know. Bob City had one because I just took a bunch of lawn out of my yard, but. I did not know until this. So like letting everybody know, this is hopefully gonna happen for the county.
Any other discussion?
This is just prompting a movement by the planning commission. Is that correct?
Right, but all commissioners are. Welcomed way in honor of their work.
I I was just making a statement.
Okay, thank you.
I I you know what, I'm I'm gonna leave too. If if, um, I think I'm done for the evening.
Okay, Mike, please.
Uh, can we add into it? Uh, from the commission, uh, if disposal of a lawn. I've goes towards the landfill, but they get no charge. Can we add or help tie in on that? So we can. We can get disposal of this grass.
What's that? Well, he's wanting to add in to try and get, um, free disposal at the landfill.
Of the grass, uh, or disposal. If we, if someone pulls their lawn, applies for it and everything, can we give him a free go? Or can we look towards that?
Well, maybe they can just use their little free certificate maker.
I think that the the reason that this has been held up, right, is exactly kind of that problem right there, Mike, is people to like, let's throw this on there.
Okay.
This, let's add this. And next thing you know, this thing has been stalled. And here we are, not able to basically, I'm not able, I mean, people are not incentivized to take their grass out. And it's been years. I think we're, I can't remember, we're like one of. One of like three counties in the entire state of Utah that hasn't adopted this ordinance.
Okay.
Um, and I was just thinking when you're doing, that's one of the essential services that's needing money and so I I'm just. I I know you meant it in good faith, Mike, and I appreciate.
No, nothing uses water. I mean.
Right.
Households, yeah.
All right, so.
You know, let's look at, let's figure out some way that we can add that in.
All right.
Not into this ordinance, but.
Yeah.
Make it happen.
All right. Do we want any further discussion on this item?
Can I bring up one thing really? Like they just, as it's written, um, anytime someone pulls a building permit. They would have to buy that this. So you might want to remove the residential construction. The and on the first line. Cause then it's just all new residential developments. Cause or add all new residential, either add a word because as it's written, it would just. Any building permit hold.
There's a huge issue in the city with that right now. When you pull a permit, you have, even if.
You make it be right, like the planning and zoning.
Thank you.
I didn't know if I was able to.
You understand the intent of what we're trying to do. I think that, you know, I just wanted to make sure that that was okay if I present something that you guys didn't.
That would be great. Thank you for that, Chris.
And the legal review.
And and then one thing to look at also underwater water con- uh, conservation. Number two says a lawn area shall not. Uh, should not be measured less than eight feet. Wide at its narrowest point. Um, so Bart's mark this potentially ambiguous. And he says, how do you, how will this be measured? When looking at the wa- lawn, what is the width slash length? He said, I'm not sure what the author intends, so I don't have a proposed fix. For that.
Okay, these were the requirements that came from.
Sure, I'm I'm just throwing it out there as as something that when we send it to the planning commission, uh, to just do my.
If if it does need some change, Chrissy, I would think we want to check with the state to make sure that change doesn't move us out of the. Ability to get them.
I understand that.
Yeah, thank you. Any other discussion? All right, we will move on to number twelve, discussion on the multifamily residential forty five zoning, MFR dash four or five. Again, Mr. Martinez.
Yeah, so you know, one of the things that I've seen is that we've. The the restrictions that are right now on our MFR zone. Are are such that nobody's building on the MFR. In fact, the only place that they are building. Multifamily residential is on our commercial highway commercial. So we're seeing now our highway commercial disappear. And it's being replaced by apartments in places where we thought we were gonna be putting our multifamily is not going in. This, uh, uh, right here. And so this is just part of what I really think we need to do, which is rewrite the entire MFR zoning district. But I think that this section right here is more important. Cause what this really goes to is to the light tech programs. And so speaking towards like like Bill was talking about earlier, affordable housing, it's not affordable housing that we're really looking for. But we're looking for subsidized housing. And the light tech program, I think, is a very. It's a great model for for housing. Seeing it up in Salt Lake City and seeing how that they that they're using it. Um, the units that are out there are beautiful, right? And and the people are invested and it's great to see how these programs are kind of progressing. Right now, we don't have the zoning really to to incentivize people to come here. And it is, it's it's it's, um, it's highly competitive, right? Every community inside of Utah. Wants to apply for these Utah Housing Corporation grants, right? These light tech programs. So what I'm trying to make sure is that we have the zoning available that draws these people here. So that we can get some of these subsidized homes built. And like I said, when I first went up there and I've seen some of them, I'm like, oh, wait, this is not affordable housing, right? They're really nice units that. And I'd like to see, I'd like to see this start to get worked over. And the planning commission as well and and take this on. And I know that the planning commission is going to be going. And rewriting the land use code, right? I know that that's a big priority. But this right here, I think that once again, once we start using the word crisis, right? And to keep throwing that word around. I think that means that we need to start taking some serious steps to to get out of the way of ourselves. We need to make sure that the zoning is there. So that when we do actually, someone gets one of these programs is available to come in here and build it. That we're that we're set up and ready to accept it.
Anybody else?
Oh, no one's, uh.
Yes, please.
I mean, without without some of these, uh. Higher density, uh. Multifamily residential, uh, zonings. No one's coming in here to. Build a few homes at a loss. Uh, wi- without this, we're gonna miss out on some of these big light.
They actually are building them at a loss. They're building them at a loss for fifteen years.
Yeah.
So they take a loss for fifteen years on these light tech programs, earning a tax credit. And then after fifteen years, they actually can realize a profit.
Yeah, and these and these programs are the ones that are looking towards our area, but there's not just random builders out there looking to. Uh, looking to take a loss. I mean, it is a fifteen year investment. It's not a, it's not a direct loss. It's a, it's a timed investment on these light texts.
The MFR forty five, right, is to to offer that high density for affordable housing.
Yeah.
Right? And it was, so this this right here, it's it's not that this is not the first time that we've looked at this commission. It was looked at, it was originally brought up in twenty twenty three and then it was dropped. So what I would did is I went and took what happened in twenty twenty three, started looking at some of the discussions that had happened with planning commission. Right? And then also looked at a couple of other counties and how they have R forty five built. And then I went ahead and that's how came up with what we're looking at right here. Um, so it's gonna get, I mean, um, I know that, uh, I passed it off to Stephen. It's not through legal review.
Yes, it has. There are, there are some tweaks and changes, but it's gonna work its way through the process.
That's where we're sitting at. And once again, I'd just like to see this this getting part of the planning commission. And, um, start discussing it and see how we can. Can make some of these programs work.
Right, um, Jacques, I see you've got your hand up. Please.
Thank you. Right, yeah, and I'd confirm what Brian said. We did, we did look at this in twenty twenty three and it and it was. In regards to one project that we that I think is is coming back on the Norton. And the, uh, the project over at the Assembly of God Church and I I. If I remember right, it got dropped because they pulled out of that and and the planning commission was busy with other things, but. I'm I'm sorry, I did miss a little bit of this with the technical difficulties, or were you, is this? Discussion to propose fast tracking this in the planning commission? Is is my understanding correct?
Yeah, the discussion is to move this forward with the mission.
And I would also ask, um, Chrissy, is is there, what kind of timeframe might we be looking at and what's the capacity? For doing for doing such?
Um, okay, well, I have a number of. Public hearings already scheduled out, um, from projects that have been. Continually been put on hold to push some other things through, um. Trying to get those through. Um, this is gonna be, I'm assuming, a pretty intense discussion from my planning commission. I would also, the way it's written, it's repealing and sort of replacing what's already there, including the maps. And it's going to, it's it's, it it says that it's just this section, but it affects about seven sections. So I'm gonna have to go through because right now it it doesn't line up. It talks about, you know. What's referenced in in article five, but then article five says something very different from what this is. So it will require quite a bit of work. Um, I do think that there needs to be a map associated with this. I do think the first one had a map. As this is written, this is anywhere in the counties. Um, and and maybe a buffer. I don't know. I mean, it to me, it seems like we need to. It's a lot happening for, um, for what we're we're proposing neighbors to be okay with. Um, and I. I mean, it can happen. Um, I'm just, I'm thinking. According to my, uh, calendar that I could probably get it on second August meeting. Um, but it would require rework before that, um, if you guys are okay with that.
Is there, I mean, if they did it in. The past, there should be record as there is, you know, there's a map of it or, uh, what was previous. Uh, the previous one, and it seemed like it kept getting stalled out in legal review. Um, but there was a map associated with that one. One of the problems that we kept having was. You know, there was no like sixty percent AMI according to what, according to Housu, according to. You know, there's like things like that that ironed out that we couldn't get answers on. Um, so it kept getting, you know, pushed back and forth.
Hey, Bill, do you mind if I weigh in again?
No, please.
If I remember right, and I could totally be wrong, I thought I. When we did it, when we looked at it before, I I thought it wasn't like a repeal and replace. I thought it was like a. Kind of a standalone carve out for that project.
For the, yes, for the assembly of God, what it was, the way this one's written, now it's not.
Okay, okay, I understand. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yes.
Just one more quick. So this one would be just something that could be added in places, not just specifically for one.
Yeah, so technically you could keep your MFR, the MFR that's in the land use code, we could keep it as is and then add this, you know. At two points six point nine. For an additional MFR zone. And it would have to get approved. The ten, twenty and A with the master plan. Um, we can make them all cohesive. I mean, if that's what we want to do. Um, it's just gonna be, you know, late nights for me, which is fine.
So so that would, the map would be an overlay in es- in essence?
Well, so the the way it is now, the MFR can only be applied for in certain parts of the county. As this is written, you could apply for it anywhere. And it is a a zone change, so technically, um. That's okay, because the commission can look at it and say no, yes, or where it's appropriate. But it also leaves, these things take a lot of time and money from, to come up to the master plan is expensive. So if we're, you know, telling a a developer that they can put it anywhere. But then we have a bunch of neighbors come out and they've already spent twenty grand. That's not very, um. You know, it's just. It's not acting in good faith, particularly when you're the person on the ground sitting across from them, telling them like, yeah, I'm gonna push this forward. It's gonna be great. And then seventy people come out and say, no, we hate it. And then, uh, you know, you're sitting there going like, I'm sorry, I tried my best. It's just.
Like, so this is not for one project?
Well, it's, uh, it's just a lot of money.
This is not for one project, like I preface that with, we actually need to look over the entire MFR zoning. I think that this is the first part to start looking at that right there. And then we can start looking into that MFR. You know, I mean, and I don't know if that's like MFR twenty five that we kind of look at to make sure that we also have something. That 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 incentivizes condos, right? That incentivizes, you know, more density.
Right. And I mean, that doesn't say when you look at it as a whole, when you and you have some places that it's going to be more likely to be approved than. Everywhere. I just think that those kinds of things need to be thought about as you're writing it, instead of just. Hoping for the best when you get in front of a commission.
Jacques, did you want to weigh in again?
No, sorry, no, I I think I think I'm good. Yeah, that's that's, it does, it does sound complicated and that it, yeah. No, I'm I'm good. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mike. I'm sorry.
Uh, no, it does sound complicated and I wouldn't. I I do see both sides of this, but I would not want to. Relegate this to one. Development. I would want. Or, I mean, I want the county to be able to look. At doing this and others to develop. I wouldn't want to just. Say you can do it, but you can't.
And if you look.
Or you can try, but you can't try.
Yeah, and if you look under, uh, section B right there, it's actually states projects that have received a reservation. Or allocation of tax credit from the Utah Housing Corporation will be eligible for an expedited review. Process of zoning and development of the, right? So this is for multiple, this is trying to bring light tech programs to Grand County. Not just one.
No, and I, yeah, I wouldn't want to ever point it at one.
All right, um, yes, are we?
No.
Yeah, I'm sorry, um, we're not, we're not in a public hearing. We're not in a public hearing. All right, so with that, I will adjourn this meeting.
I see, am I rewriting?
I'm sorry.
Am I rewriting this or are we working, you and I are working together to rewrite this?
Thank you. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.